We are now live.
Good evening, everyone. This is the evening meeting for the Santa Rosa City School Board of Education for May 26, 2021. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'm sure there are people who are waiting to make a public comment tonight on some important issues about our schools. And I just want to thank everyone's interest in that we're all trying to do the right thing. And they were all here for our community, and we're all here for our students, and we're all here for the legacy and inclusion and educational justice and equity. So I'm looking forward to our discussions tonight, and I think that our board members are as well. So we are going to make this path together, and we'll keep doing that. So, thank you. There were no reports taken in close, no actions taken in closed session tonight. No items considered in closed session for action. Open session. Are there any statements of abstention from board members tonight? Seeing none. Are there any adjustments to the agenda as requested by board members or Superintendent Kita Mora or her crew? And moderator, would you ask for the public for any adjustments to agenda on those consent items?
I raise my hand, Lori.
Okay, see, here's me and I can't keep reading this and talking and watching you. Okay, so I see trustee Everett and trustee Sheffield. Please go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, let me see my notes. I'd like to pull item F8 for discussion.
Thank you. And Director Sheffield?
I was going to pull F8 as well, so.
Got it. Another hand showing. All right, moderator?
So, members of the public, I'm going to lower all hands at this time and ask that if you want to make a comment on something in the F items, the consent items of the agenda, would you please raise your hand at this time? The comment will be later in the meeting during the consent items on the agenda, but we need to pull it now. So now the hands that are raised are raised for F items later in the meeting. I'm going to call on you, and if you could just say which item you would like to comment on later in the meeting. These are only consent items, none of the E items that we have earlier in the meeting. Jennifer Collins, did you want to comment on something in the F section of the agenda?
Yes, I don't know which F item it is. It's the Luther Burbank name change proposition.
That is actually an E item. So we will call on you when that comes up. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And G Muniz, if you could let me know which F item you want to comment on?
It was actually the same item.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to lower hands again, and this is tricky, but we're talking only about the very end, the consent items on the very end of our agenda. Anybody want to pull a consent item? This has nothing to do with name changes of schools. All right, so it looks like we do not have any F items to pull.
Okay, so to our public, I'm sorry, that's very confusing, I'm sure, but it has to do with how we run our agenda. So thank you for your patience. It is now time for public comment on non-agenda items. So the naming of the schools, it is on the agenda, so you'll save those for then. And should a member of the public have comments that pertain to complaint against an employee of the district, the board advises that the matter should first be pursued using the appropriate district complaint procedure. So moderator, we can open it up for public comment for non-agenda items.
Okay, so members of the public who would like to comment on something that is not on the agenda, please raise your hands at this time. And it looks like our first comment is Kristen Colgrove.
Good evening. I'm Kristen Colgrove from Hidden Valley Elementary School. Tonight, I'd first like to express my gratitude first to Lori Fong and Ever Flores. Lori came to visit us at Hidden Valley Elementary last week and witnessed some serious learning in action. She visited our kindergarten classes and our first graders in Mrs. George's class, where they read some of their papers to her on the writing prompt of what would you change about school? In fact, she encouraged the students to send their letters to her, and they're on their way to her this week. Ever Flores joined us on Tuesday this week during our aloha day. He saw how hard our fourth graders are working on their unit on the gold rush. He saw their projects in Ms. Parker and Ms. Facciano's classes, where they built locksmith shops, general stores, horse corrals, saloons, doctors' offices, and banks from cardboard boxes, popsicle sticks, paper mache, and plenty of other ingenious materials. He also participated in the hula hoop contest with our kids out on the laptop. Thank you both of you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to visit our school. It means the world to us when you visit. Last, but certainly not least, I'd like to tell you about a group of classified staff on my school campus. They've been a beacon of light and joy for the whole staff this year. They have worked tirelessly and without complaints through this pandemic, showing up each and every day for work despite the fact that there were no children on campus until April 1st. Because their job directly involves the students, it was amazing how they adapted to life without them. I'm talking about our noon duty supervisors, or as our principal has aptly named them, the A Team. The A Team worked each day assisting our teachers with making copies, cutting out projects, assembling and packaging them, and preparing them for distance learning pickup days. They took charge of picture day once we were able to host one and ran the day like a well-oiled machine. They made signs and hung them. They delivered boxes and materials to teachers' classrooms, and even zoomed with kids to help with schoolwork, all with a smile and a great attitude. Mr. Rogers, Ms. Chiesa, Ms. Marufo, Ms. Dahalos, and Ms. Swanson proved day after day how valuable they are to us at Hidden Valley. Once the school was able to reopen in hybrid on April 1st, they once again sprang into action with plans and formulas to keep our kids safe. They took it upon themselves to position their group on campus in the most productive way to make drop off and pick up a breeze. They agreed to work extra hours to accommodate this schedule as well. They make sure every child gets dropped off and taken home safely. There is so much more I could tell you about how they go above and beyond to keep our students safe, but unfortunately, my time is short. Thank you, A Team at Hidden Valley and all noon duty supervisors at our elementary schools for putting our kids first.
Thank you. And I just want to remind everybody, we do have a clock. So if you want to keep an eye on your time, you can watch the clock. This is comments on non-agenda items. So like this would not be the time to comment on renaming schools. That will be later in the meeting. Our next comment is Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Good evening, school board. I appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule to listen to all of us tonight. I first want to express my appreciation to the SRCS and SRTA negotiating teams for coming to an excellent tentative agreement. From the outside, it certainly seems like they haven't had a day off from negotiating since March of 2020. So I'm sure they're, they're happy to have a three-year agreement to put up for ratification from our members and from the school board. I really hope that it gets ratified. It seems to me to be a, an excellent contract that, that meets the needs of the district and the Santa Rosa Teachers Association. Second, I know we have a big influx of one-time COVID monies that are coming for the fall. I would encourage this district and the school board to spend as much of that money as possible to completely eliminate combination classes at elementary and preserve programs at secondary, because the last thing we need is a teacher who is distracted from their third graders because they're working on their fourth grade curriculum and distracted from their fourth graders because they're working on their third grade curriculum. This is not the year to have a teacher split two ways. So please make that choice. This is tangentially about the naming. I really hope that the district, that the school board will continue their, I had the word a second ago, their, their choice to have the students speak first about what is happening to their school, the same as we did for return to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rosalinda Brady.
Hi, members of the board. A brief update on the home support program from a teacher's point of view during distance learning. The home support program was approved and instituted during the second semester by the cabinet under the direction of Patty Turner. Its objective was to try to engage students who are not attending Zoom meetings on distance learning. The protocol was the director of home support gives a list of students that are either on the absentee list or are recommended by an administrator. In-school teachers and school administrators also recommend students. The school administrator or in-school teacher notifies the parent that a home support teacher will be contacting them about their child who is not attending school or who might benefit from the one-to-one nature of instruction. The home support teacher contacts the parent and explains that the teacher is available to teach student one-to-one on Zoom. Work can be assignments that their in-school teacher has assigned or work that the home support teacher feels is necessary, especially if the student does not feel comfortable being in class. Attendance is recorded. Work done can be counted for the grade or not depending on its relevance to the classwork and the in-school teacher grading policy. Results from Rosalinda Brady and Anita Haynes, we had a total of 54 contacts. Many students were sped and EL, but also not all of them. Response, students returned to school 11, teaching by home support teachers 14. Response from parents, but the student does not accept help from home teachers, 32. No response was 14, and those moved, that moved, five. There's a lot more information to be said, but in conclusion, although it was sad to see so many students not accessing the home support services, it was one more support for struggling learners and could be very beneficial to those who are willing to take the time to work. If you want to hear more information, I'll be happy to explain it further. Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, this is public comment on items that are not on the agenda tonight. So this would not be the time to comment on any school renaming. If that's the case, please lower your hand, and we'll call on you during those items. Our next comment on a non-agenda item is Wendy Correa.
Hello, my name is Wendy Correa. On behalf of the LCL graduating class of 2021, we sent the school board and school administration a letter slash petition earlier this week with the following requests. One, we would like to graduate on the football field alongside our classmates. Two, we would like to have our, our number of guests for our ceremony increased from two guests to four. We understand that the following state and county guidelines are important and that things are shifting every day. We bring these requests forward as our high school experience has been quite challenging from fires to floods and now a global pandemic. We ask that we end our year semi-for, semi-normal with the graduation we dreamed of while following COVID guidelines. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next public comment is Jeremy Feitz.
Yes, hello. Thank you. Good evening, school board. My name is Jeremy Feitz. I'm an attorney in town and a parent of two ArtQuest kids and a vice president of the Friends of ArtQuest 501(c)(3), that is purpose of which is to support ArtQuest. I am talking to you all because I was highly disturbed, as are many, many parents, school staff, and teachers relating to the proposal to cancel video arts specialty at ArtQuest for next year. This was done, decisions were tentatively made with no notice to parents, no notice to teachers, no notice to directors of ArtQuest, no opportunity for those of us affected, and most importantly, the kids affected, to try to save this important program. ArtQuest specialties are not just electives to these kids. They represent their hopes and dreams for the future. They represent how these kids express themselves. They represent specifically with video arts, the language of the 21st century. As we all sit here staring at our video, it's hard to imagine that, that a decision is made to cancel something as important for the future as teaching kids who are so interested in it, videography. We wouldn't be doing this Zoom meeting without video. It's hard for us to sit here and just pretend that these skills are not going to be valuable for the future. These video arts kids not only do their own projects, but they also are, are integral in recording other specialties projects, other things happening at Santa Rosa High, memorializing the things that occur there. And for this to all be potentially canceled because of low enrollment, this is not the year. I echo the comments of the person who went previously. This is not the year to start canceling things. This is not the year to start telling kids that their dreams are not important. And this is not the year to start cutting specialty programs like ArtQuest that serve as a magnet for this community, a magnet to bring kids interested in the arts to Sonoma County. Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, this is public comment on non-agenda items, and there's a two-minute limit. We have a timer that you can watch to help time yourself. Next is Michael Vonderporten.
Audio good?
We can hear you.
Thank you. I'd like to open this evening with an invocation of sorts. We have trustees who live outside the elementary district. They don't pay taxes in the district. They don't send their kids to the elementary district, and they don't send their neighbor kids to the district. We have trustees for whom elementary ed is clearly secondary. Otherwise, they'd be serving on their own elementary school boards. Trustee, that word is trust. Trust that good, careful decisions will be made. Trust the wisdom to know when to rewrite history and when not to. Trust that the human tendency to wield power when power is controlled only by the self will indeed be self-controlled. Trust that the trustees will seek out and listen to those who will be impacted. Trust that we will learn from nearby districts where the, the loss of local identity is very, very painful. Trust that the truly good decisions will be made by our benevolent overlords. We beseech our trustees to show judgment, compassion, and integrity in tonight's work.
Thank you. Next is Veronica Jordan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, getting my children in our table. Good evening, Dr. Kita Mora and school board. I wanted to thank Dr. Kita Mora for your communication today around return to schools and the notion that we will return in the fall to full five-day-a-week instruction. I did, however, want to comment that I think we're not done with this pandemic, as we all know, and that many of our parents are concerned about that promise and the reality of that happening in the fall and sort of all of the little details that will go into making that happen. So I want to ask you again to return, have return to schools back on the agenda for the following board meetings. I'm sad that it wasn't on the agenda today. I would like to hear an update about some of those issues, including, you know, what's going to be happening. And I think parents deserve a transparent vision of that in the weeks and months moving forward so that we can continue to grow and build our trust of the district and that plan. I also want to extend to you again an offer that there is a robust medical community who is willing to help you all navigate this. And there are plenty of parents who would do that on volunteer time, because again, we anticipate that there may be some increasing numbers of COVID as the state of California opens in the coming weeks, and that is likely to instill fear and worry. We know that children under 12 are not going to be vaccinated by the start of the school year, and that may also instill fear and worry. And we also know that we need to get our kids back in school full-time five days a week. So I just want to offer again that if you are interested, I would be willing to help you assemble some sort of group that would be able to help you navigate some of those waters with medical experts who are here. It seems in districts and in counties that having that support for districts has been important. Thank you for the work you're doing. I look forward to full-time school in the fall.
Thank you. Our next public comment on a non-agenda item is Anna Horta.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Maya Clark, and I am an upcoming video art student at ArtQuest. I learned about the possible cancellation of this program the same night that my short film I created was being showcased by SCO. I've been making small films and stories since I was seven. It has always been my dream to make movies. When I found out about ArtQuest, I worked extremely hard to submit my portfolio and keep my grades up. I'm completely self-taught, and so I was, I was very excited to learn that my passion could be taught and I could be surrounded by people that share my interests. This past year has been very difficult for me, as it has been for many people. And being in this program was honestly the only thing I was looking forward to. I hope we can work together to prevent the closure from happening, and it would be truly amazing if I were able to pursue my dream in high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment on a non-agenda item, Deidra Duncan.
Hi, my name is Deidra Duncan. I have a daughter who is in the ArtQuest program, and she's a freshman this year. I just wanted to say that I feel that ArtQuest is an extremely unique program. Its curriculum is unique, but it's a program that often catches kids that would otherwise disengage or drop out completely. The program in all of its disciplines is an equalizer and an absolute necessity for kids that must have creative arts to help counter the rigidity of our educational system. ArtQuest provides a viable vocation for many and a critical boost for artistically gifted kids who want to move on to higher education. Our society is increasingly dependent on video and photography to accurately record current events and preserve history. I was shocked to learn of the potential cuts to the video arts program, and I feel like it's an incredible statement from the board who claims to support students and their emotional needs and vocational needs and their activism. And I think this really is a statement of continuing failure to this population of kids, and I just really want to be clear that I think it's a very short-sighted and, and, and very upsetting for kids that have really worked very hard to get into this program, have based their whole high school and potentially college careers on this program, and it's just extremely upsetting. So I thank you for the opportunity to share that.
Thank you. Next comment is David Bowman. David, are you there?
Sorry, folks, I was unmuted. My name is David Bowman. I have a daughter at ArtQuest. She was trying to get into the video arts program this year. Unfortunately, she couldn't get in, but I would like to take this opportunity to reflect on what Deidra and Jeremy were saying. I represent many parents whose kids really feel like ArtQuest is a way to get them through high school with their peers, with people that are interested in the same forms of curriculum, getting to a college that will be, they'll allow them to get into a college that maybe they can also study the arts that they are, would like to pursue. It was very upsetting that we learned this news, that the video arts program may be cut. Most of these kids, they spend years actually trying to get into ArtQuest. It's a journey that happens in middle school. They go to open houses. They meet other kids that are there. They shadow programs. They put together portfolios. It's, it's a, it's a long trek to get into that program and then to get with people that they, they can connect with. So I was really upset to hear this, that the, the program may be cut and they won't have this opportunity. So anything that, and we're not getting the information on how we can even participate in, in helping to save the program. We're on it. We want to work with you on how to save this program. And I hope you reconsider, and I hope you just share with us the information and share with us a plan on how we can save it versus just cutting the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment is Jill Zimmerman.
Hi, my name is Jill Zimmerman, and I appreciate your time tonight. I have a very good student in my sophomore son, but with our crushingly long pandemic learning, his grades slipped, and there was no joy in school. His most joyful moments were derived from his video arts class at ArtQuest. He found a way to tell a story, and with every good story, he was able to express emotion and be absolutely himself in a way that traditional classes don't offer. His strength in editing and storytelling served him so well, he turned in an extraordinary video report to his honors world history teacher instead of choosing to write a written brochure. It's like the lights went on in my house for the first time in over a year. He was passionate. He was talkative. He was expressing himself while putting together this project in this way. It was due to all the skills he learned in video arts. And these things really are the only highlights of this very bizarre year. So to be clear, you wouldn't just be taking away a class. You are taking away some kids' voices, and they are the voices of our future. Thank you.
Thank you. And we might be having a little issue with our clock, but thank you all for keeping your comments within the two-minute limit. Next is Stacia Okura.
Good evening, Dr. Kita Mora and school board. I'm a parent at CCLA, and I'm here to ask that you provide us with more transparency around fall, return to school, and that you put that as an agenda item for every meeting going forward. During the April 14th board meeting, Dr. Kita Mora, I heard you say that you do not believe that we will need a fall MOU with SRTA because fall is bringing back to school as usual. At that same board meeting, less than an hour later, I also heard the president of SRTA, Mr. Lyon, say that he anticipates the need for mitigation measures, perhaps necessitating an MOU. And so I really want to ask Dr. Kita Mora, in the interest of transparency, can you please comment on two items? Number one, what are the potential mitigation measures that are being negotiated right now with SRTA and how that impacts fall classrooms and schedules? And number two, have you come to an agreement with SRTA that an MOU is not needed for the fall? And I'm asking for regular updates on these planning details because many families have lost trust and faith in the district this year, including myself. Our public health guidelines allow us to be in school full-time right now, yet you chose not to open full-time. Please give us reason to believe in you, to trust your words. And the way to do that is to continually provide us details on how fall is shaping up to be full-time. Tell us what decisions are being made. Tell us what is still under discussion. And please do not surprise us with herb balls right before fall is set to open full-time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment is from Mark. Mark, if you could please state your last name for the record.
Hello, yes, my name is Mark Ilesley. I am also a parent of a student in the video arts program, and I have a freshman coming in who's going to do digital arts. Quick background on the importance of a program like this. When I was in high school way back in 1976, I made Super 8 movies, and I had a single English teacher who encouraged me, one single English teacher. I went on to USC Film School, and I worked in the film business for 30 years, and I was successful enough that I retired at the age 50 and returned to my hometown of Santa Rosa, all because there was a teacher, one teacher in high school, that encouraged my filmmaking with Super 8s. Now, I'm going to be a little different than some of the other speakers. I believe you guys have challenges. I believe you as a board are trying to make hard decisions. I believe you are not making this decision lightly. What I encourage you is lean on us, lean on ArtQuest. You will be surprised at how we're going to find creative solutions to solve the real problems that you are struggling with. We believe it's important. I agree with many of these other people that, that ArtQuest, ArtQuest is the reason we even chose Santa Rosa High School. We had other choices. And out in the other community, the broader community. And out in the other community, the broader community of non-Santa Rosa school, elementary schools, ArtQuest is exactly why Santa Rosa High School has a reputation. Other than that, it's just a high school. But if you go out throughout the whole rest of Sonoma County, the reason people know Santa Rosa High School is of ArtQuest. And I want to help you guys solve your problem. Don't give up on us, the ArtQuest community, because I truly have a strong faith that we can come up with creative solutions for your real difficulties and challenges in order to keep the video arts program alive. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder, this is public comment on non-agenda items. Two-minute time limit. We have a clock to help you. And next comment is Liz Birch.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, thanks for calling on me. So my name is Liz Birch, and I just wanted to say that I'm really saddened by the information that the video arts program will be cut from ArtQuest. And my daughter is in ArtQuest in the digital arts program, but her second choice was video. And I think that you should know that Charter Arts and ArtQuest are both, as was stated before by the last person who spoke, it's a magnet to the district. And also, I want to put in my perspective, I'm a faculty member in the Department of Communications at Sonoma State, and we're a growing program, and actually, we've been impacted for, I've been there for 20 years, and we've been impacted the entire time. We have so many students that we have been able to open up a new media lab. We are actually developing a new film program, and we have a lot of support. So we feed, or Santa Rosa District, of course, feeds into Sonoma State. So the more that we have our students who are coming in who have experience, the better they're going to be able to do in our program and other programs like ours. So I just wanted to put out that perspective, and of course, as others have said, I think from a mental health standpoint, et cetera, it's not a good time to cut these programs. So I'm just going to ask you to please reconsider. Really, it is a popular field, and all you have to do is look at Sonoma State to prove that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Holly Comby.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Good evening, everyone. I'm Holly. I'm a first-grade teacher and mom of two children. I've said this before, but I'd like to again ask that SRCS commit to keeping class sizes small and limiting combos, especially in this upcoming school year. I'm already hearing about combos happening at several elementary sites, and I'm deeply concerned. I'm concerned for our students who have weathered fires and a pandemic. Next year of all years is not the time to be business as usual with large classes, combos, and no instructional aids at many sites. We need to repair the harm that was done to our students from all of this. They need small class sizes so they can receive more individualized academic and social emotional support. Teachers are exhausted, too. Our students deserve this investment. Please, I ask you to take action on this before the next school year begins. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next public comment is Sheila Walker.
Hi, good evening, Dr. Kitamura and members of the board. As one of 30,000 parents of this Santa Rosa City School District, I encourage you to be more transparent in the actions and activities involving what's being negotiated for the reopening for the fall. Parents are the best advocates for their children. And I suppose that people are wondering, why are parents, why are we keep asking for more information and updates? So let me give you a quick background. My son started in Santa Rosa City Schools at Slater in seventh grade this year. He would not have had, he was there from August through November, and he would have maybe three hours a week, a week, three hours a week of classes. That includes any Zoom time and asynchronous work. Again, I'll say that, again, three hours a week. When we asked, we moved his schedules, we moved him to advanced classes. He's not an advanced student. In fact, he is, his favorite thing about school is band. And I'm really sad to hear the other parents talking about things happening at ArtQuest because that would probably be our path. So let me move forward. We moved him to Rincon Valley Schools. So because when we were, we were specifically told by the principal, when we were concerned that his Zoom classes were canceled, the answer we received was it was that teachers do not, are not required to Zoom. So that said to us that there was no requirement for our child to receive an education. So we called and called, and we moved him to Rincon Valley. Now, we were planning to go to Rincon Valley Middle School in your district. But then I hear just yesterday or the day before that it looks like they're proposing to cut hours from their school site, so the number of hours for the kids to be on-site. This was learned from a student whose teacher let them know that the classes would be getting out an hour earlier than what they're receiving right now. So I see I'm out of time. I'm actually in Texas taking care of my mom. So I'm on the Zoom late at this time, but I'm concerned if I should even try and stick it out with Santa Rosa City Schools or go elsewhere, like many parents are wondering. Thank you.
Thank you. And President Fong, there are no more hands raised. Wait, President Fong, I take that back. There is another hand. Pamela Karbowski.
Good evening, Dr. Kitamura and members of the board. My name is Pam Karbowski, and I am an elementary PE teacher at both Brookfield and Biella Elementarys. I am going to follow along with Holly Comby and say, please keep class sizes small. Please limit or eliminate combo classes. Our students need to have as much connection to their teachers and peers as possible. When we jam classes, when we jam students into large class sizes, it is not a positive situation for their learning. So again, I am going to ask as well, with the money that we have coming in, please, as best as we can, let's try and keep class size small and eliminate combos. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, President Fong, there are no more hands raised.
Thanks to all of you who took time to comment on the school stuff. Appreciate it. We are now on C7. This is a special presentation for 2020, 2021 retirees. We have quite a few, and all need to be honored.
Thank you, President Fong. I'm going to turn it over to Anna Trunell for this presentation for retirees, since I'm one of them.
Thank you so much, and good evening, Board President Fong, Superintendent Kitamura, members of the board and attendees. On behalf of Santa Rosa City Schools, I would like to welcome all of you here tonight as we honor our most laudable retirees. Today, we pay tribute to 64 individuals who have contributed 1,362.5 combined years of expertise, time, and passion to Santa Rosa City Schools District. Their impact on the lives of students, colleagues, and the community will be felt for generations. While we wish them well in their next endeavors, we cannot help but feel saddened by the loss of experience and dedication for our students. It is with profound respect and sincerity that we, as a district, say thank you for making the lives of our students richer and fuller. Thank you so much. And back to you, President Fong.
There are many, and I actually know quite a few on that list. So all of you, thank you so much. Thank you for dedicating your working careers and your lives, and sometimes more than your regular working lives, to the students of Santa Rosa City Schools. We all benefit from your care and concern and love and relationship building. And after all these years that you've been with us, there's a lot of expertise flying out the window, so we appreciate it. However you're leaving us, many of you, thank you, and on to your next great adventure. When I retired, it was kind of like, what's my next great adventure? And here I am. All right, so we are not going to get too mushy tonight because then we'll never stop, I think. And we're moving on now. Are we, we're not reading names? Okay. So we are moving on now to C8. And there is going to be, there is going to be something in June, early June, for our retirees. There's going to be a little shindig, and we're going, we're going, we're looking forward to that, to seeing you in person. And if you've been vaccinated, I think we're wearing masks. I'm not sure, but we're looking forward to that. Yeah. We're moving on to also a special presentation for our outgoing student board member, Omar Lopez. And Omar, there you are. Man, we are going to miss you, but we actually know where to find you.
We do. So Omar, since this is my eighth year, I believe I might have started with LC, and I get to end with LC. And that's pretty special. That's very, very special. I can say by far, I'm sorry to the other board members, student board members, but I do have to be truthful in the fact that your dedication at staying till meetings till late at night, asking me questions, texting me, emailing me, is to be applauded. Your questions, your inquiry, your curiosity, your problem-solving skills as a student representative to the school board is phenomenal. You have set a standard that is going to be so difficult to reach. But I know our next one's going to do it. Our next student board member is going to be able to do it, right? And they can call on you for any kind of support because you, my friend, have done your job well. And so I'd like to open it up for any other board members who'd like to make a few comments to you, Omar, before we let you say a few words. So does anybody would like to say a few things? Just open up your mic.
Vice President McCrory. Okay, go ahead.
Well, Omar Lopez, I just have to say that the energy level, the positivity that you brought to one of the hardest periods in public education that I've ever experienced, and I think in the history perhaps of public education in this country, for you to be here, be informed, stay positive, and share with us, and make sure you brought the student voice into all of our conversations over this year has just been overwhelming. And I know you're just scratching the surface of your potential, and you are going to be an advocate, a change agent, a leader moving forward. So congratulations. Thank you for your service here, and best of luck to you, but I know you don't leave any luck.
Director De La Cruz, Director Sheffield, Director Medina.
Omar, thank you so much for your voice this year, your advocacy, your brilliance, your humor, the fact that you hold it down for Halahtal Mexicans everywhere. I'm just really so thrilled to have had the opportunity to work with you, and I cannot wait to see what you do in this world outside of the Santa Rosa City Schools Board and the system. So adelante. Thank you.
Omar, I'm just going to continue with the love fest. You know, you, your participation on the board actually began before the start of the school year. You came to us last summer by choice, and you added your voice to a conversation that was definitely overdue, a really sensitive issue. And you brought a whole lot of value to that, and I so much appreciate your participation from the very beginning. But you know, I just, you know, on all issues, your thoughtfulness and your youth voice. I know you're going to do great things. The sky's the limit really for you, and I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss your big, broad smile and suffering through everything that you've suffered through, you know, not just through the pandemic, but I mean, pretty much your entire high school years have been crisis, crisis after crisis. And you've, you've, you've suffered through it, but you came out strong, and you're soaring now, and love you for it. I'm going to miss you.
For me, Omar, I remember talking to you, you know, right when you were getting started before your first board meeting, and just thinking how crazy and awesome it was that we had so many similarities, aside from both being Lobos and both being Omars. There's so much in common. And I just got to say that as a fellow Omar and fellow Lobo, you've made me proud. I know that you've done great work, and I know you're going to do amazing things to come, and I look forward to seeing all your success in the future. It's been an honor, you know, serving here with you.
Trust me, Manny. I have so many words that I want to say, and I'm not going to say them all because we all signed a special something for you, so please read that. And I mean, all I really want to say is how grateful I am for you. I really, I don't think I could have gotten past this last year, not just on the board, but with a lot of other stuff that we worked on collaboratively without you. And so you held it down in so many different ways, and I am so proud of you, and I am grateful for the friendship and the bond that we've been able to develop over time. And I'm just excited to spend more time with you now that you'll have a little bit more time not coming to these super-long board meetings, and we can watch movies and eat pizza, and I'm just so excited for everything that I have the privilege of being witness to in your life. So I am just so, so, so grateful for you. Director Flores.
Omar, Omar, Omar. I just wish I had the opportunity to have met you in real life, right? Hearing, you know, from my fellow board members, how stupendous you've been, how you've been a resource of information in terms of what our students are thinking, I just want to say muchisima gracias por ser el representante de los estudiantes. Este, te agradezco mucho que hayas hecho esto y estar aquí con nosotros noche tras noche, verdad? Y hacer, y estar aquí hasta tan tarde. Este, ese sí es un, es un, como se dice? It's a commitment that it's rarely seen in people your age. I just want to say thank you for serving your fellow classmates, and you will be missed, okay? And I want to meet you, want to say face to face.
Did I miss anyone? I got to meet Omar in person, actually, and he's very tall than I expected. He was like, yes. All right, Omar, what would you like to say? The floor is yours.
All right. I would like to confirm that I am, in fact, very tall, just a little under 6'3", for anybody who is curious. I don't even know where to start. I am so grateful for having had this experience and for getting to meet all of you and do all of this great work together. I am just so grateful, and I had so much fun, even when we were here at 1:00 AM rushing through all of the agenda items. I can't say that I did not have fun in those moments. You are all great people, and I have been so honored to have worked with all of you on this board and outside of this board. I really do appreciate the work that you do, and I do have faith in you as a board to be doing the things that are, that you believe are right for our students, and I'm sure that you'll continue to do this. I really just cannot say how grateful I am to have been here this year. I can't even believe it's been a year. It just went by so quickly. I know tonight you'll be confirming our next student board member. Her name is Georgia. I've gone to meet her, and I just, I have a lot of confidence in her. I know she will do a great job with you guys. And I'm so grateful I got to work with you, Diane, before you left, so a lot of gratefulness for me. Thank you, guys.
Job, Omar. Really great job. Thank you so much. We're going to make the most use of you tonight, so you're still with us tonight.
Yeah, I actually told him he could decide. He asked me, Omar asked me, Diane, do I stay or do I go? I said, it's totally up to you. Yeah, it's totally up to him if he would like to, because he has a presentation due tomorrow, right? Is that right?
Friday, Friday.
So it was up to him and then there is a gift for you, there is a Kudo board card for you, so you'll be, you'll be getting that and you, I'm going to see you, so don't worry, I'm going to see you, you're not going to get away from me, so.
I, I will keep you to that.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you Omar.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you Omar.
Okay, President.
Okay, we're moving on to D1. D1 is a CSA report, chapter 75, do we have President Alfonso here with us tonight?
Yes, I will bring her over.
And after President Alfonso's report, we are going to do an interpreter switch.
Good evening, President Fong. Have to exit my full screen, thank you. Good evening, President Fong, Superintendent Kitamora School Board Members and Student Board Member. Tonight, we take the opportunity to say farewell, farewell to four classified employees who are moving on to other employment opportunities. Welcome to one new classified employee, we hope she finds Santa Rosa City Schools a wonderful place to work. Congratulations to two classified members who've been promoted into new positions and a happy retirement to more members who will be retiring at the end of their school year. May they find this next journey in their life peaceful and enjoyable. To our student board member Omar, thank you for your representation for the students of Santa Rosa City Schools. You may not know it, but your voice has been heard and inspires students throughout the district to speak up for their rights and those of others. On a personal note, my grandchildren go to Santa Rosa High and my granddaughter has heard you speak. So we have very interesting conversations when we get together for our distant visits. We would wish, we wish you the very best in all that you do moving forward in your life. The CSA negotiating team with direction from our members and the district negotiation team with directions from the superintendent and the school board were able to reach an agreement that met the current needs of each of our groups. Our, our negotiating team and executive board met with our membership and discussion was held on each of our items. Sorry, I did not realize my video was not playing. Following the discussion meeting, we held voting throughout the district. At the end of two days of voting, our membership approved the two-year tentative agreement. We want to take this time to thank everyone who had a voice in moving us together to benefit the district, the students and our staff. We were able to move forward even though times, it was very difficult on both sides. Reaching the $15 an hour salary for our members was a joint goal of the district and the chapter members. We helped, it helped, we also increased our health benefits and we did many more things together. This is the start of bringing employees into our district, employees that will hopefully consider staying with us for many years to come. Again, we want to thank everyone on both negotiation teams for the hard work that has brought us to this final resolution. Respectfully, Tammy. Thank you.
Thank you, President Alfonso. We are going to just take a minute or two now for an interpreter switch.
I am ready, Adina.
Thank you, President Fong.
Was that it?
Not yet.
We're all set, thank you.
And we have a SRTA report up next from President Lyon.
And he is on his way over.
Good evening, good evening. Everybody hear me all right? Oh, good, I have a lot to say. I'll try to go fast, but I, there's just so many great things going on. We got to talk about it. Let's start with a celebration. As my friend Tammy mentioned, there is, oh, I should stop and do the formality so everybody knows for posterity, for future. You know, they're going to look this up on YouTube. I'm Will Line with President of Santa Rosa Teachers Association. And I'd like to greet you, President Fong and Dr. Kitamora, members of the board, members of the community, representing 900 teachers, educators, certificated in Santa Rosa City Schools. All right, now the celebration part, everybody do it, happy dance, go, I want to see it, I want to see it all, every single one of you. Yeah, oh, do a little bit of this, bite your lip, go, do that, like there was a real good riff. We have a TA for our classified staff that now is not a TA, TA stands for tentative agreement. That's the agreement now, all you guys got to do is vote on it, I encourage a yes vote on our end of it. We're going to, we're going to ratify ours too, but I couldn't wait until ratified it to bring up how, how great of a deal it is and that it is a win-win, win at least three, four or five maybe, for our district, for our students, for the cabinet, for our members of course, and for our community at large that we could demonstrate our commitment to making this a destination district for students and staff. So I specifically want to thank you, the board, the entire board, I know that you supported this. I know it was hard to get to a three-year deal because it's a three-year budget and the math is hard. When you add two extra years, that, it takes some courage from the board to believe that we're worth it and to believe that we can do the work to get it right with all the shuffling that are going to have to happen. We thank you for that support. The bargaining teams all deserve a medal and a foot massage, unbelievable. It takes a lot of hours, even though we agreed on everything, we never had to fight about anything. We disagreed, maybe, we said, oh, what problem are you trying to solve? And we got the yes on every single thing. Two, two years ago, we were wearing red shirts. And this year, we just did the work together and it's remarkable, I don't want to get too far into that. But we should be celebrating that and it should be talked about as a win-win-win. And I haven't heard anybody else do otherwise, but I just want to make sure that we all recognize and celebrate that it's all of our wins and the biggest, the biggest winners are going to be our students who have a more stable learning environment because we have a three-year deal and we are going to spend the next two years, all of us, where we won't have to negotiate salary or healthcare at all. And then in the third year, we won't be out of contract, we'll just be back at the table doing the work. We need to make a commitment, every single one of us, to spend those next two years doing the work on all the other things that we can work on together and get as much as we can done in those two years and take advantage of that. So right after the students, it may be a future superintendent Trunell who benefits the most because she'll be able to put her professional energy behind a lot of the other things that we, that we can work on together. So that's the celebration part. I wanted, there were a few comments that were made in, in public comment, I just want to address quickly. One was about middle school minutes. The, the quick history about that is back in 1994, before 1994, there was junior highs and they were seventh, eighth and ninth grade and because they had ninth grade, they had high school level minutes. And that stayed until this coming up school year, right? 1994 to now, what are we at, 23 years or something? Where we've had the middle school students in our community doing 64,800 minutes instead of 54,000 minutes. And the reason it was important for SRTA to push on that is because middle schoolers are middle schoolers. They're 12, right? They're three months, two months past sixth grade. Seventh graders aren't allowed to sit in the front seat, right? So they're big and they have lots of ideas and they have lots of energy and they're in this weird middle world where they're on one level, elementary students who are attending a high school. So we create this middle ground. Every other's middle school in the state that I'm aware of, I haven't checked every single one of their bell schedules, but every one of them is operating at 54,000 minutes, not 64,800 minutes. So that's the, the purpose of, of us working on this and coming to an agreement on bringing that in line with the rest of the state. It's designed to help the students so they're not overloaded. And you're not going to go to any other middle school and get those minutes, right? So just, that's, that's the intention behind it, it's better for the students. Okay, okay. Oh, I should mention, that was negotiated in 2018 that we would reduce down to those minutes. But because of COVID, we didn't do it last year, we're going to do it this year. Which brings me to that point, the reason we're going to do it this year is because next year, we have agreed that we are going to operate as if we're going five, you know, all day, every day, five days a week, right? So at the moment, a couple of people ask that if we, if we have to have an MOU going forward for next year. We haven't specifically agreed that we don't need an MOU, we haven't talked about it, to be honest. SRTA has the right and, and we reserve the right to demand a bargain if we need to. And the virus is doing well, we think that Governor Newsom is going to lift the tier system all the way on June 15th. Everything is, we agree that it looks like we aren't going to need it next year. So there's a caveat there, if there's a variant or spike or things change, we reserve our right to negotiate. But as the trajectory that we're on right now, it doesn't look like we need to. So I know that's not quite the answer some parents wanted, but that's where it sits right now. We're not, we, we don't intend to demand a bargain, but things change, we'll see what happens. I wanted, I, I know sometimes I wait and I hold part of the talk about something that's coming later, but we've agreed that we'll go ahead and do it all together, so it's not confusing. But, so I just want to mention that, I want to recognize that there's a dilemma around renaming schools, right? I understand that there are some board members and some community members who are eager to rename schools. I don't want to discount those feelings. If, if you took the idea of generic suburban elementary school X in Northern California and we're going to take the name and instead of name it after some white guy, we're going to name it after a person of color who's local as a way to symbolize the values and all the work we're doing around equity. And we want to reconsider those names and make sure we're honoring people that are important to us. And you put up the two names that we're putting in here, George Ortiz and Dolores Hurtta. That sounds like a fantastic idea, right? These are important people, all those concepts are good concepts. That's if it's generic. When you actually, this is what I'm learning this week is I talk to parents and teachers. I haven't talked to students, but I've talked to parents and teachers. And when you actually do it to their school, it's hard because that's their school and it's their community and those associations from those names mean different things. And I mention that because I, I, I think it's totally reasonable to add the two names that were added on one level and on another level, if the community members aren't there yet, my, our request is that you honor the process. And if we're not ready to change the names, we may need to lengthen the process to have the conversation. I don't think it's time to throw it away, I think it's, I would be wrong, I think it would be wrong to force it in when the community is not there yet, but I also think it, it does merit more conversation. So that's, that's, in general, the SRTA position is when you invite us to come and be on committees and we do all that work, we know it's still ultimately your choice, that doesn't change, but we really want our time respected and we want the process respected. And we're willing to spend more time to talk about it and get it right. So I imagine you heard some voices from teachers later tonight, but that's where SRTA is on that. I did that one. The last one is, we, we know we're getting about $61 million coming in and we know that that money is being spent so that we can absorb the cost of reopening and so that we can support our students in this year. We all recognize the state, the government, everybody recognizes this is an important year coming up. We, and we have the $61 million for it. There are dilemmas of schedule that make it hard to choose, should we have a combo or should we hire another teacher, right? And on the limb on one side is a combo class saves a teacher, which when you do all the driven costs of benefits and all this stuff, it's about $100,000. So if you go, hey, let's eliminate one combo, it's about $100,000. That's a lot of money. So sometimes you look at the numbers and you're just like, man, this isn't worth $100,000, we don't have enough students, we can't make it work. And sometimes you get enough kids, you're like, great, we have enough, let's open it. What I, what I want to, to consider is when you get the tweener, it's like, oh, this is a tough one. Hire the teacher, you know, save the program for this year with those $61 million that were specifically given this year to spend on these years' kids for this year's relaunch. So that's not, I don't think that's a resolution from the board. I think it's a million different decisions by dozens and hundreds of people every day on all kinds of little things. But I think where it expresses itself in a big way for teachers, two, one is combos, like I mentioned, the other one is in programs. So if you're looking at your master's schedule and you're like, oh, we have declining enrollment or we have fewer students who have signed up for the elective. I want to recognize that some of that is because we have a lot of Fs because COVID was hard. And we had Fs before COVID. So it doesn't necessarily mean that program isn't valuable and we can save some money. It doesn't necess, especially this year. It doesn't mean that program's dying on the vine, it means when graduation's on the line and the kid's got to take math for a second time or a third time and he doesn't get to take an elective, that's a general comment. There, the numbers are going to look skewed. So if there's a tweener, if you got something you don't have the kids for, you don't. But if it's a tweener, we're asking you for this year, for this money, for these kids, take the risk, err on the side of, you know, we hope they come, we think they're going to come. In general, we kind of go, ah, we might need to see the whites of their eyes, we don't want to hire yet until we see if they enroll. For this year, we should take this stance that we are going to be ready for them. They may or may not come, we don't know yet. It's hard to enroll some of our families on parent square with technology, with all these issues, we know about that. Let's err on the side of, let's be ready for them. And if we get it wrong and we spend that money, the consequence is we'll have smaller class sizes if they don't come. And that is a pretty good thing too, when you're recovering from COVID. So thank you for hearing all those things. Thank every single one of you that's been involved in my presidency the last four years and helping all the growth that we've done. I think that our new agreement is a symbol of that, but it's just one example of where things are better all over the place. So good on you for, good timing, Anna Trunell, we're glad that you're here too and I have every intention of making sure we keep doing that going forward, thank you all.
Thank you, President Lyon. Superintendent's report, Superintendent Kitamora.
Good evening, everybody. First, I want to begin with something that I learned from Heather Rossi Garcia as a part of Crush and some of the things that our teachers have been doing. And that is to give thanks and to honor the land that I'm sitting on right now in this board meeting. And that is the land of the Wapo, Southern Pomo and also a sliver part of the Great and Ranche Ria. So my heartfelt gratitude to the indigenous people who came far before me in this land. And with that, I also would like to say that I don't think it's fair if Anna Trunell has to follow the president and the, of the two unions in the future. I think she should get to go first because I, what I've experienced is between Tammy and Will, I don't have much else to say. But what you've experienced is there's always something I'm going to say. And so a couple of things that I want to address are the number of activities that our students get to participate in. Dr. Guzman put together a spreadsheet for me of all of the things that each of the schools are doing, K8 through 12 for the end of the year. And boy, what a relief, what a joy is to see activities happening at the end of the school year. With that, we also have to remember that we're not through, we're not through, quite through everything yet in terms of being safe. We did have an occurrence of a COVID infection that we had to quarantine a sports program again. And I know there were some questions about that, but the good news is we still followed the protocols and we rescheduled those games so that the students who were in their final couple of games still get to play. And so I think, you know, that, that's a positive. The other thing too, I want us to not forget, we're switching to a new student information system. We're going from illuminate to Aries. And those of you that are educators with me a long time, you know, you remember Aries. I loved Aries. I loved Aries in the Grant District. Anna Trunell, I thought it was great and Rick Edson. So we will be switching to that. But here's the piece that I am so, so, so pleased and again demonstrates commitment. We've had fifty counselors already begin training. We've had nine hundred and forty-four teachers already do PD around Aries. We have, you know, just just spots and spots of registrars, counseling secretaries, ESOMs. All different and many different folks already beginning training and that is such a good sign as we launch this summer. And into the fall. So I want to thank everybody for that. Some other good news, if you can believe it, our two, our final bonds for two thousand and fourteen. Bond measure have been sold. And just in this last round, I'd like the taxpayers to know. That under the direction of Rick Edson and Mike Braff for the bond and our bond counsel. By refunding and refinancing, don't ask me, ask them. We actually saved tax taxpayers nine hundred thousand dollars. So I think that's good news and we've done that before. And when Rick presents in July, he will give you a total of the millions that we've saved in, saved taxpayers. By refunding and refinancing in a way to lower interest rates. So that that is fantastic, fantastic news. Let me see, let me look at my notes. In 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 tonight, hearing everybody talk about. Art Quets classes and all the things, programs and combo classes and return to school. Every single one of them is important. Every single one of them does have our attention. I I will tell you that what it felt like was. In my mind was, how do we fund all of this? How how do we fund being able to pay teachers and classified staff what they should be paid? And the benefits along with keeping class sizes at a at a at a level that. Especially for this coming year are are beneficial to kids. So please know we're looking at all of that. But even though you hear that term of sixty million dollars tonight in a, the presentation, you're gonna hear. Kind of where all of that is and what's going on. We're not finished yet with, you know, some of the priorities and and it isn't a year. Remember, extended learning needs to extend into next summer. And if we can stretch it into the following school year. So ju- just please, please keep that in mind. Oh, and that, you know, if you remember, we did not release or cut eleven elementary positions. So that they could help offset combo classes and we are still looking at it as we are gathering enrollment. Enrollment is still down and we're hoping that we will continue to get people, you know, to come and enroll, but just just know that. Let me see. I think I think that's it, the the. Hold on, there was one more thing. Oh, so the the final thing I want to leave with is. I think you heard President Lyon say that there's not an intention to look at an MOU at this point. Our intention is to put the safety factors and mitigations into our district safety plan. That is a a plan that we have regularly that's approved by the board. We know enough now about what we need to do for safety and health around a pandemic. That it can now be a part of our regular practice and 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 bring kids back five days a week. Full days. So you'll be seeing more about that. Tonight was the only night that I didn't have a report on return to school. Because now the next steps for return to school are going to be actually shifting over. You know, to Anna Trunell and getting things ready for our next couple of board meetings. I only have two board meetings left and so. Just just getting that switched over, waiting for our TAs to be ratified. So it it isn't that we're not providing information. Right now, our focus has been on getting to the end of the school year, getting our unions and TAs ratified. And moving and now moving forward, we'll, you'll hear more about, and I'm hoping at the next board meeting. At least a draft of what the that emergency plan looks like as a part of board policy. So. With that, President Fong, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Kita Mora. I can say that two more times at least.
No more times.
A bunch more times, to tell you the truth. My report frankly is just to take on to President Lyon. I am so pleased and the board is so proud of. The relationship that district management is cre- has created and SRTA and CSCA have created with management. To bring us to these TAs. And the the difference is palpable in terms of how things were some years ago and I'm extremely thankful. The board is extremely thankful. We're very pleased and proud of everybody for all the hard work that you've put in. Our lead negotiator for SRTA, Catherine Howell, thank you so much and Anna T, thank you so much. Rick Edson also, of course, Tammy Alfonso and Diane. Absolutely, for making this a relational thing because we are. Working together. And so the kinds of things that were coming out and and the board was hearing in terms of how we were working it out and yes, disagreements, but we're working it out together. In a relationship is is really how we should be doing things. So I'm very pleased with that and thank you and great appreciation on behalf of the board. Other board, we, other board members' reports tonight, I think we're gonna start with Stephanie Manieri.
Thank you, President Fong. My my report is is really brief and it's less of a report and more of a reminder just because of. Recent events that we've seen in our community surrounding emergencies, specifically fires. Where we have already been declared. That that we're in fire season. And so this is just a reminder, it's probably coming sooner than we usually. Get it, but just a reminder to be prepared for all of our families and our students and our staff to be prepared for an emergency. I think I read something today that since May fourteenth, we've had vegetation fires on almost every single day. And then today, the most recent events over. Close to Reebly and then also in Sonoma Valley. So it's here, it's happening and I just wanted to remind everyone. To be prepared for the next disaster because it it feels. It feels imminent. So just start, just a reminder, that was my brief comment.
Thank you. Good reminder. Director Sheffield.
I want to say more comments again now that we're at the end of the school year. And I know that I speak for my colleagues as well when I say how proud we are of this year's graduates. Our student board member Omar, you know, we love you dearly and your amazing class of twenty twenty-one. And knowing that the world turned upside down on you and it just dumped right on top during your glory days of high school and it's not fair. But you guys have all risen above it and you guys soar and I'm proud of all of you. And I'm looking forward to attending the graduation ceremony at Montgomery next week. So excited. That will be the highlight of my year. I also want to say thank you so much to our teachers and all, all, all of our school staff and administrators. You guys are our heroes. You held it down for us and you kept the ship afloat. And then lastly, sort of my end of the school year pitch. To to parents, be sure to keep your children's brains actively working through the summer. Our our summer programs at our schools and our extended learning programs that Diane brought up. Summer reading programs through Sonoma County Library and the presentation that we had a few weeks back. Congressman Thompson has a great reading program. Arts, sports, you name it, parents, just keep those kids active and happy and I'll stop there.
Thank you, Director Flores.
Thank you, President Fong. I'll be brief too. I just want to say, I just want to reiterate some of the words that you've mentioned. Some of the other boards member had mentioned. I just want to say that I'm looking forward to being part of the Santa Rosa High School commencement ceremony. This will be my first and I I just can't wait to be part of that. Also, a a special thanks to the negotiating team, both SRTA, CSCA, actually all three. The trifecta here and our district negotiators. Thank you. It took a lot of work. To 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 get to that, to that agreement. And I also like to say thank you. I would like to thank Principal Brad Coster Alley for extending an invitation to the board. I was able to visit, you know, Hidden Valley and see, you know, students at work and teachers and classified staff. That's always very endearing. So I just want to say thank you and 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 seeing kids, you know, back at school was very heartwarming. And that's it. That's all I have.
And Director De La Cruz.
Just a brief shout out to SRCS for hosting vaccine clinics. For kids twelve to eighteen who are now eligible. Please go get vaccinated. It is the easiest way to keep our schools open in the fall. A note of caution. Because so much of the state is opening up because there's a lot more folks who feel safer and walking around without masks on. The rise of COVID cases and kids who are not yet vaccinated is going up. And so just please do everything you can right now to. Make sure that we are going to go back as as normal as we can in the fall. Thank you, SRCS, for really making sure that, you know, kids in the most impacted neighborhoods, which are all our neighborhoods in Santa Rosa City Schools. Have access to the vaccine. You don't need a whole lot of paperwork. You don't need to print stuff out before you get there. Do make sure that you bring somebody who can verify your age with you if you're under eighteen. And there are lots of incredible people there. Todos hablan español, si ocupas ayuda en español también hay mucha gente allí que habla en español y que te pueden ayudar. So please get your vaccines. Thank you.
Any other board members want to make a short report? All right. Thank you, everybody. We are moving on to E items. Number one, it's an action. Resolution recognizing May as the month of speech and language pathologist.
Yes, this is awesome and I'm gonna actually turn it right over to Assistant Superintendent Mizra.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kitamura, President Fong and board members. We are very excited to present. Our appreciation to our speech and language pathologists throughout Santa Rosa City Schools. Speech and language pathologists, SLPs, are a very important part of our system. They do many important operations and work from our preschool program, all the youngsters, all the way up to age twenty-two. They're also a very strong and important part of our MTSS system. At the elementary schools. They are a very important part of early diagnosis with students and trying to recognize. Important differences between a a speech deficit and possibly just a language deficit. And in fact, one of the things we're working on with our speech and language team is to make sure that we do not over identify our students, our EL students. To be able to recognize that and the speech and language pathologists are one of the professionals that have a real strong background in that. I also want to mention, you know, that there's been a number of things that they've been involved with as we work through our COVID return. Wearing masks and coverings, not only were a a real hindrance for many students and our teachers. And a lot of our speech SLPs were able to kind of work with teachers and students and kind of get past that and do the accommodations that were necessary. To make sure we could be both safe and we could have strong communication skills, which of course is 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 the strength. So with those ideas and the great appreciation for all our speech and language pathologists. We want to appreciate the board for the recognition of this resolution and that I'll turn it back to you, President Fong.
Thank you so much, Assistant Superintendent Mizra, and we do appreciate our speech and language pathologists, experts. Who work with us. Thank you so much. It's an important job and we appreciate you and I know you're spread thin. We're moving on to item E two. This is a public hearing.
What, this is an action item, President Fong?
Oh, sorry.
There may be a hand up.
Okay, any questions, board? We are moving to public comment on this.
So if you'd like to comment on item E one, please raise your hand at this time. And our first comment is Lucinda Moore. Ms. Moore, are you there?
Thank you, I'm mute.
Yeah, I've asked her to unmute. Just once again, I want to remind everybody, this is public comment on our first action item, which is the resolution recognizing May as the month. Of the speech and language pathologist. So if you.
I apologize, my hand raised inadvertently. I didn't know it was raised.
No problem. So if anyone would like to comment on this resolution about speech and language pathologists, please raise your hand. And we're going to allow Jay Andrade. To comment and if you could say your full name for the record, please.
Hello, I have inadvertently raised my hand for this topic, so I will wait for.
No problem. Thank you very much.
This is probably all my fault, but okay, we're back on speech pathologists.
We have no hands raised for the speech pathologist resolution.
I'd like to move to approve resolution twenty twenty twenty-one dash seventy-four, recognizing. May first through May thirty-first as better hearing and speech.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion by Alexandria De La Cruz and a second by Clerk Ever Flores. Board, any discussion or questions? Yes, Director Manieri.
I just, I just want to take a a moment to say thank you to to our speech and language pathologists. This is. Something near and dear to my heart. A really, really good friend of mine, her, her little sister received services through our district. These specific services and and through and through those services, she has felt really empowered and. Has learned to reframe her disability as just being differently abled. And and she is just an amazing young woman and and is, I think, this year was the the president of the of the school. Student Body President for Santa Rosa Middle School. And so I'm just really, really proud of her and I know that it it wouldn't have been possible without the work that you're all doing. So I just have deep gratitude for all of our staff doing this work.
Thank you for saying that because I can add that at the high school level, I know that it's another place where students can find a relationship. A solid relationship because they see the speaks, see them frequently. And it's it's over time, so that relationship can be a very strong one and that helps people along their journey too. All right, I think we're ready for a vote.
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, and that passes. Thank you, everybody. All right, we are moving now on to E two. This is a public hearing for the renaming of. Luther Burbank Elementary School and the recommendation of the Luther Burbank Elementary School Facilities Naming Committee Advisory Committee and. The public hearing is now open.
So if there is someone in. Excuse me, President Fong, would you like to allow students to speak first? And public comment and let them raise their hands first or not?
Yes, yes, we were about to say that.
Okay. So at this time, what we're going to do is just like we did with the return to school items that we've had in the past, we're going to lower all hands right now. Sort of create a blank slate. And now ask that only students who want to comment on the naming of Luther Burbank, raise their hands at this time. So this is students only. And then we will get to everyone else in a moment. Okay, so students who want to comment on item E two, raise your hands at this time. And I wanted to say too that if you have called in on a phone. And you don't have the raise hand button, you can push star nine to raise your hand and then wait for your turn. All right, so all of our students have raised their hands. And thinking maybe they're looking for their buttons. We'll give them just a couple more seconds. All right, and so now if anyone else in the audience would like to. Comment on item E two, the public hearing for the naming of Luther Burbank. Please raise your hands. And that way we can take the students first. Thank you, everybody. And a reminder again, we have a two-minute time limit, I believe. Is that true, President Fong? And a reminder again, we have a two minute time limit, I believe. Is that true, President Fong?
Yes, thank you. It is two minutes.
And, and a one hour limit total. And we're going to start with our comments with Viviana Seha. And I'm going to have to put her in the panel to speak. So here she comes.
Hi, my name is Jocelyn. I'm in fourth grade. I've been going to Luther Burbank for five years. I have a lot of history at the school. My uncle and aunts and my mom went to this school, so please don't change the, the school name. I love the school name and you should too.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Faith Ennis.
Hi, hi, I'm here to speak on me and my mother's behalf and will be reading you a letter she wrote. As a parent of Santa Rosa City School students who attended Luther Burbank Elementary School and lives in Luther Burbank neighborhood, I implore you not to change the name of this landmark school. I'm aware that there was at least one poll conducted, research taken, interviews and other methods of fact finding that indicate that the concerns regarding Mr. Burbank's actions, values, and in general, the manner in which he led his life has been inconclusive to demonstrate anything that may have us question his namesake given to a public institution. That said, I acknowledge I am not immediately involved in the fact finding process and I may be incorrect. Regardless of the facts, I would like to speak to the spirit of the name change. I refer to a comment made by trustee Alegra de la Cruz in a recent Zenoma magazine article. I think about where I am, where I come from every day, she says. I do my best to honor that history. I recognize that the history of Luther Burbank Elementary School is not an inauguralist to what she was speaking to at the time of this article. And yet, if the board of trustees does not honor the voice of today's Burbank families or the history of naming the school after Luther Burbank, then I will be incredibly concerned about how the Santa Rosa City Schools Board will honor the future of our district's students, families and staff voices.
Thank you. Next is Emmanuel Leon.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Emmanuel Leon and I'm here today to speak on my perspective on why your decision of changing the name of my many year attended, full of great memory schools name. You may already have your mindset set on your idea of changing Burbank's name, but I think that the school name is perfect the way it is. All the astonishing people that work and attend the school is what makes Burbank special. They represent what Burbank means. A family, a second family for all of us. And then all of a sudden, having the unfortunate unwelcoming news that a group of people wanted to change the school's name. Now it is a pitiful despairing reality. If you are hearing the many people who are disagreeing with you, you will understand how this decision greatly affects their everyday life at school. Because doing the right thing for the people that are right in front of you, who you represent and who are the very people you talk about, quote unquote, uplifting, need you to hear them and listen to them. You can uplift us now by honoring our choice and trusting what we are telling you we identify with. Thank you for listening and please keep my point of view in mind.
Thank you. Next is Julian Leon Zavala. Julian, are you there?
I am here.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Julian Leon and I am a part of the Luther Burbank family. I am proposing that we keep the name Luther Burbank Elementary School because we had that name for so many years and had so amazing, and had so many amazing students that went to Luther Burbank Elementary. If you decide to change the name, you will not only change the name, you will change the feeling of family we have in Luther Burbank. So please, when deciding, remember that we had that name for, for many years and hope to have that name for more years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Christina Palacios.
Hello, school board members. My name is Christina Palacios. I am a graduating senior and I am a proud alumni of Luther Burbank. I please do not change the name of my alma mater Luther Burbank Elementary School. This school has been represented by so many, so many thousands of so many other students who have won different certificates, medals, and so much more, that they feel represented so proudly of this school. And as, as, and I want to mention, as Ms. Dain, the Dr. Kitamura said, there are not a lot of there's not a lot of money that the, the city has. And we should, instead of focusing on changing the name, which is going to cost thousands of dollars, we should be focusing on fixing the school, helping create a better education for our students, for the students at Luther Burbank, creating a more welcoming, a more better environment at school. So please do not change the name of Luther Burbank. Luther Burbank represents values, values that I uphold right now. You know, to respect, to care, to help, to help the earth, to help the people, to help my fellow colleagues, to help my, my school, my Luther Burbank. I come back to volunteer. I come back proudly to represent this school. This school represents a lot of who I am, my history. And it is because of this school that I have had a powerful voice in my community. So not change the name means so much to so many students. And at the time like this, a lot from the younger students, they already have lost a lot. And so taking away this name, their name, their history, it, it, it will create a great damage to them. So please do not change Luther Burbank.
Thank you. Next is Axel Martinez.
Hello, my name is Axel Martinez and I'm a fourth grader at Luther Burbank. I've been going to Luther Burbank for five years now. I felt very sad from the day I knew you wanted to change my school's name. Please do not change the name Luther Burbank, because if you take our name, you take our identity. Many of my friends have won awards and what will that matter anymore? So much hard work for nothing. It will be my same friends, same teacher, same buildings. But if you change our name, you take my history and my friends' history. And that is what matters the most. Burbank is my second home. Please do not take our name away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jose Torres.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, President Fong, members of the board, Superintendent Kitamura and members of the cabinet. My name is Jose Torres and I attended Burbank Elementary School. I have fond memories of my time there. I didn't speak much English at that time and the teachers there took me under their wing and provided an excellent elementary education. What makes a school community is not the name of the school, but the people who work there and give so much to the children. I'm a father of a 12 year old who's severely disabled with a genetic syndrome. While attending Burbank as a child, we were told he was an important person. And I still think he is important, but never told that he was a eugenicist. Burbank would consider my daughter unfit and he believed that humans with their, her qualities should not exist in the world. How as a Burbank alumni, can I support keeping the name of this school? My daughter brings love and affection to the world. And although she is different, people like her should not be eradicated from society. Again, what makes my memories of my time in elementary school special? The people who worked there, who cared about me. That will exist regardless of the name. When you know better, you do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Guy Cottle.
Hello, my name is Guy Cottle. And I am a school teacher at Burbank, been there 25 years. And last weekend, my daughter asked me, you know, how's your class doing? And I told her, you know, it's a strange time, but my kids are doing well. And she answered me the same way she always does. She says, Dad, those aren't your kids. I'm your kid, right? The point, the, the point here is that it's all about relationship. You know, that's, that's what makes it go. And I think that guy that just spoke before me would agree. And, and the kids don't have a relationship with you, but they do. And I teach them about democracy. I teach them about the power of speaking up for yourself. And that's what they've done. They've spoken up for themselves in the process of trying to decide for a name. And this is the sad part. If, if, if this decision is made today to take away the name, there's a lot of people who believe that they have spoken up. And it's in the press Democrat, it's, it's in the surveys, it's in the polls, the community doesn't want a name change. Burbank is a scientist. I teach him to my classes as a scientist. It's an excellent, excellent teachable moment for scientific method. I introduce them to botany through him. The kids take field trips to, to the gardens. He's a great person. He teaches that kids should be immersed in love. If you read, you know, his, his book is based on what was around at that time, but he does teach that kids should be immersed in love. He's a local hero. Now we're talking about spending, what, 15 to $25,000 on this, on a name change? Burbank needs crossing guards, yard duties, after school tutorials, exterior paint job, bathrooms, lines on the basketball court. They need that, we need that lawn cut regularly. These are all good things that are going to raise self-esteem and raise the perception that the school is this magical place. So please don't change the name. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ross House.
Hello, my name is Ross Hawes. I'm a teacher at Luther Burbank Elementary School. I've been teaching there for 22 years. My initial ask tonight is for the board to honor our families and learning community and allow requests to keep their school identity and school name Luther Burbank. I've worked with many of you on the screen tonight and I've been inspired by our work together and so proud of the many things that we've accomplished for our kids and families in SRCS. I also know the intent and compassion for many of your hearts. And it's because of this, I know why we are here tonight. I know why we've begun this process and why we have conversations about names, about representation, and about uplifting students and families. We serve and of course, increasing equity. It's also the reason I make my potential second request of you tonight. If you're unwilling or unable to fulfill the ask of our families that have been actively answering your calls for them to practice their agency, to be stakeholders, to participate and to be collaborators with the district and their school, you must pause and hold off on your decision tonight if you're going to ignore their input and voices to keep their name. This naming process has been plagued with process injustices and endless inconsistent twists and turns. Some of these have been apparent through direct and indirect requests not to send board members letters or emails about the issue, difficulties with technology, issues with the pandemic, and continued changes and inconsistencies to how the, how the district and the board have handled the renaming process. I love my Burbank community, families and coworkers. I'm so proud of what they're growing up to become. I'm inspired by the challenges and successes that define and elevate their character. I'm humbled and honored to be allowed to be considered a facet of their family. I'm just concerned that this is a broken path to what is intended to be a good idea. I hope that tonight, my beloved Burbank community is able to articulate themselves in the way that really shows you who they are. They do appreciate your help, but let them tell you who they are and define their identity. They're smart, inspiring and strong. Please hear them. Please don't discount their value today or for a noble goal for tomorrow that violates policy and process and takes a questionable path for you, chief. Thank you for your time tonight. Please hear our families. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder for everyone, this is a public hearing for the naming of Luther Burbank. And we have a two minute limit on comments and there will be a clock visible to help you with that. The next comment is Jennifer Collins.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Collins and I am a parent of two children who attended Luther Burbank Elementary. My oldest daughter, who went through this wonderful school, is now on her way to Durham University in Northern England for her university education. I'm speaking tonight because I am concerned about a conflict of interest between Ms. De La, Allegría de la Cruz, Learning House and Luther Burbank Elementary. Learning House is taking over a portion of Luther Burbank Elementary, thereby displacing their music classes, counselor, student engagement coordinator, after school care and teacher on special assignment, thus creating many disruptions.
To our speaker, I am, I'm not sure how this is about the naming of the school.
I'm getting there. There are rumors that Ms. De La Cruz is enrolled in Learning House. Additionally, one of the names put forth by Ms. De La Cruz as a possible new name for Luther Burbank Elementary is Dolores Huerta, a close family friend of Ms. De La Cruz. This reminds me of when the Santa Rosa French American Charter School was being considered as a replacement of Doyle Park Elementary, which it later did replace. During this process, it was found out that one of the Santa Rosa City Schools board members, Tad Wakefield, had a child on the waiting list for the French school. There was a controversy as to whether he could be impartial in any decisions made on the matter and a legal suit was brought against the school board's decisions. Later, Tad Wakefield had to recuse himself from the further negotiations. I believe that the personal involvement of Ms. De La Cruz with several goings on at the Luther Burbank site smacks of impropriety, conflict of interest, and perhaps a little self-aggrandizement, and that she should recuse herself from these decisions. Additionally, as I see in the agenda that this item falls under the board's strategic priorities of four, five and six, five is equity and excellence, and six is family engagement and community partnerships. Well, the families are engaged and they have spoken up and want equity of their voices. Are you listening? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is N. Lily Galindo.
Yes, my name is Merina Lily. I want to make it very clear that we here at Burbank have nothing against Ms. Dolores Huerta and Mr. George Ortiz, not at all. Their work for the community is worthy of admiration. No one can test that. The issue here is that through the pursuit of, I assume, a noble cause, the community is being trampled. Besides, we, or at least I have made my research and I have know that the inflammatory claims against Mr. Luther Burbank were unfounded. So it makes sense to keep our name as is. But, you know, I can see someone objecting by saying, oh, Burbank's demographics are mostly Latinos, so the name should be changed to reflect that. And to that, I say, community and family does not work like that. Because if the names of buildings and places influence my person so much as to either make me feel included or rejected, then why is it that when I walked into Maria Carrillo's campus a couple of years ago, I did not feel welcomed and I didn't feel warm and fuzzy? You would think that I would, because I mean Maria Carrillo, right? But I didn't. So please realize that you do not cause change to the names of buildings. You do that by interacting with people. And here at Luther Burbank Elementary, it doesn't matter what your background is or what your name may be. It doesn't. Once you are here, you are part of the Burbank family. So if you truly want to empower us, if you truly want to help us, then listen. And I'll end with this. El que no ayuda, que no estorbe. If you're not going to help, then don't get in the way. And again, please listen to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cynthia Spigarelli.
I'm Cynthia Spigarelli. I'm a second grade teacher at Luther Burbank Elementary. Dear board members and community, I feel Luther Burbank Elementary School is being erased. We do have equity issues in our district. The district offers more and more charter and magnet school options, mostly to address white flight, while neighborhood schools, which used to be the foundation of American education, are quietly dwindling. This is a trend seen across the United States, which leads to schools becoming more stratified and segregated than ever before. If you want to address equity, address this. But this is a thorny problem. It's much easier to slap a new name on a school to win social justice points than it is to actually provide equitable learning situations across the district. So in the name of social justice, we find ourselves tasked with a name change in a year of COVID, where our families, who are disproportionately frontline workers, are faced with working, keeping their families safe and finding childcare or juggling their jobs to stay home and tend to their children's educations. We formed a committee despite these challenges. We followed the district process. We did the research. We proposed names. We voted. Our families and students overwhelmingly chose Luther Burbank with a runner-up of Burbank. Then the district says, oh, but you didn't include Dolores Huerta or George Ortiz. Well, you didn't ask us to do that before. You didn't do the research and propose it yourselves. You didn't follow your own procedures. Then, at the very last minute and almost too late to organize ourselves against it, we find out that the district is going to impose the name of their choice on our school. This is process injustice. This is breaking trust with our families. This is the opposite of what equity and social justice should be about. If you want equity, listen to the voices of our students, parents, and community. If you want justice, follow your own rules. If you want a win-win situation, show our community respect and walk back this forced name change. Thank you for truly listening with an open mind.
Thank you. Next is Brenda Consani. Brenda, are you there? We can come back to Brenda. We're going to go next to Griselda Gil.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Griselda, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you, yes.
Okay, sorry. I was having difficulty.
Now we're having difficulty hearing you. Do you perhaps have a phone or something nearby? Ms. Gil, we cannot hear you.
And I didn't express that I...
Unfortunately, we're having some trouble hearing you. If you would raise your hand, maybe just reconnect to the meeting again and raise your hand. I'll call on you again as soon as possible. Thank you. Next is Johannes. And Johannes, if you could please say your last name for the record.
Hello and good evening. My name is Jill Lilly. And as a proud former student of Luther Burbank Elementary School and a Latina individual, I am conflicted with the motion to change the name of my elementary school. Whilst I understand just how important it is to be aware of societal inequities that exist within our systems and communities, it is also incredibly easy to add good intention to shallow acts in the name of social justice. Unfortunately, this is what I see within this motion to change the name when there are many more issues that have been brought to your attention by Burbank's community, many of which have been stated before in earlier comments. Luther Burbank as a man was most certainly not perfect, but he left a legacy of nurture and growth. And this is exactly what has been pushed forward and to this day thrives at Luther Burbank Elementary School. To change the name would be to take away the Burbank's, the Burbank community's agency and redefining history for ourselves in order to grow and nurture our future generations. If you take away our name, you will break our trust. We have been betrayed before. Please do not add yourself to the list. Do not take away our name.
Thank you. Next is April Inosensio.
Hi, everyone. My name is Adriely Inosensio. I went to Luther Burbank, proud Bengal here, Cook Middle School, Elsie Allen, the JC, and now I'm a proud Siwa. As a first-generation student, I know exactly how important it is for us to use our voice when we know something is not right. When I heard this, I felt anger. I was upset. And now I am just here to let you know how we feel. I urge you all not to try to bypass the voices of our Burbank students and community that have made it very clear over and over now that we do not want to change our name. This is our name and we wear it with pride. Listen to the voices that you have called upon. We are speaking and we are allowed tonight, letting everyone here know that we do not want our name changed. A name change alone won't reach equity. Let's focus on our time and money on programs through K through eight ethnic studies and having important conversations that truly help our students feel seen and let them truly understand what equality means. Because a name change does not equal that. A name change doesn't change everything that we've been through. We need to go ahead and make the students learn and understand what equity truly stands for. So I'm hoping that you guys can take this and truly trust the process that you guys have created for us and really hear us that we do not want that name change. A name change doesn't change anything. Please use that money, use all your time and effort into something that will actually change the way our students feel and understand equity. The name change won't do it for us. Please do not change that. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. And I just want to remind everyone, this is the public hearing for the naming of Luther Burbank and we do have a Spanish interpretation available. So if we have someone who wants to make a comment in Spanish, we can interpret that as well. Perhaps a board member could just say that in Spanish, if you don't mind. You just got muted.
What was that?
You muted when you started talking. Would you tell them again?
I think someone muted me because my mute button is on. I mean, it's like open. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Director Manieri. Next is, well, we're going to try Brenda Consani again. Brenda, are you there?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes.
Please go ahead.
As of 3:00 PM today, the reader survey from the Press Democrat reflects the same results that both Monroe and Burbank Community Advisor Committees have submitted. Monroe, out of 484 votes, 344, or 71%, voted for the school to be named Monroe Elementary, the same one that the committee selected. In Burbank, 400 votes out of 523, or 76%, voted for the school to retain the name Luther Burbank, again, the number one pick of the committee. The committees were given guidelines to follow, which they did, only be told in the 11th-hour decision by the superintendent that she didn't approve of their findings and chose to add two names of their, of her choosing. The evidence gathered, presented, and attached in tonight's agenda supports the overwhelming voice of the community. I encourage you to look beyond your own personal agenda and listen to the voices of the students and the community. Don't silence the voices of the very communities that you sought to uphold. Let their voices be heard. Let them keep their identities and let them know that democracy is not dead. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for watching the clock. Next is Aaron Harkey.
My apologies. I did not mean to raise my hand. I am so sorry.
No problem. Thank you. Next is Adrian Juarez. And Mr. Juarez, we do have interpretation.
Can you hear me? Good evening. Miembro de la Mesa Directiva. Creo que me conocen, ¿verdad? My name is Adrian. I think you know me. This is, this is a very important topic that we are talking about tonight. Es algo muy fundamental. He escuchado todo esto, lo que las personas, estudiantes, han estado hablando. Y anteriormente muchos padres también se han comunicado conmigo, expresar sus preocupaciones. Y un comentario creo que es, debemos pensar primero en los estudiantes. ¿Cómo? Si me permite traducir, señor Juarez. Adelante. So this is a very basic issue and we've heard some students and some parents. And I wanted to add a comment. Por favor, continúe. Yo creo que para tomar una decisión de ese tipo tenemos que ver una visión del futuro, qué tanto va a perjudicar a nuestros estudiantes, nuestros hijos, ¿verdad? No es un buen tiempo por el momento que estamos pasando ahorita, ¿verdad? Pandemia, los desastres naturales que se vienen. Entonces, es algo muy difícil que pone a pensar a nuestros estudiantes, a nuestros padres, que les quita el sueño, ¿verdad? Entonces, esta escuela creo que se ha reconocido mucho tiempo, muchos años atrás por sus buenos éxitos, buenos logros. He escuchado testimonios así, ¿verdad? Entonces, creo yo que de la noche a la mañana, que todo esto desaparezca, yo creo que puede afectitar mucho emocionalmente, psicológicamente a los estudiantes, ¿verdad? ¿Me permite? So I think when you are looking at making a decision like this, that we need to consider the vision of the future. What impact might this have in the students, our children? This is not the best moment probably in light of the pandemic and disasters sometime that we're facing to take away their dreams. So we know that this school has had a lot of success. There's, we've heard testimonies about that. So to overnight change, make a change like this could have an, an impact, emotionally psychologically impact. Creo yo que si hay un proceso, que se ha iniciado un proceso para este renombramiento de escuelas de nombre, creo yo que lo justo sería, se respetará los comentarios, la opinión y la decisión de todos los padres, ¿verdad?, que se están haciendo esto, si se ha decidido esto, a respetar su decisión de ellos, porque ellos son la base de la educación también de nuestros hijos. Nosotros transmitimos esa fuerza a ellos. Entonces, uno como padre se va a sentir, pues yo creo que desanimado si no están tomando en cuenta la decisión de unos, que se mantenga este nombre, ¿verdad? Entonces, que haya un proceso transparente, ¿verdad? Si se inició así, okay, que así sea, ¿verdad? Pero no cambiar esto, las cosas, ¿verdad?, creo yo. So if there is a process to change the name, it would be fair to respect the comments, opinions, and decisions of the parents. Respect the decision of the parents because we are the foundation of our children's education. And if our voices are heard, we feel disheartened. Por último, todo lo que hacemos, yo entiendo que ustedes toman decisiones muy importantes. Nosotros como padres también tomamos decisiones muy importantes y nuestros estudiantes, nuestros hijos. Pido que tomen muy en cuenta esto, que lo estamos haciendo por nuestros estudiantes, para que tengan éxito en la vida, en el futuro. Gracias. So all, all you do, all we do, we make important decisions. You make important decisions. We make important decisions. And we're doing this for our students and how it will impact their future. So please take all this into account. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Nesheli Zuniga Contreras.
Saludos, doctora Quitamura y miembros de la Mesa Directiva. Mi familia está muy triste saber que Luther Burbank desaparecerá después de haber sido su hogar por más de nueve generaciones y donde borrarán historias y memorias que recuerdan con mucho cariño.
Greetings. Me permite, señora Zuniga? Greetings. My family is very sad to hear that Luther Burbank is going to disappear after nine generations of memories. Continúe, por favor.
El costo del cambio de nombre es injustificable. Debemos priorizar las verdaderas necesidades para nuestros estudiantes.
The cost of having this change of name cannot be justified. We should pay attention more to the real needs of the students.
Sentimos que nos están atacando emocionalmente en estos tiempos tan difíciles y nos están dando cuenta. Estas experiencias están causando ansiedad y angustia en nuestros niños.
So we feel we are being attacked emotionally and that you're not aware of this. This is causing anxiety in our children.
Enfrentamos después de esto la pérdida del director y para el próximo año la llegada de un programa que nos quita cinco salones de clase y la posible transformación a una escuela charter.
So we are facing that our principal is leaving and there's a new principal coming in. And we're also facing losing five classrooms and that maybe our school will become a charter school.
Debemos honrar el proceso y tomar en cuenta las voces de la comunidad. Demasiados cambios abrumadores, sin respeto por los sentimientos y emociones de los estudiantes y los padres.
We should honor the process and listen to the voices of the parents and the students and take the students into account.
Doctora Dayan Quitamura, permítanos recordarte como la gran persona que siempre escuchó nuestras voces cuando estas estaban aplastadas.
Doctor Quitamura, let us remember you as a person who heard our voice when our voices were squashed.
Todavía recuerdo como si fuera ayer cuando el mister Haas llegó con un grupo de jovencitos a las Olimpiadas de Ciencias y dejaron el alma poniendo el ar en alto y portando con mucho orgullo el nombre de su escuela Luther Burbank.
I remember as if it was yesterday when... Perdón, no entiendo quién llegó a la escuela.
El señor Haas.
Mister Haas came to the school and participated in some Olympics that honored our school. I'm sorry that I lost something in translation.
Continúe, por favor. Por favor, mantengan el nombre y respeten las voces de la comunidad. Gracias.
Please keep the name as it is and respect the community voice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Hinata Muniz.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I did there from kindergarten all the way to sixth grade, along with my older brother and my twin sister, and even before us, my dad. I really hope that you don't change the name because it's actually where we all came from. It's actually where I learned my life skills and everything of that nature. My twin sister, who was a special needs student, was actually the first full-enclosed student there, for sure. And also while, while my siblings and us, we were there, we actually... passed that down to our kids. And how are we supposed to do that when the name of the school is no longer there? I vote that you guys do not change the name and you should keep Luther Burbank on mention. Because it's actually where I learned, the most important thing is actually, you know, the most thing that I hold dear in my heart is actually the true friends that you do have. And I can remember actually all my teachers from Ms. Fognor all the way to Mr. Carrera, even Mr. Haas in his first year, and even our principal who's actually hands on with the thing in Vex Espinoza. And even our principal who's actually hands on with that thing in Vex Espinoza. And I actually considered some of my teachers and now, you know, as my friends. So I hope they guys keep Luther Burbank. Please don't change it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jay Andrade and if you'd like to say your full name for the record.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Jose Andrade. So I have not prepared a speech or anything, so this is going to be on the spot, it's going to be coming from my heart. And I attended Luther Burbank all the way from kindergarten to sixth grade. Born and raised here in Santa Rosa, Santa Rosa Middle School and then Santa Rosa High School. So like a fourth grader said earlier today, the name means one's identity. So I identify as a Luther Burbank student and I am proud of where I came from. And Luther Burbank shaped me into to the man I am today. Every teacher impacted me. One a lot more than any other teacher, Mr. Haas, best teacher in Sonoma County. And I said that because he's listening. So let me read some notes I wrote down. So money spent, money that's going to be spent on changing a name could go towards the students or the school and not be a waste of money. It could go into real issues that should be addressed. So this ideology of quote unquote being woke and sensitive and wanting to change names. If we allow this, then what will be next? So someone's behaviors and beliefs as a Mr. Luther Burbank should not matter now. So just leave the name as it is and listen to the students and teachers that have voted to keep the name as it is. And I am done. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Next is Angel Flores.
Hi, it's Angel Flores.
Sorry.
It's alright. So I am the vice president of the parent club at Luther Burbank Elementary. I have three children that attend the school right now. And I'm, I sat on the committee for the name change. And I'm a little frustrated because we put in so much work. We met monthly, we did surveys, then we had, we did four meetings and then we had to do public hearings. We had two of those meetings and there was a lot of, a lot of work that we put into this. And then to just have, the names weren't submitted to us. And then to just have you guys, have the names just get submitted last minute. And we didn't even get an input on that was really, I felt disrespectful to all of the work that I've put in. I felt like what the work that I did wasn't up to par or it wasn't satisfaction enough for you guys. And so you added all this extra stuff in. I'm also, I really want to keep the name. It's part of my kids' community. They identify as Luther Burbank strong. They love the school. The teachers are amazing. I feel like if the money is going to be spent changed, it should be, we should put money into other things in the school such as we need improvements to our NPR. We don't even have a basketball court, so we can have our own sports team. Only thing we have is the Science Olympiad. And now when we go to the Science Olympiad, people know Burbank show up and we compete. And so we're going to come into the Science Olympiad next year with this new name. And people are not going to know who we are. We don't have very many things to connect us. And that the Science Olympiad is one of them. So please don't change the name. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Irene. Irene, would you please state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Irene Ruano. I am a proud alumni from Luther Burbank Elementary School. I am one of those former students that represents what Luther Burbank stands for. The connection and strong relationships I built, I mean, it's amazing. And this is what Luther Burbank stands for. It's far more than just a name on a wall to us. It is a place we have called our own for many years. By renaming our school, you are erasing our history that us Bengals have built. Our community has demonstrated, we do not support this change. With this renaming, you are stripping us of our identity. The board has failed to show our community that is capable of holding a deliberative process, the models, the kind of civic seriousness we are constantly teaching our students to master. This agenda does not show that there has been an open conversation to have an inclusive process involving our community. And you know, we can all agree that COVID-19 has made education challenging. It has also made it more challenging to have important and long overdue discussions about race and justice. But the truth is that the conversations that occur inside of the classroom have far greater impact on education than the name on the outside of a school building. And there needs to be a greater focus on this. I really hope that you would consider the proposal of renaming Luther Burbank Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Robin Cabrera. Robin, are you there?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, hi. My name is Robin Cabrera. My daughter is a current fifth grader at Burbank Elementary. I also have a 24-year-old son who completed his entire elementary career at Burbank and went on to graduate from Humboldt State with a bachelor's degree in astrophysics. I attribute a lot of his success to his early influences there at Burbank. I'm disturbed by the board's recommendation to change the name of the school based on, from what I understand, was a college student's essay that had very little fact to support the accusations against one of Santa Rosa's most prominent and esteemed citizens. I'm even more disturbed by Dr. Kitamura's decision to throw additional names in the hat after seeing and hearing that the Burbank community at large is strongly opposed to renaming of the school. You all have heard about the, the opinions on the democratic process here. But I think I want to talk a little bit about the message that this sends to our kids as far as social justice goes. I think what we're trying to avoid is having kids think that it's okay to judge a group based on the actions of you. And I think the message that we're sending here, from what I understand, with very little fact about the actions and beliefs of Mr. Burbank is that we're doing the exact same thing. We are judging a man based on very little factual, very little facts and strictly opinion of a college student, not to dismiss that young woman's essay. But it seems that there was very little fact to back that up. I would like to talk a little bit about the money that it's going to cost you to change the name of the school. I was listening earlier and I didn't realize that the Art Quest program was at risk. And I think that the $15,000 to $20,000 that is going to be spent to change...
Ms. Cabrera, excuse me, I'm sorry, but the two-minute time limit is up and we have a lot of people with their hands raised more than we have time for. So thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
And that being said, we do not have enough time for the hands raised and our public hearing is scheduled to go for an hour. Even if we went a little bit over, we can take just a few more comments. There's someone here who's been waiting the whole time. Galaxy Tab is on here. Would you please state your name for the record when I move you over to comment? Hello, are you there? Okay, next is Anne West.
Good evening, superintendent and school board members. My name is Anne West and I'm a teacher at Luther Burbank Elementary. Oh my gosh, this has been quite a year. Thank you all so much for your support and hard work, especially all the very late night board meetings, trying to balance the needs of all the students, parents and community members is a Herculean task. And again, I thank you. Please remember when the idea came about the name changes for our elementary schools. It was during this already stressful year. And despite that stress, the Luther Burbank community followed protocols and procedures for the changing of the school name set forth by the board. And now on Friday, May 21st at 5:30 PM, Luther Burbank community found the rug had been pulled out from underneath them by the superintendent stating, "I will be recommending the addition of Dolores Huerta and George Ortiz. As the superintendent, I have the ability to adjust consideration brought to the board with my own recommendations." Well, thank you for wanting to, quote, "let us know first at 5:30 in the evening on a Friday before the board takes its vote." You have known about our choices for the name change at Luther Burbank since March. March. Are you making this recommendation so late in the process? Why? You want the, quote, "opportunity to lead change in areas where difficult decisions are made." But are you leading change when you are ignoring and silencing the community you are supposed to be serving? What example are you putting forth to your stakeholders when you deny their choice and voice? Please don't walk away leaving this as your legacy. You have gotten our district through so much since 2017 with your incredible organization and thoughtfulness and kindness throughout all of these difficult times. Again, thank you so much. Please don't leave on this note denying the Luther Burbank community's choice to keep their name. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brenda Martinez.
¿Podrían interpretar, por favor? Con mucho gusto. Hola, mi nombre es Brenda Martinez.
My name is Brenda Martinez, perdón.
Soy mamá de una niña de segundo grado y también soy la, la, la presidenta del Club de Padres de Luther Burbank.
I am the mother of a second grader and also the president of the parent association at Luther Burbank.
De mi punto de vista es algo incoherente que en este momento quieran hacer un cambio tan drástico como un cambio de nombre.
From my perspective, it seems incongruent that you want to make a change of name at this moment.
Dado que todo lo que pasaba con COVID y los incendios, el quedarse en casa tomando clases desde lejos para nuestros hijos ha sido algo frustrante y también para los padres.
In the midst of COVID, the fires, distance learning, which has been really frustrating for parents to have our children learning at a distance.
Ahora que ellos saben que van a regresar el siguiente año escolar a la escuela, ellos están emocionados y cuando se escuchan de que posiblemente no regresen a una escuela que ya conocen como Luther Burbank Elementary y llegar a un lugar para ellos desconocido, bueno, conocido por el lugar pero no conocido por el nombre, es algo triste para ellos.
So now that they're getting excited to return to school, it's been difficult for them to know that they would not be coming back to their Luther Burbank school. It's known as, the place is known, but it would be unknown with a new name.
Esto en lo personal a mí me afecta mucho porque yo aporto mucho, al menos yo trato de aportar lo más que puedo a la comunidad de Luther Burbank. Como madre, como, como presidenta del Club de Padres, trato de estar siempre en todo lo que se refiere a la escuela para apoyarlos, estar cada adelante cualquier proyecto que sale para nuestros, para nuestros maestros o nuestros niños.
So personally, it affects me very much. I try to contribute as much as possible as a mother and as the president of the parent association to support projects, to support the teachers and the students as much as I can.
Y para mí el cambio de nombre no, no lo veo algo tan, algo necesario para el futuro de nuestros hijos porque hay tanta historia atrás de los niños que ya pasaron por Luther Burbank. ¿Qué van a hacer con todo eso? ¿Qué van a decir más adelante? Oh, era una escuela que existió hace mucho tiempo pero lo quitaron porque alguien llegó queriendo ponerse el cuello bien puesto diciendo yo cambié esta escuela, esta por mí, por mi decisión o porque yo quise que cambiara. No es justo.
The change of name, I consider it's not necessary for our kids' future. And as we look at the history of long ago, it would, people would say, well, someone wanted to change the name. Just one person wanted to make this, this change. And so it happened and that would be the history of the school.
No se me hace algo que por quererse enorgullecer tal vez en el futuro hacia sus nietos o bisnietos o lo que sea, quieran ahora destruir lo mucho que hemos hecho, lo mucho que ha hecho esta, esta escuela y el personaje también de Luther Burbank porque él dejó una historia. No fue alguien que nomás existió y dijo ponga mi nombre ahí. Lo eligieron por algo, no fue por nada más por elección de que querían poner el nombre de él. Fue por algo que él hizo a la comunidad.
So I don't want that. Somebody wants to have like a pride for their grandchildren to know that they did something that this school that has built its history and it's not just the school, but the person that it was named after contributed to the community to have all of that kind of washed away because one person wanted to make a change for their own grandchildren, to tell them that they have accomplished something.
Ms. Martinez, thank you for your comment, but we have just time for just a couple more comments.
Gracias, pero se nos acaba el tiempo, señora Martinez.
And next is Griselda Gil.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Griselda Gil. I attended Luther Burbank and now my daughter, it's a fourth grader at Luther Burbank. I got it really involved. I became the parent club president. I, now I am the Delax secretary, Delax secretary, E-Lax representative. As a leader, I consider myself a leader now, which Luther Burbank made me to be a leader. I strongly believe a name doesn't represent the people. It's the people represents the name. A facility, a school, a park, you name it. Luther Burbank, it's our school. It's who we are, who we have become and who will our future generations will become. I was so, I'm still pretty stressed out. I haven't been able to sleep. I've been, I don't know, I can't really say right now how I really feel because I have mixed emotions. Coke banished to become Cesar Travis. Now Luther Burbank wants to be banished. I don't think it's fair at all. I don't think it's fair for me. I don't think it's fair for any other people. We have been working for 13 years for the community, for our school to become as strong as it is now. We worked together with our teachers, with other community leaders, with our Delax, with the board. And I feel that we have been disrespected right now. We had been going through changes of principal after principal after principal, now another principal. Now a name change, COVID-19. There's so many things that you have no idea how much it has impacted our lives, our families, our children. If you guys really want equity, well, you guys should do it now. Don't change your name. Don't keep on stressing us more and don't keep on making anxiety. I just had a parent saying that her kid was crying because of all this. That is not what I believe you guys are intending to do. Thank...
Thank you, Ms. Gil. And we have time for just one more comment. And if there are others who have their hands raised, thank you so much. But please, if you would, email the board. That's the most we can do because we've reached our hour limit on our public hearing. Sochi Solis is our last comment.
Hi, Sochi is my mom, but my name is Barbara Solis and I'm a sophomore at Santa Rosa High School and used to be a student at Luther Burbank Elementary. And I don't think that the name should be changed because it would cost too much money that could be used toward further improving the school. When I was a student, we had our music class in the cafeteria on the stage floor. I am sure that students will feel much more appreciated if that money was put towards something useful. Students don't say they're proud of the school because we idolize what Luther Burbank may or may not have done. We say we are proud because of the environment we were surrounded by at Luther Burbank Elementary. In addition, if we want to toss in extra names that the school community didn't get to voice their opinion on, don't claim this is for equity. Thank you.
Thank you. And President Fong, we have reached an hour-long public hearing. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you for everyone who took the time to speak to us, to share your comments. And really, please do email us if you did not get to speak tonight. We will read those. At this point, we are going to hear the presentation from the committee, I think.
President Fong, may we do an interpreter change?
Yes, thank you. Just a second, Ms. Cardozo.
I'm going to speak first.
Okay, I'm back. I'm rejoining.
Well, so thank you. All right, Dr. Q. Tamora.
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of those who came out to make public comment, who have emailed both myself and the board. This is tough. This is really a tough situation, especially after when you hear the actual voices of students, of parents, of staff who are really agonizing over all of this. So first, let me say that for Ms. Delacruz, it is not a conflict of interest. There's no material gain by anything that she might be voting on. Her child is not going to be in Learning House next year. That's number one. Number two, any relationship she has with Dolores Huerta, again, her decision, there's no material gain. So there isn't a conflict of interest. I hear what you're saying about everybody, what everybody's saying about feeling, this feeling of disrespecting and not listening to the committee and the addition of the names that I added have felt like I disregarded what the committee had done. I'm not going to negate that that's what you felt, but it was not the intention. The intention for me by placing the names on there was that those were the names that came up from the board. And yes, I did hear that the names weren't put onto a form that went into the committee. But it was, they were names that the board was discussing. And if you notice on the board agenda item, I didn't add it as four and five because it wasn't the recommendation from the board. I added them separately, which leads me to talk about the process. There is something that I take with me from my brother, my late brother. And that is when something goes awry, when something doesn't feel right, when people feel disrespected, don't look at the people, don't blame the people, look at the process. And that's where I say that I will take responsibility in the fact that I think the process was not handled in the way that it should have been for Burbank. I said it. I mean it. And I'm saying it. Miss Ali, you know me, you know me well, and I am not going to do anything to harm, harm kids, harm you, harm the entire Burbank population. So I do think in terms of the process that we need to review board policy, we need to review the definition of what a committee does and what comes forward to the superintendent. I think a part of the problem in this entire process, that it was not made clear, is that when community committees, advisories come together, any one of them, going from the SRO committee to this committee to the Budget Advisory Committee, these committees make considerations and recommendations, if you want to call them that, to the superintendent, not to the board. As the superintendent, I then review those recommendations or considerations. And then I make my recommendation based on what the community has provided to the board. And I think that process got lost in the process that we're in, or that we're in right now. So I just wanted to have everyone understand that part of it, that there was no intention on my part or the board's part to disrespect or negate anything that the community worked so hard on bringing forward. Yeah, and I just want to reiterate, I took nothing out of what was recommended. I didn't take away anything. I kept everything in there and again, added the two names that had been discussed when I received their board report on my desk. So with that, a bit of preface, and I hope I haven't forgotten anything. Oh, let me just say this about also Learning House in general. Listening, again, this is what the process is about. It's hearing directly from people and staff and students. I can see in my mind how it would look as if Learning House could be a signal that Luther Burbank would be taken over by Learning House. I can see that. And I want you to know that I think, again, we could have done a better job of engaging the school and the community sooner. Having said that, I will say, I will tell you this, that we're concerned about the numbers at Luther Burbank, Lincoln, and now Biella. We are well below 200 students in each of these three elementaries. And as a community, we're going to have to be, again, addressing the fact that our school populations in the elementary are dwindling. And we can't really afford to operate three elementaries with less than, well, less than 200 students. So that was the reasoning behind it. But again, I acknowledge you here that the way it came about has caused a feeling of taking over, you know, some of the verbiage that I heard tonight. So I promise you, I will be sure that we are, before I go, that we are rectifying and working together with staff and with the community about the why, the why of the things that have happened. And I think that's a big thing that I've talked to the board about, is that what I'm hearing and what is coming about is there is not an understanding about why are we looking at change in the names? Why are we putting Learning House here? You know, why is enrollment the way it is at our three elementaries? And we need to do a better job of investigating that and finding out what's going on. And I think the root of that is education. It really is about learning and understanding and having a shared understanding so we can together make the decisions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Bustman for the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Kitamura. Appreciate your words. I am going to be turning over the presentation to Principal Cardozo. And with her, she has Rachel Spade and Jeff Elliott who will be presenting with her. They were part of the committee. So that's, I turn it over to you, Debbie.
Thank you. Go ahead and I'll share my screen. Okay. All right, let me get a little organized here, moving parts. Okay. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Kitamura, President Fong, and members of the board. My name is Debbie Cardozo. I am the principal of Luther Burbank Elementary School. And tonight I have joining with me a couple of our committee members that I'd like to invite at this time to introduce themselves. So Jeff, if you'd like to go first.
My name is Jeff Elliott. I'm a retired journalist, local historian who's written a couple, a couple of dozen articles on Luther Burbank, including Burbank and the Chinese. They're all available at SantaRosaHistory.com.
Thank you, Jeff. And Rachel?
Hi, everyone. My name is Rachel Spade. I serve on the school site committee for Kiwanis Springs Elementary School, where my daughter is enrolled in the dual-language immersion program. I also am working on a PhD over at UC Davis in historical plant breeding and genetics. And I've been the garden curator at the Luther Burbank Common Gardens for 13 years.
Thank you, Rachel. And this evening, we'll be sharing with you the outcomes of our site facilities, community advisory work. So thank you both for joining us tonight and thank you all for hearing our presentation. So before I begin, I thought it would be important to ground our discussion in board policy. And so I have it up here on the screen. And essentially, per board policies, facilities can be named after individuals that have made a significant contribution or the geographic area that the building is located. What also needs to be considered is that the name should not be similar to other school names. And we just concluded our public hearing, which is a part of that process. Additionally, a part of the policy, the board encourages community participation. So we have a community advisor committee that we're going to share our work with all of you tonight, which is an ad hoc committee. And they were appointed to review any name suggestions that we received and ultimately submit a recommendation from the board or to the board, excuse me. The members of this group represent a variety of individuals ranging from community-based organizations to our area's historical community, parent groups, SRTA, CSA, D-LAG, and so on and so forth. And then ultimately, the Board of Education has the final responsibility for naming the facilities. So up on the screen, you'll see the members of our community advisory committee. In November of 2020, the applications to serve on our sites committee was posted on our school website. We had individuals apply to be a part of our committee and help us through this process. And committee members were finalized in December. And I want to publicly thank all of the individuals that served on our committee. I really appreciated their time, their energy, and their support through this process. And now I would like to provide an overview of our work, which I'm going to go into more detail a little bit later on in my presentation. As I just mentioned, we started our process in November by creating a page on our school website to share information about this process and again, post the application to invite anyone to serve on our sites committee. In January, we had a webinar to provide an overview of the process. And in January, we also posted the school name recommendation form on our school website for anyone to submit a name for our committee to consider during this process. Our site completed a variety of surveys, one of which addressed and looked at our school values. We had a vote end of February, early March. And in addition to our six community advisory committee meetings that you see up here on the screen, we talked about the school name change at our staff meetings, at our English language advisory committee meetings, parent club meetings, et cetera. But before we really dove into our work, we really needed to have a discussion about who Luther Burbank was. And so, as you can see, and probably many of you know, Luther Burbank was an American plant breeder who developed over 800 varieties of fruits, flowers like the Shasta Daisy, and vegetables like the Russet Potato. He also established a very famous nursery garden, greenhouse, and experimental farm in Santa Rosa that are famous all over the world. And then, an interesting fact that I didn't know but found out during this process is that our school name dates back all the way to 1906, when our school board at that time wanted to name a school after Mr. Luther Burbank to honor the impact he had made specifically with his work with plants. So in addition to the wonderful things that Mr. Luther Burbank was known for and contributed, there were some items that we needed to look at as a committee. So first, I wanted to start off with an article that was written in 2018. It was written by Santa Rosa Junior College student who wanted to rename the JC School Auditorium. This article was again published in the Press Democrat and stating essentially that Luther Burbank was a racist and a leader of Santa Rosa's Chinese removal project. After further review, the author claimed she found her information in the book on the 19th century Santa Rosa History Book written by Gayla Baron. But after further review, we determined that nothing appears in this book or elsewhere to support this claim that she made in this article that was printed in the Press Democrat. Additionally, in 1886, petitions were carried door-to-door requesting businesses and households to boycott Chinese immigrant businesses and essentially fire any Chinese workers. Someone with the last name of Burbank circulated one of these petitions. However, we're not certain if it was Mr. Luther Burbank because only the name Burbank was on the petition. And Mr. Luther Burbank also had a brother that was living in Sonoma County named George. And so it wasn't clear that the person that was circulating this petition or the petitioner was in fact Mr. Luther Burbank because it also could have been his brother George. And then finally, in affiliation with this anti-Chinese League allegations, there's a letter that Mr. Luther Burbank wrote to his mother when he first arrived to Santa Rosa. And I'll just read what is quoted in the letter. It says, "There are some Chinamen in this place. I like them very well. They know about four times as much as folks generally give them credit for. And I share this with you because one could argue that the statement in this letter also contradicts the claims being made against him." So at this time, I'd like to invite Rachel to share a little bit about some of the connections with Mr. Luther Burbank and eugenics and what we discussed as a committee.
Thank you, Debbie. So the big thing that ties Luther Burbank to eugenics is an essay that he wrote this called "The Training of the Human Plant." And it has a couple of these things that we can highlight here through his work as a scientist. Mr. Burbank focused on breeding plants to get the best possible qualities. And some of his writings in "Training of the Human Plant" thought that he could apply this process to humans. He wrote that those who are morally degenerate would not have children. But in the early 20th century, this phrase was typically used to specify people that had addictions or syphilis or other incurable or inheritable diseases that could be passed on. And he also wrote approvingly in there that mingling of the races would create a far stronger and better human race. So "The Training of the Human Plant" is this very complex but short essay that people should, you could read it. You should digest it. There is very old-timey language in here that carries with it the 1950s cookbook that tells you how to stick in heels before you start cooking in the kitchen. So I would say that if somebody were to submit this essay in one of my classes, I would say that it could possibly violate community standards for what we would expect a student to be able to turn in today. A lot of that goes in line with what people said in the day. There is advocacy there for people to mix with each other in general. And he felt that the United States was a fantastic microcosm to be able to observe that because we do have so much diversity and he welcomed and embraced that diversity. He also specified we should take care of our differently-abled individuals and see an Americans with Disabilities Act come out until like George Bush Senior in the early 90s. So he's like 70, it's time in making these claims. He does also specify in there some things where he talks about the goodly white child versus the Indian. And so if the wheelhouse that you have is feeling disenfranchised as an indigenous person, this is a very grating argument and it's a very poor way of wording the nature versus nurture argument. So I don't want to tell anybody how to feel about these particular statements. It depends on your particular wheelhouse and what your experience is as a human for emotionally respond to these claims that Luther Burbank makes. And so I want to be very careful about saying that everyone should read this and see how they feel about it before making a total judgment call on this. It really depends on your microcosm and how you view the world and how the world views you for how you will particularly feel about these. And it is important to reflect on that and to think about it. And it could be a reason why people would look at Luther Burbank and say, you know what? I'm not so sure that these are our values or that we agree with him. There are some things in there that we do agree with, but maybe his argument that girls shouldn't learn mathematics until they're 10 years old is something that's outdated that we need to look at and scrutinize and say, maybe this isn't how we want to represent ourselves. So we want to offer this information to be honest about our history and open about our history and make sure that everyone has the information available to you. If anyone is interested in reading "The Training of the Human Plant," it is available for free online and I'm happy to provide that link for anyone that is interested. Thank you, Debbie.
Okay, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit about him being a speaker, I mean, you touched a little bit on it. If there's anything you want to add, or I'm happy to go through the screen as well.
Sure, I'll go through this. So he was invited to be one of the speakers at the 1915 Race Betterment Congress, which was held in San Francisco, California. This was a eugenics rally that had, it drew a lot of proto-Nazi individuals talking about superior dominance of a particular race. But Luther's particular- But Luther's particular speech there was speaking about the betterment of the human race and how we would achieve a better society in general if we made our children were cared for and nourished, and how poverty and hunger in a child's first 10 years would affect their life. So, his views aren't aligned with proto-Nazi sentiments, and he actually thinks that people would do better if they took control of their own reproduction and were a little bit more careful with that as far as integrating with everyone else. Whenever we talk about Luther Burbank's ideas for eugenics, we are not going to try to reclaim the term eugenics. It has been totally, it's associated with demoralization and disenfranchisement of lots of different individuals and groups and still continues to occur today. So, we are not going to say, "Let's try to reclaim that word. That's not a thing that we're going to do." We're going to just state how Luther Burbank fit into that, how his views are not necessarily aligned with what that became, what that movement became. But we do have to make the statement that it does exist.
Thank you, Rachel. Okay, so after looking at Luther Burbank and who he was, we really wanted to look at who we are as a school community and what we value. So, we did a school community survey, and we asked our school community to provide three words that you feel describes our school. And you can see the plethora of words that are up on the screen that were a result of that question. And then we dug a little bit deeper, and we said, "Do you think Mr. Luther Burbank represents the values you listed above on the survey where they listed the values you see on the screen?" And an average of 95% of respondents said yes. So now, let's look at the names we considered. Overall, there were six names for the community advisory to consider, one of which was Dolores Huerta, which was mentioned during the start of the school naming process. The other five names were submitted to our site using the official recommendation form. Again, the official recommendation form provided anyone the opportunity to submit names for our committee to consider and was posted on our school website from January 27th through February 16th. We see through that process a total of eight submissions using that official form. There were, however, some duplicates. Luther Burbank Elementary School was submitted three times, and Burbank Elementary School was submitted twice. Our committee discussed all names that you see on the screen during this process. Five of the names were included on our survey in March. And up on the screen, you see a total vote pie chart and a forced rank pie chart. We had 365 responses in total. 182 of those responses were students. 144 were parents or guardians, and 39 staff also responded. As you can see, the data clearly shows by far that our school community wants to keep our name as Luther Burbank Elementary School, and that is indicated by the orange up on the screen. In addition to the ranked vote on our survey, we asked respondents to share any additional information they would like our committee to consider while they were making their final recommendation, which we're bringing forward here tonight. We had 87 additional responses. Friends included a lot focused on keeping the name, which is again in alignment to the data you see on the screen. We also received some comments in regards to the name South A Street School and A Street Academy. Individuals commented that they didn't like the way that that name sound, that if we were to change our name, our school to that name, they felt that it would kind of create a negative perception. To quote somebody out of the survey, somebody said it sounded like a gang name, a gang school name. So, that was some of the feedback that we got on those two names specifically. And then as brought up during the public hearing, as you've heard, the Press Democrat also has been doing a survey recently. And as of this morning, there were 529 votes, and of those votes, a little over 76% want to keep our name as Luther Burbank Elementary School. So, I thought I would share that too as kind of another data point. So, from completing a thoughtful inquiry, reviewing data and feedback, our committee discussed additionally important things we felt we should really consider when forming our final recommendation for the school board to review and consider. So, the following themes stood out. We felt it was really important as our committee to take into consideration our school community feedback, the desire and the will of the Luther Burbank School community. We also wanted to keep in mind the values that were, that individuals identified as being value of our school. So, words like family, kind, respectful, helpful. We also took into consideration what was Burbank's intent with making the plant breeding connection to humans. And we discussed, it's really difficult to know his intent. And the allegations that he was a part of the anti-Chinese movement, as I shared this evening, is a bit challenging to prove. We also discussed the impact of the change to a school name. So, our internet presence, we've been working hard at Burbank to not be the best-kept secret. We want to be known, and we want to be known in our community. And we've been really working hard towards putting our name out there to recruit more individuals to come to our school. And we also discussed too, as I think you could sense today, or tonight, in the public comments, that initially, any change could be traumatic, but it would be okay. And one of our committee members shared that she had been through this process with some of her own children. And it's hard. It's a really hard thing to navigate, as I think that we're all learning, you know, even more so this evening. And then finally, something that really stood out is if we're going to be named after a person, we felt very strongly that it should be a community name. So, someone that is connected to Santa Rosa or Sonoma County and actually had an impact on our community. We felt that there's a lot of positive things happening in our county, in our city. And we'd be remiss if we weren't connected to an individual if we were going to move forward with naming our school after a person. Considerations, several of our families are unable to attend tonight's meeting due to family allegations or it just had to work. And so, I was asked to put in the board packet, a letter written by one of our parents, which you can see included, that's signed by 234 individuals showing their support to keep our current name, Luther Burbank Elementary School. And so, I wanted to show that to honor those folks that are unable to be here this evening just due to a variety of reasons. Additionally, our staff worked with our students, parents, and other staff members at our school site to create a video, and they felt very strongly that I include that in the presentation this evening. It was very important to them to make sure that voices are heard. And so, they worked really hard to create this video and asked that I share it tonight. And so, I am going to go ahead, and I hope this works as I pull it up on the screen. Can you guys see this okay? I'm hoping, yes, okay.
Hello, my name is Axel Martin, and I'm a fourth grader at Luther Burbank. I want my school to keep its name. I've been attending this school since kindergarten. My brothers and sisters and other family also attended at Burbank. It's important to me and my family that our school keeps its name. It's like my second home. It's a place where I feel safe, a place where I can learn and grow and be curious. When I think of Burbank School, I think of my family's experiences, love, and memories for this place. I know that people say that Luther Burbank wasn't 100% perfect, but if you think about it, nobody is. But I still try to do my best. I try to learn from my mistakes, and I try to make the world a better place. I think Luther Burbank was also trying to make the world a better place. I'm not perfect. I hope people still like me, even though I'm not perfect. I hope they look at what I try to do and how I try to be my best. My family loved the school. I love my school. The name Burbank represents all the good things that we do and who we are at my school. I'm Burbank. My siblings are Burbank. Our teachers and parents are Burbank, so please don't take our name away.
My name is Nerina Lilly, and I am a former Burbank student, and I am also the office manager at Luther Burbank Elementary School. Now, the district's motto, embrace, engage, empower. Is that what is happening here? To the first two, yes, we can see that because we are going through this process. Empowerment, will our community be empowered if the proposed name change comes to pass? It might not be what you want to hear, but the answer is no. Now, as an employee of the district, I am not interested in silencing my community's voice. I am not interested in fueling anyone's savior complex, and I am not interested in becoming anyone's pet project. However, what does interest me is honoring my community's voice. What does interest me is recognizing my community's strength. And what does interest me is forming strong alliances between our community and the district because together, that is how we add value to our students' education. However, how is that going to happen when the district bulldozes over the community? How is that supposed to happen? And as a member of the school community and the Latino community, I do not, I do not appreciate being used as an excuse for, let's say, political agendas, performative activism. I do not appreciate that, and neither do our parents. Our focus is education. Why are we playing this game? It is unnecessary. It has wasted our time. It has added stress. And I don't say that as a staff member. I say that too for the parents that I have talked to on the phone, spoken to face-to-face. We need to do better. And I say "we" because, again, I am also an employee of the district. But the question now is, members of the school board, members of the Board of Education, will you honor our community? Will you listen?
Hello, school board members and community members. My name is Christina Palacios. I am a graduating senior at Montgomery High School and a proud alumni of Luther Burbank Elementary School. I do not want Luther Burbank's school name to change. At Luther Burbank, I among thousands of other students have won awards, medals, and got swag of Luther Burbank School that our families proudly wear. Luther Burbank Elementary is part of my history, and it is part of some of the best memories I have had in my 17 years. I love coming back to Luther Burbank to volunteer and look at the award trophy shelf in the hallway. I love telling people about how amazing Luther Burbank is. Luther Burbank is a family which upholds Luther Burbank's values, values which I uphold now, which are to respect, to care, and to help everyone and everything around us, the earth and the people. Luther Burbank left a legacy that we have been a part of as being part of the Luther Burbank family. Please do not take away part of my history. Do not change Luther Burbank's school name. Thank you for taking this time to listen to my story.
They say that we have a voice, but in reality, we don't? Then how are we going to trust them in the future?
Okay. So, before I share our recommendation, I had a few other things I wanted to share. As a committee, we had complex discussions about how white narratives of history disproportionately pervade our living history today. And we do have a responsibility to our students and our families that they see themselves in the curriculum and resources in our schools. We talked about how there is definitely a space for teachable moments with regard to Luther Burbank in our committee work. And in terms of developing critical thinking for examining history and learning from it is very important. We also discussed in our work at length, Mr. Luther Burbank, his writings and his work, and how it's really difficult to understand what Luther Burbank was trying to communicate over 100 years ago when we look at it from our lens and what we are experiencing as a society today. With that, our committee is bringing forward the following names for consideration. Number one, being Luther Burbank Elementary School. And as you saw in our presentation tonight, in the forced rank vote, that was the vote by a lot with 51.2%. Secondly, we're bringing forward Burbank Elementary School. Again, the forced rank percentage on that was 23.4. And then, finally, we're bringing forward Santa Rosa Elementary School, and the percentage rank on that was 11.4. Again, I just want to touch on that we did not include the A Street Academy or the South A Street Elementary just because of the negative feedback that we got from our school community survey. So, as a committee, we decided not to include those two names on the recommendation. And with that, I will turn it back over to Dr. Ana Marie Guzman.
Thank you, Principal Cardozo. And with that, I turn it back over to the board. President Fong.
So, I really want to thank the committee, stakeholders, Principal Cardozo, for that presentation. Appreciate the work that you put in. At this point, we're going to have questions. Trustee Manieri.
President Fong, am I, and maybe someone else can also help me here, but am I allowed to make a motion before we have questions?
Yes.
Okay. And then I also do have some comments, just so that, that is also on the table. My motion, and this maybe will make more sense once I give my comments, but we're not there yet. But my motion is to suspend the vote on the renaming of Luther Burbank Elementary School until fall 2021 so that we can more meaningfully engage the greater community in this process.
Second. All right, we have a motion on the table which was seconded, and we are going to still have questions and discussion. Director Medina, Director Sheffield.
Well, first off, a point of clarification, if we do move this to suspend the vote now, that would end the discussion, so you wouldn't be able to move, you know, go on to questions and all that in terms of process. So, I just want to make that clear that if we vote on this motion, then that ends it. We move on to the next item.
So, you're saying that we need to, since there's a motion to table or suspend until fall 2021, and a second, we need to vote on it before we have discussion? Or just discussion on this?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying if we vote yes on this motion- No, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying if we vote yes on this motion made by Director Manieri, that ends this topic, this discussion. We don't have any period of questions to the staff, because that, that ends this item. We move on to the next item. I'm just putting that out there for clarification as to what this vote would mean in terms of the now and what we're doing.
Okay.
Another point of clarification, because I wanted to make sure that I did this right too. And I have in front of me a Robert Rules cheat sheet. Um and so I see here in my table that when we postpone a matter until, which I hope that's what I just did, that this is debatable and we still can have discussion.
We're, we're debating the motion to suspend. We're not debating the issue, right? You would debate that issue when it comes back in the future. What's debatable is this motion on whether or not we should suspend.
So I think to clear, correct me if I'm wrong, but the clarification is that the way that you say the motion, you also include, and you did a little bit about what you want to see have happened. I think you stated you wanted it to come back in the fall. Um and I think maybe you could add on to there for the purpose of.
I think she did a little bit, so what, you wanna repeat that, Stephanie? Director Manieri?
Sure, um so I mean, I had a lot of other comments to make, because I do think that this is an important conversation. And I don't know how we can still have that conversation. But the intention is um to suspend the renaming um until at least at, in my opinion, until at least until fall twenty twenty-one, so that we can more meaningfully engage the greater community in this process.
All right, I'm gonna take a recess so I can sort this out. And I think what I'm sorting out is if the question discussion is only about the motion and we can no longer talk about the issue at hand. I think that's what Director Medina is telling us.
Right, right.
I, I would just recommend, I would recommend withdrawing the motion now, having questions and discussion, then making the motion afterwards, if that's what you wanna do.
Then I will withdraw the motion so that we can have discussion.
All right, so we're, is that okay with the person who made the second?
Yes.
All right, so we're back to questions. We'll just take questions. And let's watch, let's watch, let's watch the time. So Director Medina.
Yeah, so my question was going back, I, I, I've heard conflicting information in terms of speaker comments and also with the presentation. I just wanted to be, be clear on one thing. In the presentation, I saw that the committee was um given the, the name of the Laura's Huerta as one of the names out there. But then it seems like from some of the comments that I heard, uh it says that it, that it wasn't. So I just wanna be clear, was that name put forward to the committee, yes or no? Because in the, in the final comments um made by Principal Cardozo, um there was talk about the A Street and there was talk about the different Burbanks, but there wasn't any, anything mentioned on the that name as part of why or why not that might have come forth as recommendation. So I just wanna be clear on that from the beginning, process wise, was that?
Zed to Principal Cardozo.
Anybody?
I, I apologize, it skipped out on me, so I wasn't sure if uh Director Medina had, had finished his comments, so I wanted to make sure I, I didn't interrupt him.
I think the question was, there was, or the statement was about conflicting information. So when was the name Dolores Huerta brought forward to the committee? Is that right? Or if it was?
So we did.
Correct, wha- what I heard.
Go ahead, Principal Cardozo.
Okay, I'm sorry. So uh we did consider the name uh Dolores Huerta uh Elementary School. We had conversations within our committee about that name specifically. It did uh come to us um as a point of conversation after we had already had our vote. Um and so we, the, the names that were included on the actual survey were the names that were um submitted using uh the official form that was on our website. Um and then it was brought forward to us that we did need to have conversations around Dolores Huerta. Uh so we looked at her as an individual. We discussed having um a revote um and all that. And ultimately, we decided to stick with our original five that we had put forward um to the community to, to vote on. And one of the uh main reasons in regards to that was that, um as I shared in the considerations, we were looking at, um if we were going to be named after an individual, we wanted it to be somebody that was local from Santa Rosa or the Sonoma County uh area. And um although Dolores Huerta has an amazing past, and I mean, we found she has done amazing work. Um one of our main tenants that we uh felt very strongly about is that we wanted to keep it um a local name.
Could I also just piggyback on that for a second? The timing of when that name came to us after the um vote was out was right pretty much at the same exact week or the week before school was going to reopen. So it was, it was not the main focus on anybody's mind at that particular time. And we felt like if we tried to submit a new vote and try to educate the community on this merit system that they wouldn't be fully engaged, because they were more concerned with, are my kids gonna go back to school? Can I go back to work? How many days a week are they gonna be there? What's this hybrid program all about? And so the information was getting lost whenever we were trying to disseminate it to the public in general. If you guys were to table this and have it go for a fall, it would be worthwhile to do some education to the entire public on who these people were, so that they can have an equal platform. A lot of them are very familiar with Luther Burbank, because you're right down the road for them um from us. Like, we have a lot of accessible information for you guys. They're just not as familiar with the other names that were floated. So since this is a nation-based um institution that we're working with, it would be meritous for us to make sure that the community is aware of all of the um valuable traits that are associated with these individuals that you guys have submitted as other names.
Yeah, I said, and so just to be clear, so the committee came to this idea that the, the, a, a renaming would be some, where someone local of the community would be important to have. But within the, the suggestions, there was only one person that met those requirements, correct? And, and that came after, that idea or suggestion came after the request for names to be submitted, right?
Yeah, that was one of the things that we.
Local, that, that's not.
That was something that we'd actually talked about uh at the beginning of the process too. Um and then when we finalized kind of like our, our main tenants, the, when we're really thinking about who do we wanna recommend, given everything, right, our survey, uh the Doris Huerta uh coming uh brought forward to our committee to review and consider. Um we revisited that. Um and, and we ultimately said, yes, this is something we feel strongly about.
Director Manieri.
Yeah, I just, I, I had one question kind of come up as we're answering these questions um around the education, um just around the education piece of, of this entire process. I'm just, I'd like to know more about how that happened. How is it exactly that the, um not only the committee, but maybe even efforts to educate the larger school community and not just those on the committee itself? I think I just confused committee and community. Um but, but I'd just like to know more about the education piece and what was really um offered and, and the opportunities that were made available to the community to learn about, from, from all of this that it, that came out.
Yeah, great question. Um so if you visit our school website, uh there were still some videos posted on there. Um but we held a webinar um in uh, I think it was January twenty-seventh, if I remember correctly, so late January, to uh provide um our um community to uh learn a little bit more about Luther Burbank. So, but, so we had our discussions in December, dug a little deeper, kind of figured out, okay, well, who's Luther Burbank? What are the allegations? Um are they founded and grounded in factual information? And, and where is it kinda, you know, gray or muddy, right? So we um, we did a, myself, um I did a video about Luther Burbank. I talked about, well, how and why are things named cer- certain things and, and some of the stuff that um he had done, that was great, and some of the stuff that we really needed to look at and discuss um more closely. Um so we shared that. Um and then our school counselor also did a video um about school values and, and what that means. And, and that kinda connects into our, our value survey that we did, that I showed you guys the data on. So we provided a webinar, we posted the information on, on the website. And then in addition, uh within our uh school community, um it was a regular agenda item uh during our ELAC um and our staff meetings, um our parent club meetings. Uh I mean, we talked about it quite a bit. Um and then teachers also talked about it with their students um in their classroom as well. And then in addition to those videos, we also posted um on the school website. Um there's a copy of the Training of a Human Plant and some other articles that are available uh for uh individuals to read um if they wanna dig it a little bit deeper um as well. So that's what we did um in that aspect.
It was also really important to the committee to make sure that all of that information was provided in both English and Spanish to make sure that we could reach as many community members as possible.
Thank you. Other questions? I don't see any other hands, board.
Director De La Cruz.
Director De La Cruz.
Thanks. Um I, I wanna talk a little bit more about the process and kind of some of the foundation laying. And I just wondered if um there was any education about kind of the history of white supremacy that was included and people's learning and understanding. Um and you know, how white supremacist system and white supremacist thinking um continues to this day to be one of the challenging things of our time.
I'll be honest, I did not set, cite that specifically in, in um like the webinar that I shared. Um I shared the information that I uh shared with the board uh today, um but also in um a kid-friendly kinda way, you know, so our, our, our kiddos at Burbank could understand, you know, um
I, I appreciate that.
Um and so I appreciate the question so much. Yeah, that's, uh that's kinda where we were at on that, but I don't know that I, I, I know, I didn't specifically call out uh white supremacy.
Or, or, you know, th- there are ways that communities of color have spoken to their children about genocide and about the histories of our people um for many, many generations. And so I'm just wondering where, you know, where was the term eugenics defined? Was the history of genocide related to eugenics, you know, shared with people so that they could understand, you know, that connectivity to, to how we contextualize this, you know, this person, um who was just a human being, right? But who sat, who sat in a context that was much larger than himself?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, um and that was something I'll be, I'll be super honest. It was uh, it was hard to figure out, okay, how do you explain eugenics to a kiddo, right? And, and some of, you know, and, and what happened a hundred years ago? And how um that is not socially acceptable today, you know? And, and how we look at it in a different lens today, uh based on what our experiences bring and, and what our, um our own lens has to offer. And so we did have conversations around that. And um I think at the forefront, especially with our kids, and you heard it in the video that our staff uh really wanted me to share tonight, um this whole idea of um uh making um like learning, you know what I mean? Like, we talk about kids and how, you know, um if we can learn from something and, and not repeat something that maybe not, you know, like and not be okay, then that's, that's good. We wanna learn and grow, right? Um I know uh Mr. Haas talked a lot about uh Burbank in his fifth and sixth grade class. Um you should see the board he has, that has all of his stuff uh, uh on it. But um we did, but I, I will say, and I appreciate um the comments this, this evening about wanting to take a deeper dive and look at the process, because that was something that came up um in our conversation as our committee. It was, it was really hard to do this during COVID. And we were done with our work in March bef- while we were launching, opening up a school. And so um it, that was really challenging to have those authentic and real conversations to the depth in which they need to be had, given the circumstances. And so um, so I will say, yeah, we, we talked about it, but, but not to the depth in which um it needs to be talked about. And not just during a school name change, but over and over and over again, you know?
I have another question. So how are kind of local experts on how to talk to kids about genocide engaged in this project? If, you know, there, there are people who do this. Um there are experts in, in educating children about very difficult things. Um were local leaders of color engaged in this conversation to support that kind of educational effort?
We had uh, uh individuals uh of color on our committee um that helped uh kind of shape how we could roll this out to kids um in our community uh to help guide us on um with that work, so.
I wanna be clear about my question. I'm not talking about people of color. I'm talking about educational experts on issues of white supremacy and genocide and, and how you educate children on those difficult topics.
I apologize, I misunderstood your question.
No, it's okay.
Rachel, you were gonna, going to say something?
Yeah, so the issue then becomes that a lot of these things speci- specifically with genocide, become affiliated with eugenics and the Nazi movement, which happens after Luther Burbank. And so tying him to that creates a sticky situation. We did do a lot of work talking about how it's important to make sure that everybody feels represented in public spaces. And that was a big portion of why we were very open to entertaining the idea of let's, whose other name can we bring into here? And they're just, people were not engaged enough to provide additional names. And at the end of our conversations with this, we said, okay, let's give these names to the board. But let's also specify that if there is more community engagement and we can provide more education on additional names or additional people, we would like to be able to do this, to say, hey, you know what, let's uplift another person. Let's make sure that people feel represented in public spaces. And, and it doesn't have to be the end of the conversation if our community just says this time that they like the name Luther Burbank, because there wasn't um enough time to educate them on some of these additional names that have been brought forth on Friday or even just after the survey happened.
Well, and I, I'm thinking, you know, in particular, um Miss Beth, you raised, you know, some very problematic issues that Mr. Burbank raised around indigenous people. And, you know, the kind of the use of the term savage and, you know, eradicating the savage um from our. So I'm speaking about that particular genocide and how you actually engage educationally with children around that. I'm not particularly speaking around kind of Nazism and eugenics and the history of the eugenics movement. I'm talking about that particular thing that was raised in the, in the course of your, of your research.
Sure, thank you for that clarification of your question. And that is something that definitely pervades the culture from a hundred years ago. So it's kinda weird that we wanna just put our foot in the sand and say, this is the cutoff. A hundred and fifty years ago is as good as we can do for you guys. And so we do need to kind of take a look at what particular portion of history we're uplifting and representing. And I think that that's valuable to do that, absolutely.
And then um you, you said something right now that I'm just curious about. You said people were not engaged enough. What, what do you mean by that?
Specifically, I mean, um so there were two rounds of survey that went out. The first round had pretty low numbers, and so we were like, how can we get this out to people more? And so we did a whole nother round of surveying before we really settled on that. We actually tabled and included an additional meeting on that process.
Okay, and then my last question, I promise. Was this promet- was this process kind of centered around just an investigation of Luther Burbank? Or was it kind of like, here are other local people who we should investigate as, you know, historical figures to uplift and celebrate? Was this a broader kind of investigation into people in our community? Or did it just focus on kind of proving whether or not Luther Burbank was a racist or not?
Great question. Um so we felt that as um, as a group, as a school community, we need to do our due diligence and uh making sure that we brought forward um information about Burbank, so people could make an informed decision. But that did include conversations, uh particularly um happening um at the classroom level around other names um that we could consider bringing forward. Um and they just never got submitted. Um we did talk about, in our committee work, in our committee work uh with. in our committee work with our, with, with our, our last meeting. One idea would be to celebrate or highlight an individual every month and really dive deep into that. And every single month, talk about somebody, you know what I mean? And so you really can dig deep and look at that. And this is important work. And I think, and it's been, it's been shared before, we did the best that we could, given the circumstances and giving the timing and we heard time and time again, was really hard doing this, doing, doing this process during distant learning. And while families are struggling, teachers are struggling, staff, students are struggling. It was hard. And so, yes, there were areas or are areas for growth in our process. Absolutely. Can we dig deeper? Absolutely. I completely agree with you. And what we brought forward is, is you know, our best attempt to do a thorough process and have a thoughtful inquiry during this challenging time.
Thank you. I really appreciate your answers. I appreciate the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions.
And I really appreciate you raising the question. I mean, I know a lot of people are going to come and they're going to just try to say, oh, only one person wanted this. No, one person was brave enough to ask the question and more people need to be brave enough to ask that question. And since you were, now somebody else can feel that they have a voice too. So please and thank you for bringing the one's attention. It's a long process. It's very emotionally draining for everyone, but it's an important process. And these are the kinds of conversations that we need to have to do better as a society. So.
If I could just say one thing after that. So I want to be really clear that, you know, the reason why I ask these questions is I'm connected to a collective identity of people who have had these conversations for generations with me. And that's part of the privilege of the history that I bring to bear to the way I walk through the world. And so I'm not the only brave person out there. I was raised by many brave people and many generations of brave people. And there are many brave people in this entire community that are asking the same questions and I'm just representing those, the multiple city of voices that have very similar questions to mine tonight. And I'm really grateful for the continued conversation.
Thank you. Director Manieri, do you have another question?
I have just, just two more questions. My first question is, I mean, I heard in the presentation that kids and students were, they got to watch the video that you made, Principal Cordes, and then perhaps they even participated in the surveys that were sent out with their parents. And then in classroom presentations. I'm, I'm wondering to, I'm wondering about what, what those conversations might have looked like. And I know that if they happened inside the classroom, you might not be privy to that, but just, I'm just wondering to what extent were, were students given the opportunity to have the same kinds of difficult conversations that it sounds like the committee may have started to embark on?
Yeah. So we, great question. So yes, I wasn't privy to all the conversations that, that happened in the classroom, but I know our, our staff, our teachers, I feel very passionate about, about this topic. And so I know that it was, it was talked about in the classrooms with kiddos. We also talked about in parent club and in ELAC, as I mentioned. Parents were asking, how do we have this conversation with our kids? It's a challenging one. And so, and, and what does this look like to explain this in kind of kid-friendly language, you know? And so that was part of the reason why we developed our webinar and provided an opportunity for folks to attend and to give them the opportunity to ask questions and provide clarification. And then so it kind of happened in, you know, in different classes, whether it be in the classroom or also helping support our families with having these difficult conversations with their kids at home. And then also educating our, our, our parent community and our school community too, you know, and, and having those conversations. You know, with our, with our staff, with our, you know, our families as well. So.
Thank you. And, and my last question is just kind of around the, the type of support that you received. It sounds like you and, and Rachel did a lot of the facilitating. And I'm curious to know what support, and I hope that, that we can all have an open and honest conversation. And so I'd like to know what, what support was offered to you as the facilitator of, of these important conversations to really lead from an equity lens and, and to have hard conversations with, with all kinds of, of, of folks in our school community with, with little ones and then with sixth graders and parents. So I'm just curious to know about the, the type of support that you received. Just because we know that that makes a really big difference when, when we're having these conversations.
Yeah, absolutely. I.
Yeah.
As you always do, speak the truth.
Okay. So I will say that I have been very blessed to be a part of this district for many years. And I have seen it transform into something that is beautiful under the current leadership and really taking a look at equity and having those hard conversations that we all need to have. And I've been blessed to be a part of that and have learned a lot through being a part of that process. I will say that the support provided during this process to have those, those, those conversations, it wasn't as much as I would have liked to receive, which was challenging because I understand, and as I mentioned earlier, this was during a pandemic, folks. And we had asked to please put this on pause so we could really do a thorough job and a meaningful job around this work. And I don't, I don't want to place blame or fault because the circumstances were the circumstances. And I just, I don't think that there is mal-intent by anybody, you know what I mean? Or, or, or just, you could only support and give so much, given the circumstances and all the cards that we were dealt during this time. And so I will say that through this process, I will be honest, I don't feel like I got the support that I would have liked, but I don't think it was, and I know it wasn't intentional. I just know it was because of the timing and, and just everything going on. But yes, I, I definitely would have loved a lot more support to have those conversations that are important and meaningful and to the depth in which they need to be held.
Thank you so much for being open and honest.
I told myself I wasn't going to cry, but man. Me every time.
Principal Cordes, I do know that you are passionate and caring and that you're, all of that is right there on your sleeve. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much for your work and your honesty. At this point, board, we are going to take comments. I'm going to limit you to a minute each. Director Medina.
Yeah. So, um, one of the concerns that I, that I have right now is just, I've heard a couple of times, kind of almost a defense of eugenics as it relates to Luther Burbank. You know, and he wasn't like a Nazi, wasn't, you know, it was Nazism came posthum. But to me, eugenics is eugenics and from the point that it started and the Nazi movement and the genocide that happened because of that is the extreme of that idea taking root, becoming institutionalized and going to the extreme. But the idea and, and we talk about looking at things from our lens now. We got to remember what the lens was then in terms of who was in power, the different classes in society and who controlled things and, you know, how women were looked at, how different people of color were looked at. So that's another lens that existed. And when we talk about how, how Burbank's view on eugenics existed, we got to look at that lens that existed at that point. In terms of how this process has played out, I'm very disappointed in the fact that the, the initial recommendation that came from a board member wasn't initially put out to the committee. I think that that would have helped the process. I think that this idea of, from the committee of supporting someone that's local, you know, I value that idea. I think that's something that I'd definitely be supportive of. But then that wasn't further developed in terms of, well, getting for the names to maybe support that idea and bring recommendations to the board for that. So I think I'll just leave it at those concerns and those comments because I know we're short on time. Allow other board members to.
Thank you, Director. Director Lopez, Director McCormick, Director Manieri, Director, Director Flores and then Director Manieri.
All right. I want to say that I really appreciate the work that was put into this. I think, you know, based on all the circumstances, it was great work and I really appreciate what you did. But I do kind of agree with what the point stuff in Director Manieri had brought up earlier and pushing this back till later. I, I think right now there are so many things going on and I, I think we did not have the ability to engage in the way that we should have and we could have. And so, and to nobody's fault really, I think there are things that we are, we learned from this. And I think there are things that were just out of our control. So I personally would really like to see this come back later, even if I'm not going to be here. But I think it just, it'd be a much better experience for all parties involved if we can bring this back later.
Thank you, Director. George McCormick.
I am overwhelmed by the work that has been put into this already in light of a global pandemic. And I am just, I'm just amazed at the effort and feel so torn and it's such a big issue and, but I, and I definitely, definitely support, which is why I jumped on the second so fast initially, that we need to back this up and not as a, this is obviously a controversial and intense topic for us to be covering, but we need more time to do it right. I don't think this has been handled properly. I'm not going to blame anyone. We're all just trying our best to serve and lead in the environment that we're in this year. And these are pressing urgent issues for people. But we just need more time. And then my other comment that I want to make, besides, I think we need more time and I don't want to jump the gun because I want to hear from all the Monroe community as well tonight, but I think this is, I'm going to feel the same way on both issues for the same reason. But I really believe this should not be a top-down decision. Just philosophically, I don't believe this should be a top-down decision. And I, I understand that we're in a leadership position and have a, we're in a position of influence as board members and trustees. But I feel like, I feel like decisions regarding school names need to be, come from the community and that's the, the community of the school itself and the community at large surrounding that school. And so I want more of that. I don't feel like it should be a top-down decision from us as a board. I feel like it should be driven from the community up. I think there's some interaction there involved on the bottom-up, top-down or whatever, however you want to look at it, but I definitely think it should not be coming from a top-down situation. So those are my thoughts and I really hope that we vote to postpone both of these issues and work on them when the time is more appropriate to spend energy and effort and do right by this.
Director Flores.
Thank you, President Feng. So first of all, thank you to both of you and thank you for the community for, for spending this enormous amount of time doing this, doing this really, really trying times. Thank you for your work. And second of all, I like to apologize for the undue burden that you all had to endure, not only during the pandemic, but you know, by, by, by doing this insurmountable sort of, sort of work for, to, to get this ready. So it doesn't go unnoticed. I, I have to echo what some of our, some of my colleagues have said. I think we need a, a huge educational sort of campaign effort that needs to be organic, that needs to be community-based, that needs to be brought up from the ground up and informed us about what it is that, that our community wants us to do, right? They elected us to be here to make sure that we are a voice of their, of what they want us to do. So, so I just, and and I don't think also having a time limit or a time or a timeframe of this, it's, it's, it's appropriate because I, I think teaching equity, teaching history, teaching what happened takes time, right? And I don't think if we move this, and I'm sorry Director Manieri, to, to the fall, will yield a different result because I don't think it's enough time for, for the informational sort of campaign that needs to be, that needs to, that needs to happen from the ground up. So I, I think when you start thinking a little bit more long-term in terms of our educational systems and what we are teaching in our classrooms to make sure that, that all of our families understand the concepts that we're being, that, that we're bringing forward here and the ideas behind, you know, a, a name change. So just to let you know, I'm going to be leaning towards a no and, and, and that vote because I, I don't think, you know, it's, it's appropriate to do, to put a time limit. Because it needs to be organic and we need to hear what our community is telling us to do. So, thank you.
Hi, Director Manieri and Director Sheffield. And we have to watch our time. Actually, we need a motion to extend time.
I move to extend the meeting until.
We finish.
Until we finish.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And second, it was by Director De La Cruz?
Yes.
Thank you. And it was motioned by Director Manieri. Thank you. Director Manieri had a comment. Director Sheffield had a comment.
Can I, can I go last, President Feng?
Director Sheffield.
Okay. I do want to thank the advisory committee for the time and the energy and the research put into the recommendations. And I do also want to thank the school community. When we started the conversation, there was about 200 participants. We've dropped a few. It's getting later in the evening, but their voice is really important in this process. And I just want to share, you know, we, we received a lot of emails and a lot of comments from, from folks. But I want to read a portion of one in particular that, that came from a former city school student and a good family friend who's done some pretty great things in her life. And she gives a lot of praise to Luther Burbank. And she starts her comments by saying, "The greatest crime we, when aspiring for justice and equity is that the very people you were trying to uplift are not part of the process." Especially when that community of parents, teachers and students want to be and thought they were part of the process of naming their school. Pretty powerful. And, you know, she, she's calling out the district and the board, but she's also calling out the advisory committee. I don't know what that was, but I, I just, you know, I want to say to the participants at tonight's meeting and those who couldn't attend that you have to understand the intentions of putting out the names de Luis Huerta and, and George Ortiz to this list. Because you have to know the governing body of this board. This board is unique in the county. And that we are, you know, actively charging headstrong into equity. We are fully facing the era of reckoning. And I mean, just take a minute and look at the makeup of this board. You know, and so as we move forward, I don't know for this item and the next agenda item, you know, I just want to make it clear that, you know, Diane stated it and we heard it echoed from others tonight that the, the process is the most important part and we need to be inclusive in that process. I know that this, you know, was, was in a sense rushed in a time of the pandemic and we weren't able to get the participation that maybe we wanted. We certainly didn't get the participation that we needed. And that's what I think that we need to focus on. And I am, you know, ever brought up the, the, the time, if we're going to bring this back in the fall. I don't know if we can go through a summer. I'm glad that we're not trying to. I don't know if we can go through a summer. I'm glad that we're not trying to decide this in the summer. But I don't know if we can start a school year and then start this process as well because there's so many layers to it as we've heard discussed tonight. So, you know, again, if we're, if we're going to, if we're going to table this, if we're going to bring it forward, I really think that we need to focus. I know that we, the intention is to focus on the process, but it needs to be inclusion. I'll stop there.
I have a comment unless Director Manieri wants to have the last comment.
I think Director De La Cruz has her hand up.
Sure. Sorry. I thought we were still on the questions part. I hadn't made my comments yet.
Director De La Cruz.
Okay. So I also want to echo words of thanks to folks who took on really impossible tasks in the middle of a pandemic. And I want to apologize and in terms of the lack of clarity that I think you definitely experienced at the, you know, from the board. And I just also want to clarify that, you know, Principal Cardozo, you and I emailed when this first came up and I was like, absolutely, this should not happen during a pandemic, like absolutely focus on, you know, getting through this time. And so, you know, I really, I really want to just in which the process was set up, you know, at the outset to be very, very, very deeply challenging and not really provide you with the kind of support, you know, as, as Board Member Sheffield mentioned, that this board is ready and willing to provide.
Do we lose Director De La Cruz?
I'm in our country's history where it felt like there was a new opportunity for some deep investigation into who we are and to what our choices have been and what new choices might open up for us to create something new. Right? That allows for respecting people who have been denied representation and celebration and recognition for their contributions to our country's history. And for some of the change that made it possible for me to be here tonight. And so, you know, I, I work in equity and in race equity in particular and, you know, I want to just share the definition that I use in the hopes that we can really continue this conversation with this level of support. And, you know, that means race equity recognizes that race is still the single biggest indicator of how healthy, how wealthy, and how well-educated you are in this country. And that's because our country created race to justify its actions and policies, like displacement of millions of Native Americans and then engaging in the genocide of tens of millions of them. The enslavement of Africans, all the way to the determination of who could be a citizen, right? And those, those things didn't stop, especially with kind of the connectivity of citizenship to whiteness until 1952. And so race equity really asks us to lay that foundation, right? And to understand that white supremacy is really at the core of our history as Americans and the policies that create these outcomes. And so, you know, enter Luther Burbank, a scientist, right? And I think that those claims around those distinctions and those differences in outcome have sadly sometimes been used to, science has been used to explain those outcomes rather than looking deeply at our policies and our processes. And so, you know, just really thinking about, you know, what kind of work needs to happen as we move forward into this. And Principal Cardozo, I really love your idea of, you know, a process that includes deep education around our local history that allows for people to more deeply engage in who we are. And I hope that folks understand that this process, you know, really should not be performative. There shouldn't be an outcome that is about wanting to change the name. You know, this is about a community conversation that deeply considers our history and that deepens and broadens our understanding of the world, its complexity, the way time's passage changes meanings and create context and, you know, the opportunity that we have to really think about, you know, how we can share and learn about people like de Luis Huerta and George Ortiz and how, how powerful those things have been to create a world that certainly considers and centers people who have been underrepresented and who have been harmed by white supremacy, you know, have, have a moment of stepping into that, that space. You know, I certainly learned a lot about Luther Burbank in this process and I'm really grateful to you for that. I've also learned, right, as a historian, that history is also her story and history is also historia. And so I really love the, you know, the, the solution that you presented tonight to, to more deeply engage in that kind of a process. And I just want to offer my support, my loving support for, you know, what that, what that process really could look like and how transformative that kind of deep community learning that leads us to a different outcome than the one we have tonight, which is, you know, I think we all are sharing a recognition that that is not the kind of outcome that we want these kinds of processes to look or feel like, especially for, you know, our educational leaders in the district like you, Principal Cardozo. And, and so I just, you know, this is, this is, this is a wonderful opportunity and I think it really does reflect the power of community voices to challenge us to, to really kind of look at, you know, what kinds of processes will, will result in, in changing outcomes that reflect, you know, our changing understanding of the world. Thank you.
Director Manieri.
Thank you, President Fong. I, I want to just, I, I want to thank everyone in, in this process. I really do think that everyone had the best of intentions. And, and specifically thank you to Dr. Karamura for, for doing your job. You, you took a request from the board. You went through the protocols, you started what needed to be started and had to endure the pressure that you might have felt from the board and, and navigate this thin line between what the board wants or wanted and, and what the community thinks is right. And that is incredibly difficult. So I want to honor that, that, that difficulty. I, I can imagine what that might have felt like when, and likewise for, for Principal Cardozo and those involved in the facilitation process. I'll keep my, I have like a lot to say, but I'll keep my comments short. I have been compiling my thoughts for days and writing them in a Google Doc to be prepared for this moment. And so what I will share is that I, I really do think that the, that the committee did what they could with, with what they had to engage and, and to solicit input and feedback. And, and I'm not convinced that we as a district provided the support necessary to, to have the kind of engagement that like Director Sheffield said that we wanted and needed. And that is a no-way criticism about the committee's work, rather the way that we as a district handle this situation. And of course, we as a board, it's, it's in our mission and values and priorities that we want the names of our schools to honor our community and address systemic racism, but how we do this is, is so much more important than the act of, of changing the name of a school. And, and I think that it's really important that we slow down this process and allow for true participation. We need to make sure that our community can have honest and open conversations about who our schools are named after, why they are named after certain people, and why in some cases it may be important to consider renaming a school. And we can't ignore the community voice and all of the voices of those who spoke up today and yesterday and who have been sending us emails. I think it's, it's important for, especially our students and our youth to, to hear this conversation and to know that their voice does in fact matter. And that, that they know what is best for their community because that's the community that they call home and that they're a part of. And so I, I think for me, as I reflect on this process, I even have, have to reckon with, with the fact that we probably caused harm in some way through this process. And that doesn't feel good. And it just speaks to the, the improvements that need to be made, the opportunities for growth in our process. And someone keeps muting me and unmuting me.
It's not me.
Okay. I see my little mute button go in and out.
I see it. There it is. I didn't do it.
Okay. Okay. So I guess just, just to wrap things up, I, I think that, I think that we need to acknowledge that we, we probably caused some harm. I hear the hurt and the frustration and the disappointment in our community's voice. And we can't ignore that either. And so I think that there's a lot of work to be done. I think that in some ways we're just starting. We're barely scratching at the surface of this work. And I can't in, in good consciousness make a decision and I, and I think that's kind of what my colleagues are, are maybe experiencing too, that we can't make a decision based off of a process that failed. And so we need to take time to, to really look at this and to make sure that, that we are, that we are doing justice by our community. And I do think that there are opportunities to, to do what we want to do, right? Like we, there, why can't we rename Learning House? You know, it's such a brand-new thing that, that we can really look at and, and have those conversations that we want to have. We can use that as an opportunity to talk about local leaders. I love, love, love that, that the committee really thought about, well, if we're going to name our schools after people, let's name them after people that, that made a difference in our community. And I received an email from a former teacher of mine talking about Gilbert and Alice Gray. And I think one of the Grays was my principal at Cook Middle School. So how cool would that be? And, and so I just, I honestly made the motion to fall 2021 because I didn't know where, where my colleagues on the board would be on this issue. And so I just kind of felt like that might be a reasonable timeline, but I am completely, I completely agree with Director Flores and Director Sheffield that this, this takes time. And there is no motion on the floor because I, I withdrew it. So I would like to make the motion to suspend the renaming of Luther Burbank Elementary School to a time indefinite.
Second.
Okay, so.
Can I make a friendly amendment, staff, to just add some future direction as well around, you know, ensuring that we have some conversations around the design process for future, for how this happens moving forward. So it's not just kind of like a hold, but I think it's, you know, is there an ad hoc or is there some, you know, how best does the board really support this effort and support, you know, admin and staff and, and really tough stuff that is maybe very new for a lot of folks, right? So, sorry, that was a really long amendment. I'm not, I'm not sure exactly how to make it, but it's something about like holding the process, but also making sure that we're, 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 we're developing a future process that. Yeah.
Are you talking about a process for committees or a process for renaming schools?
I, can I interject while you think, Director De La Cruz?
Sure. I actually, I, you know, I think this isn't necessarily about renaming school. I think this is about having a community learning opportunity about our history in Santa Rosa and, you know, what that means to our students and what those, what that history, you know, means for us today. And so, and I, I just, I hope that, you know, people understand that, you know, the renaming of schools has become performative and very controversial and has resulted in our really missing an opportunity to do something very different than just something performative. And I really don't want to get stuck in that. I think it's, it's a much richer conversation when that controversy and that lack of stability and that stress that we heard today from our kids, you know, teachers about their feelings of loss already. You know, that's there, if anything, you walk out of these situations feeling full and like you have so much more, not feeling like you have lost something, right? That, that a, a deep, a deep community conversation that is supported, you know, is creates a richness of knowledge and wealth that really also kind of pulls in, you know, the richness and the wealth of communities that haven't always been represented in, you know, the educational systems of our community. But that certainly are represented in the communities of color that have survived genocide. You know, and those teachings are incredibly powerful and I would love to find ways to build that into what it is that we do here.
Dr. Kalamora.
Yeah, I, I, all that, that was said, I don't think is in a motion. But what I hear, what I hear, or maybe it's more what I think and feel, is that if I were staying on, and so this would probably be the superintendent, and I could start this. I think it begins with a, with a committee, an executive committee, a committee that I would want to talk to with the board. I think that I need, or the new superintendent or whoever, me, I'll just say me for now, okay? For 35 more days for me. So I want to hear very clearly from a subcommittee of the board. And you had talked about this before, Director De La Cruz. It's, it's an ad hoc that's made up of us first, so we can get our stuff together before we start branching out and bringing in and including. And I think it, for me, and I would say it's probably for cabinet, it would be some experts coming in and working with us to define how we move to this next step because what I see is the entire policy around committees, community engagement, all the things that are tied to very, very old practices have to be thrown out. And this new policy, these new policies that are, as my friend Ana Lugo says, culturally responsive and as I say, culturally conscious have to be implemented in their place. So how, and you can't put what I just said in a motion either. So what, what it is, is to suspend, I think, the suspension of naming and to, just to suggest and create a ad hoc committee of the board and the cabinet to further explore the, where we're going to go with this, the next steps, the, and then bring that back to the public. And get input on that, get, figure out what that, you know, have the dialogue about that. So that's my thinking. It's rough, my thinking.
So what's the motion? We're suspending and that was seconded. And that's it. And then Alex, we had Director, De La Cruz asked for some kind of action. We haven't created that yet.
I think, Mr. Dirk, I think Director Medina.
Director Medina might have something to say.
Well, yeah, on the motion, I do not support the motion to suspend indefinite. I feel that we need to be more specific in terms of providing direction to staff, whether it be revisiting the process or something more specific, but just to simply suspend indefinitely, I do not support that motion.
So I would, I would like to say something before we kind of finish hashing out this motion and what we're going in the future is, I'm not going to repeat what my colleague said because I agree with everything they said. But one thing came through loud and clear, and I want to say this to the Burbank community, the Luther Burbank Elementary School community, the love of your school. However, whenever you went to the school is shining clear, shining to us loudly and proudly. So thank you, but that is really appreciated. I will say, however, also to the Burbank School that it's not about the name of your school. You identify that as your moniker, but really it's about, it's, it came from the relationships that your teachers built with you and created for you, all the different teachers that, that were ever at Burbank. It made you feel that this was your home. So your name could have been ABC School and you would love ABC School. So that's a point I want to make about Luther Burbank because to me he was a eugenicist and that cannot stand, but that's not the issue right now. And the other thing I think we got wrong is this is about education. The way we went in was kind of about, here's, here's the answer. The answer is get a different name. And the question was why? The question should have been why. So we really do authentic learning, the kind of learning that we really want for our students is what is the question? Let's start with these, these big, big questions. And the question could be, how do our systems not support all our students? How do our systems not uplift all our students? How do our systems exclude and oppress students? How do our system, how do our systems perpetuate racism? And then maybe the answer is going to be through our school names or through any other thing that you come up as you study. And I think that is the better way, the more authentic way to do things. So again, apologies, but really I think this board is, is learning how to, to do this transformative work. And we might be using old systems ourselves. So that speaks to Dr. Kalamora's study session with some coaching about how to go about this.
And maybe, maybe it is a study session, first of all. Yeah, so.
Okay, so let's amend, let's amend the motion to, we're going to suspend this discussion about the renaming of Luther Burbank School until we're going to suspend this discussion about the renaming of Luther Burbank School until, uh, the second semester. And during the first semester, the board will engage in a study session with coaching on how we move this, these questions forward for, for ourselves.
Just a clarification, President Fong, so we'd be postponing like the, the vote to rename or like that? That's kind of the timeline, that is what we're directing the superintendent to kind of, that's the timeline we're directing her to act on. That then in the second semester, we're having a discussion.
And so after the board gets our act together on how we do things to figure out how to really work on the kinds of transformation that we have in our mission, vision, strategic priorities, that's the first semester of twenty-one, twenty-two, and the second semester, twenty-one, twenty-two, then we turn our attention to this issue and resurrect it and explore it again. And we don't know the answer because we directed them with an answer, but we still are figuring out the questions.
I think, I think that the board study, the board part of it could happen in the first semester. But I think the second semester then is going to look something like culturally responsive community engagement. And that's going to take probably all semester, having just gone through this with, um, maybe Santa Rosa Foundation. And so it may not be till the end of the semester that you can come back with, you know, whatever the outcomes are from those community engagements.
And I would also suggest to my colleagues on the board is that this is all learning experience. Nothing's for not, we all experience, we're all learning. And thank you to the Burbank community.
You can always, yeah, you can always come back and change the date if it's not, if it's, if it's not progressing like you want, or if it's progressing like it can be, then you could, you could always come back and change. So I think that the, the, the motion on the table is suspend the naming of Luther Burbank. Uh, in, what was it? Uh, indefinitely, Stephanie, right? Uh, Director Medina, I don't know if you had a friendly amendment to that? Uh, or you just were going to not vote on it, Director Medina? No, no friendly amendment?
I, I, I don't support it as is. But I, 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 I think that we need something more specific. Um, I'm not necessarily supportive of this idea, it was brought, brought up as an amendment, something in first semester about exploring process and then something another semester. It seems like way too much in terms of what we need to do. Um, so, you know, I'll just, whatever the final motion is, you know, although based on what I think on that, um, I heard talk of an amendment. I'm not sure if there was entertainment of an amendment. Um, so I'm just, just want to be clear where we're at, but so far all I know.
Okay, so, uh, I think, President Fong, I think the question is to Director Manieri, is your, is your, uh, um, motion stated as is? Is your motion fineness is that how you want it to be stated? And can you repeat it again, sorry?
Yes, so my, my motion, because this is what is on, on our agenda to take action on the naming of Luther Burbank. My motion is to suspend the action of the naming of Luther Burbank indefinitely. And for the purpose of what Director De la Cruz, I think, was trying to add on to that, um, which is to provide staff, to, to evaluate our process and provide staff with support.
Okay, all right. And it was seconded by?
Director McCormick.
All right, Director, President Fong, that's what you have right now.
All right, Medina, did you get that down?
Yes, thank you. Are we ready for roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Director Lopez.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director de la Cruz.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Medina.
No.
President Fong.
Hi, all right, that passes six to one. Okay. Thank you again, everyone. All right, we are on, um, E four. Is the public hearing for the naming of James Monroe. And at this point, public hearing is open.
And you're going to, um, are you going to do two minutes and?
Yes, we are going, uh, so we are going to do two minutes each. We're going to see if any child, any student is still up. We'd like to them to go for us and I, we're really sorry, it's ten twenty-one, you shouldn't be up. And we are going to limit this public comment to twenty minutes per board policy that we can do.
Okay.
So if there are members of the public that would like to comment on item E four, the public hearing for James Monroe, I'm going to lower all hands and ask that students raise their hands at this time. Only students who want to comment during this public hearing. All right, and it looks like the students are sleeping. So everybody else who wants to comment during the public hearing, please raise your hands. And we'll start with Nikki Winovich.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Kitamora. Um, it is important to address the naming of schools. Um, and schools should not be named after former slaveholders and history is important. Um, and I think that you've already come to the conclusion of what I was trying to, um, persuade you to do. Um, but I'm speaking to help you understand the impact of your timing. I first of all, want to thank Dr. Manny, uh, Director Manny area and President Fong for acknowledging the harm that you caused. Um, I cannot explain to you, to, to, to you so, so that you truly understand the added work stress and the overall emotional toll that this endeavor took on the staff and especially our administrator. I want to thank Catherine Storl for your grace under this overwhelming amount of added work that this was bestowed upon you. Board members, adding this oppressive and insurmountable task did not contribute to anyone's wellness. Quite the opposite. Waiting until we are done juggling, uh, the myriad of academic and emotional needs of our students and as well as our own needs during this unprecedented time is necessary. We can do so much more with our students and make this an authentic learning experience if we have time. I and most of our staff did not have the bandwidth for this at this point. Uh, we were barely hanging on there. I want to shout out to, uh, my colleague Merrill Blomsa, who found super strength to do this. Your unthoughtful timing was a disservice to our students, families and staff and our administrator. I hope this was a learning opportunity for you and what to not do to prevent burnout and encourage wellness in our staff. Please continue delaying this process so that we can all fully participate and make this an authentic learning opportunity for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Bertozzi.
Let me, good evening. I'm, I'm a teacher at Monroe. My father authored a book about the history of my hometown. So I wouldn't be my father's daughter if I didn't speak out about saving the history of the Monroe School name. The history of this school and its name predate Santa Rosa City Schools. In the eighties, school board, a school board member decided to add the James. However, it was simply Monroe School for over a hundred years beforehand. Literally, Monroe was its own school district dating back to the eighteen fifties, named not for the president, but for an early pioneer family who lived in the area of Santa Rosa. To this day, the neighborhood is known as Monroe. And look at all of our school clothing, we are the Monroe Griffins. When the idea of renaming the school came up last summer, we asked to be a part of the process and I thank you for giving us this opportunity. We did look at other names and we learned about those people. In the data acquired, restoring the name Monroe School is the number one choice of every subgroup of stakeholders, parents, students, teachers, community members. I ask you to honor the process and honor the data that emerged. This community wants to restore the historical name of our school. I understand that you chose us for a possible change because of our large Latinx community. If you change the name to something other than Monroe, you will be the ones who are suppressing their voice. In the end note, after I lost my father's book in the Tubbs fire, I met up with a friend who gave me her copy. What an amazing gift. And in shocked response, I asked, you moved across the country with this book? She answered, of course, it's the history of my hometown, it matters to me. I was reminded of that when my colleague Gina Godfrey told us, and one of her students that lamented, my mom went to Monroe and my auntie went to Monroe. But if you change the name, I'll be the only one in my family who doesn't go to Monroe. Local history, family history, it matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Micah Carlin Gulper.
All right, good evening, everyone. So my history with Santa Rosa City Schools began at Monroe. I spent my first year here at Monroe and I still have my spirit ware and none of it has the word James on it anywhere. The de facto name of Monroe Elementary, to my knowledge, is Monroe Elementary. I never hear anybody refer to it as James Monroe, except when we have to use the four-digit code representing our schools, the four-digit letter code representing our schools. I strongly encourage the board to return to the historical name, which is a local person, and leave our, leave the name as is, right? We, in spite of the fact that James was officially added to the name of the school, our school name is and has been, as far as I'm aware, just Monroe Elementary. And you notice I say our, I've been at Stealing for five years and I still feel a part of the Monroe community. I'm still friends with the people I worked there with for one year because that's the kind of family they've built there and that family is called Monroe Elementary. Also, I would like to call attention to the fact that Monroe Elementary's community is being given one-third the amount of time to comment on this very important issue that the Burbank community was given. I strongly, um, hope that you don't silence voices by limiting the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Merrill Blomsa.
Good evening, Dr. Kitamora, President Fong and members of the board. I am Merrill Blomsa, a proud first-generation Filipino-American and fifth-grade teacher at Monroe Elementary School. I'm speaking today to urge you to see this name change as an opportunity to be intentional about whose voice we want to center in this conversation about racism and schools. Changing our name would be a small step towards creating safe spaces for BIPOC students and staff to be seen and belong because represent, representation matters. It's clear the students of Monroe agree we should rename the school. Moreover, youths who participated in SGO Student Voices forums want, want change on a larger scale. One youth said, we want educators to teach the whole truth and not the sugar-coated revisionist history. Students want to feel validated and want.
I think we've lost your audio, Ms. Blomsa.
Thirteen, started in response to the quittal of Trayvon Martin's murder. Children are being separated from their parents at our borders. There's a huge, oh, sorry, is my audio unmuted? Okay, sorry. Um, children are being sep, oh, there's a huge rise in Asian hate crimes and yet we have the opportunity to make change. At the end of the day, people of color deserve to feel safe in their cars, sleeping in their back, sleeping in their backyards, walking to the bank, in their workplaces and especially in school. As for keeping the Monroe name and just lopping off the James, that argument is yet again a white land-owning narrative, a narrative that has long been fought over in the native community. In fact, James Monroe Elementary sits on the land that once belonged to Southern Pomo and Greaton Rancheria tribes. One indigenous student said, I'm here because I'm my ancestors' prayers. Her ancestors, who were erased from history books, whose land was taken, whose people were murdered and mistreated, prayed for change. We can be that change. Furthermore, when we think about change as educators, we know that growing and learning can feel uncomfortable and will take time. In order to address systemic racism in schools, we must transform from the inside out. To quote another youth, this system wasn't built for us. Hearing this from a student, I realized the power and impact of school, the school system has in our society. It must be a priority that all teachers engage in the work of implicit bias, white fragility, learning from multiple perspectives, restorative practices and have training on how to humanize curriculum. It is not enough to be neutral anymore. BIPOC students deserve better, the time is now. The youth need us to be anti-racist. This is a mo, a moment in history where we get to decide which side we will stand on. Will we be bystanders or will we be upstanders? Whose voice do you want to be amplified with very much with gratitude from the bottom of my heart? Thank you.
Thank you, and we asked that everybody watch the clock. I know we had a little bit of audio trouble there, but, um, we have two minutes per comment. Thank you. Michael Vanderporten is next.
Evening, I'll be short. Um, first of all, it does sort of feel like, once again, the West side gets shorted. And this is a specific decision by the board, three to one in favor of the West. And this didn't allow the community to do a fair amount of research into what this district is all about, about the heritage of the district. And there's now Wikipedia page that's been adopted by Wikipedia. So go look for what, uh, look for Monroe District, Santa Rosa on Wikipedia. Cynthia Zieber has come forth and said that it was a mistake on her part to put the James on it. I hope she's online today, I hope she calls in, but she has posted on Facebook that it was a mistake. Uh, in terms of the comments that we call it Monroe School, my kids went to Monroe School. We've been volunteers there, been on the PTSA, uh, been on the site council. It's always been Monroe. When the field was dedicated, that was a volunteer-built field. It wasn't a field built by the schools, it wasn't a field built by the, um, the soccer league or something, it was built by volunteers. The name that was attached in the nineties was Monroe Field. It's Monroe. The community has spoken, the cert, the process was good. It went out to a large number of people because we did it later, because we were public. It was in the press Democrat, it got publicity, people knew about it, it was on Facebook. People knew about it, it was on Nextdoor, people knew about it. It was a good, open process, the voting has been done, there were a good number of returns. The results are solid, two to one, everybody wants Monroe, please keep Monroe.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from someone who has numbers, so if you could please state your name for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, could you please state your name?
My name is Karen Stone. I was on the Monroe Advisory Committee. The board created the advisory committee to review new school names that were solicited through community surveys. The Monroe surveys indicated that the community wants the school name returned to the original name, which was Monroe Elementary School. I recommend that the board listen to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is someone who's named Martinez, if you could state your name for the record.
Rosa Martinez, family engagement facilitator at Monroe.
Thank you, Rosa, is there any way you might be able to turn your volume up?
Let's see. Can you hear me?
Barely, um, if there's any way you can talk near your microphone, that might help.
Can you hear me?
We'll all be very quiet and try to hear.
Okay, I am the family engagement facilitator at Monroe. I, I vote to keep Monroe Elementary. The school was named after a pioneer family that lived in the area since the eighteen hundreds. There are schools that are definitely named after President Monroe. Our school was not. James was just a name added because some of, someone from the school district in nineteen eighty-three felt Monroe needed to have a first name added to it. We need to educate our students and families about this truth. We have many generations of families that have attended Monroe. Let's keep it going. Thank you to all the Monroe staff for your time. Thank you to all the Monroe staff for your time. Keep our school name Monroe Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Next, Rebecca Rocha.
Hi, members of the board, President Fong, Superintendent Kitamura, and members of cabinet. I'm Rebecca Rocha. I happen to be the goddaughter of George Ortiz. I wanted to share a message from Carol Ortiz, George's wife. When I spoke with her today, she did state that she isn't sure how she feels about name cha- name changes in general. She questioned how an idea to name a local school after her late husband resulted in a list of names that did not include him. She would like to thank Omar Medina and Dr. Diane Kitamura for revisiting the original vision to honor Doc, Mr. Ortiz. While we agree now may not be the time, money should be allocated carefully towards students, and we are coming out of a pandemic, and this was not the right time to discuss this. Nevertheless, this issue has arisen out of the Black Lives Matter movement. George Ortiz was a local veteran, a Mexican-American civil rights activist, the first in his family to attend college. Of the countless things he did for this community, some of his contributions included being co-founder of the California Human Development, an organization which provided job training, housing, and deferral programs for poor people. He started the Latinos Unidos El Condado de Sonoma and the Mexican-American Youth Organization, organizing the first Latino youth organizations in local high schools in the late nineteen sixties. He also started a youth scholarship program for Latino students, which has given out over one million dollars to Latino students in this county for college. His organization was the first and still might be the only to tell brown kids in this county that they can go to college. He marched with Cesar Chavez and helped organize low-local farm workers. Today, Carol reminded me how George, how hard George worked to give Latinos in this county a voice. That was his biggest accomplishment. George and his wife would have been so proud to have had a school named after him. We question why the community did not see this renaming as an opportunity for students at James Monroe Elementary, which is predominant predominantly Latino. How many students at Monroe have Ortiz as their last name? He would have been so proud to know that students could have spent seven years learning his legacy, knowing that they could also grow up to be like him. This is an opportunity for the community to embrace Mr. Ortiz and what he meant to the people of color in this community. While Dr. George Ortiz was someone who respected history, the question remains, is our community ready to embrace a local Mexican-American leader? If the answer is no, we must ask ourselves why. If it is decided that James Monroe Elementary not be named after George Ortiz, the Ortiz family will be reaching out to other local school districts to see if there is an interest in honoring his legacy, and at the same time, sending a powerful message to brown kids that they matter.
Thank you. And President Fong, there are no other hands raised for this public hearing.
Thank you to everyone who stayed up late to, to make those comments. We appreciate it. Public hearing is over. This is an action item. We are on action. Number six. Board will consider the recommendation of the James Monroe Elementary School facilities naming community advisory committee, and I am going to ask for that presentation now.
I will.
E-five, E-five.
I will turn it over to Dr. Guzman. And have Catherine Stroll come over, I believe.
She is there. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Kitamura, President Fong, members of the board. Um, I will turn it over to Principal Stroll, um, current principal at James Monroe Elementary, to share the presentation and the work of her committee. Catherine?
Hi, thank you, Dr. Guzman. I somehow got pulled through that Zoom portal, but I made it. Um, I will share my screen. It might take me just a second. Let's see. All right, so here we go. So, good evening, President Fong, members of the board, Superintendent Kitamura. I'm Catherine Stroll, principal at James Monroe Elementary School, and I'm here to present the results of a year-long process to develop five names for the board to consider to replace our current name, James Monroe. So this process began for us at the July twenty-second board meeting with a directive to engage in a district-led process to rename, to rename our facility. Um, since then, we've worked to engage our four main stakeholder groups, students, staff, parents, and community at large in a variety of ways. Some of our students had an opportunity to participate in a name change project. Specifically, we had two teachers who took this on. Um, we have others who did express that they would have liked to participate in the project with their students, but simply didn't have the bandwidth during COVID, as you heard tonight. Um, it was our fifth-grade teacher and student council liaison, who is also our Monroe Teacher of the Year, Merrill Blomsa, who took a group of students through a deep dive into the racial history of the United States, equity, and change. Um, in this work with the group of students, along with her grade-level partner, Cynthia Kousland, um, they led fantastic conversations, and many of the names that we considered came from that work. Um, our staff has discussed this at staff meetings, and all of our staff members were invited to participate on that community advisory committee. Parents were also invited to participate on the committee. Um, they were invited to discuss and give input at ELAC meetings and an all-parent meeting. Uh, community members were invited to participate on the committee as well, and we did have four members of the public who were represented. In addition, all of these stakeholder groups were given an opportunity to suggest names through our naming of facilities recommendation form. It was sent out through Parent Square, which is our internal communication, also email, and it was posted on our Monroe School website. These groups were then sent their respective versions of ranking voting surveys. Uh, the community survey was posted on the school website. We all know that it was reposted on Neighborhood Next Door um, by one of our committee members and was also linked in the Press Democrat. So Board Policy seventy-three-ten was our guiding policy through this process, and it states the criterion that are to be used in making a name selection. It indicates facilities shall be named for individuals living or deceased and entities that have made outstanding contributions, including financial contributions to the school community or who have made contributions of statewide, national, or local significance. Oops, statewide, national, or pardon me, worldwide significance. Or in recommend, in recognition of the geographic area in which the school or building is located. The role of the Community Advisory Committee is outlined in the Facilities Naming Community Advisory Committee Application Form is to review naming request forms and to develop a list of names for the board's consideration. And it is, as we know, the Board of Education that has that final responsibility for naming facilities. I would like to take just a moment to highlight and thank all of the members of the James Monroe Facilities Naming Community Advisory Committee, which is quite a mouthful, who volunteered their time to participate in a very important civic process. We had three teachers, Gina Godfrey, Chris Bertozzi, and Merrill Blomsa, Parent Lena Jones. We have two members of local historical societies, Karen Stone and Michael Vanderporten. We had a representative from the North Bay Children's Center and a representative from the Maiden Santa Rosa Foundation, Herman G. Hernandez. So this group looked at a total of twenty-seven names that were put forth by various members of the Monroe and the Greater Santa Rosa communities. And at our first Facilities Naming Community Advisory Committee meeting, we reduced twenty-seven names to the sixteen that you see here on this slide. We applied the Board Policy seventy-three-ten to this. And then these sixteen names were sent to our four main stakeholder groups, students, staff, parents, and community for a forced rank voting, and people were asked to then rank their top five choices. We had a total of four hundred and thirteen unique respondents. I did remove any duplicate email responses, so no one could vote three hundred times. I thought was important. We got ninety-eight student responses, twenty-nine staff members responded, twenty-seven parents and guardians, and two hundred and fifty-nine members of the greater community. It is linked in the board agenda and on our Monroe School website. I have a complete offering of all manner of graphs. Um, but for our purposes, I will just be focusing on those top five names that were selected from each of the stakeholder surveys. So this shot, this slide shows all four of the results of the four surveys that were sent. The first graph on the top left shows the top five names ranked by students. The second graph on the top right shows those top five names as ranked by staff. The bottom left are those top five names as ranked by our parents. And the bottom right, the bottom right are those top five names that were ranked by the community members. Um, the numbers in red are the ranked scores. They are not the number of people who voted for each name. A ranked score allows a higher weight to be placed for someone's first choice than their second, third, fourth, or fifth. So each of those bars shows the combination of points that were earned.
We have interpreted.
So each of those bars shows the combination of points that was earned by each of the name from all five places, first through fifth. Um, these are disaggregated, the disaggregated data of the stakeholder graphs, and as you can see, the top five names from each of the stakeholder surveys vary from each other. So here is a complete list of all nine of the names that made any of the stakeholders' top five lists, and they are shown in their ranked order. So which names should we put forward for the board to consider? We started with twenty-seven. We narrowed it down to sixteen. Suddenly, we're at nine. And so we are submitting the top five names in order from the combined surveys for the board's consideration. And those names are Monroe Elementary School, Charles M. Schultz Elementary School, Dolores Huerta Elementary School, George Ortiz Elementary School, and Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School. And again, the number in red is that ranked score. So before I present background information on the names that was developed by the Community Advisory Committee, I'm going to try to show a very quick video. It's about fifty seconds, and it's our students um, speaking these five recommended names. And let's see if I can do that and not lose my screen share. All right, so let's see. Okay, so I do want to say a huge thank you to our students who participated in the student project and to our teacher Merrill Blomsa for all of her hard work in that aspect. Um, so let's move on to the background of the names submitted. So I'll start with that highest-ranked choice, which is Monroe Elementary School. And I'm going to read the language that was written by our committee. Um, Monroe is the one hundred and fifty-year-old place name for an area of three square miles in northwest Santa Rosa. The earliest settlers were farmers, among them the Monroe family. The Mon- the Monroe family did not stay long, but their name endured when the Monroe District was named for them. By eighteen seventy, the neighbors had opened the Monroe District School at the Central Gurnville and Marlowe Road's location. The second school was built at the site in nineteen twenty-one. The Monroe District developed its character. The Monroe Community Club built its clubhouse in nineteen fifteen. The Press Democrat carried regular columns regarding happenings at the Monroe District. Numerous social events were held. Many organizations flourished, and businesses of all sorts thrived. The community grew. It was still identified primarily a farming community in a nineteen fifty-one Press Democrat article, and now featured extensive housing, business, and light industrial sections. The road district, fire risk maps, and online, and online maps even today use the term Monroe. In nineteen fifty, the Monroe District was annexed into the Santa Rosa City Schools District. In nineteen sixty, the new school, one half-mile north of the old school, was open, and the old site was sold two years later. When the fields behind the elementary school were developed by local volunteers in nineteen ninety-six, they were named Monroe Field and dedicated to the children of today and tomorrow. In nineteen eighty-four, the school was renamed James Monroe Elementary School by the Santa Rosa City Schools Board of Education. The name was submitted, this name was submitted uh, by members of the community to return the original intent, that being to honor the pioneering family of Monroe. The second ranked name is Charles M. Schultz Elementary School. And again, I'll read the information. Uh, Charles M. Schultz is a well-known cartoonist who lived and worked for many years in Santa Rosa, California. He is most famous for his Peanuts comic strip. To those in the hockey community, he is also known for the love and support of the sport. Schultz is widely recognized as the most influential cartoonist of all time. He has tackled many cultural issues, including the Vietnam War and the feminist movement. In an article written by Dan Taylor in the Press Democrat in twenty twenty, celebrating the seventieth anniversary of Peanuts, author Simon B. Kraft is quoted as saying, "His, Schultz's worldview is fundamentally humane and non-stereotyped in terms of gender, class, and race. He led the way in so many ways." Beyond the influence that Charles Schultz and his art have had worldwide, our school, Snoopy's Home Ice, and the Charles M. Schultz Museum share the same northwest community. We are walking distance from each other. Our school takes advantage of this proximity and can frequent, and can frequent the ice rink and museum as an affordable field trip because we can walk. The Charles M. Schultz Museum also has many programs available at the museum and programs that they bring into schools throughout our larger community. Although Charles M. Schultz was not born in Santa Rosa, this is where he claimed to be his home. His name and art bring tourism to Santa Rosa as a whole, in addition to the educational programs available for all. He is a name our students know and a cast of children characters who are recognizable, not only to our students, but throughout the world. It is also serendipitous that his middle name, his middle initial stands for the name Monroe. The third ranked name is Dolores Huerta Elementary School. Dolores Huerta is a civil rights activist who, along with Cesar Chavez, co-founded the United Farm Workers Association and was their president until nineteen ninety-nine. She is considered a leader of the Chicano Civil Rights Movement and has been an influential labor activist since the mid nineteen fifties. She helped organize the Delano Grape Strike of nineteen sixty-five that led to a union contract by nineteen seventy. She li- later led a second great boycott that resulted in the California Agricultural Labor, Labor Relations Act of nineteen seventy-five. This allowed farmer, farm workers to unionize and collectively bargain. In addition, she co-founded the Stockton Chapter of the Community Service Organization that led voter registration drives and championed economic improvements. She worked as a lobbyist to improve legislative representation for workers. Through her work with the Feminist Majorities Feminist, Feminization of Power Fifty-Fifty by the Year of Two Thousand Campaign, as well as her work on the National Chair, as the National Chair of the Twenty-First Century Party, she was successful in increasing the number of women representatives at all levels of government. Dolores Huerta has received a plethora of awards and honors. In two thousand and thirteen, she was inducted into the California Hall of Fame and received the Ellis Island Medal of Freedom Award. She received the Eleanor Roosevelt Award for Human Rights in nineteen ninety-eight. She has been named one of the three most important women of nineteen ninety-seven by Miss Magazine and one of the hundred most important women of the twentieth century by Ladies' Home Journal. She received the Puffin Prize for Creative Citizenship in twenty twenty, the Oatly Award from the Mexican government, and the James Smithson Award from the Smithsonian Institution. She has also been conferred nine honorary doctorates from universities throughout the United States. In two thousand and twelve, President Barack Obama bestowed her with the Presidential Medal of Freedom, the highest civilian award in the United States. Dolores Huerta is currently on the board of the Feminist. Dolores Huerta is currently on the board of the Feminist Majority Foundation, Secretary Treasurer Emeritus of the United Farm Workers of America, and the President of the Dolores Huerta Foundation. I'll leave you with one final note of inspiration, which is her iconic phrase, si se puede. The fourth ranked name is George Ortiz Elementary School. George Ortiz was a migrant farm worker and lifelong social worker. He was the founder of Latinos Unidos of Sonoma County, a nonprofit group that grants college scholarships and co-founder of California Human Development that creates job training, housing, recovery, and other services for farm workers, day laborers, and people with disabilities. George Ortiz was a community organizer who advocated for low income and working families, as well as other needs in our immigrant communities. In nineteen ninety nine, the Press Democrat named George Ortiz one of the fifty most responsible for shaping Sonoma County through the twentieth century. He was awarded the Latino Business Leadership Award by the North Bay Business Journal in two thousand seventeen and an honorary Doctor of Humane Letters from Sonoma State University in twenty eighteen. In that same year, the government of Mexico honored him with the Oatly Award, given annually to recognize individuals who have aided, empowered, or positively affected the lives of Mexican nationals in the United States and other countries. In a twenty twenty article in the Press Democrat, Chris Smith writes that George Ortiz, pardon me, Chris Smith writes of George Ortiz, that for more than fifty years, he was at the forefront of efforts to organize and bring equal opportunity and treatment to Mexican Americans living in the North Bay and beyond. The fifth ranked name is Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School. The Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior wore many hats and made countless contributions to American society. He was a Baptist miniature Baptist minister, social advocate, and leader of the modern civil rights movement. Through his work with the Southern Christian Leadership Conference and the Montgomery Improvement Association, he championed a nonviolent movement and helped end legal segregation in the United States. Significant events include the Montgomery Bus Boycott and the March on Washington. In addition to inspiring change through his actions, uh Martin Luther King Junior inspired change through his words and was an influential lecturer, orator, and writer. Most notable are his I Have a Dream speech and his letter from the Birmingham Jail explaining the importance of direct action as a vehicle to negotiations. His work is credited with the passing of landmark legislation, including the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty four. He was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in that same year and was honored with a federal holiday, Martin Luther King Junior Day, in nineteen eighty six. That's the first federal holiday to celebrate a national figure who had not been a president. Martin Luther King Junior played a key role in American history and his work remains relevant today. So again, these are the names that earn that highest ranking in order. Um, Monroe Elementary School, Charles M. Schultz Elementary School, Dolores Huerta Elementary School, George Ortiz Elementary School, Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School. And with that, I turn this back over to Dr. Guzman.
Uh, thank you, Principal Storl, very thorough um presentation, appreciate it. Uh, President Fong, I turn it over to you and the board.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Guzman and Principal Storl, uh board, this is question time. Director Ma- Director Omar Medina. I was looking straight at you, my mouth was awaking.
Thanks, uh, I'd like to move to rename uh James Monroe Elementary to George Ortiz Elementary School.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, so that's seconded by Allegra Dela Cruz and um Ms. Director Medina.
So now for uh my discussion on the motion, um I I'm definitely glad that in this process, the the name for Ortiz was a part of the process and looks like there was a much more extensive process taking place in 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 this look at renaming of the school. Um, in terms of the recommendations, I think that one of the things that that has stood out, right, is that, well, the fact is that the school is currently named James Monroe after the president, which is why in my initial um movement to rename the school, I selected the school. It had nothing to do with its population or anything, it was specific to the name that it had. In this process, the the issue of it previously being named Monroe after a pioneering family um is something that I've learned. Uh, with that said, one of the things that stands out to me is that regardless of the name of the school, it will still, that community will still be the Monroe community in that Monroe area from that pioneering family. Um, as a student earlier spoke, you know, Blomseth, um, I believe was her last name. One of the things that that I thought of was like what she mentioned about, you know, land that exists there and and who was there beforehand. And when I think of like pioneering and pioneering families, I think of like, okay, what in that pioneering process maybe was part of what happened to those peoples? I don't know, don't know much about this family. There's not much that I can learn. In terms of the the other recommendations, two of the recommendations are people that live locally, Charles Schultz and George Ortiz. When I think about Schultz, you know, it's a very generous family, it's a lot of history. You know, we got the Schultz Airport, the Schultz Library. I think that that's someone that's already honored in many ways in our community. And I feel with George Ortiz, someone that's amazing, that's done incredible things. And 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 as I looked at the surveys, you know, you didn't see his name come up with the students, you didn't see his name come up with the parents because his work is not yet known. And in renaming the school after him, I think that's an opportunity to elevate all the work that he's done, the amazing things that he's done for this community. Even if you look within our districts with his work on establishing Myo Clubs in the late sixties, early seventies, many students in our district benefited from that. If you look at yearbooks from those times, you'll see all the Myo Clubs that started rising up in our schools in that period of time. So um in my, in George Ortiz, I see myself. And I think that that's something important that I think we're trying to bring forward, forward. And somebody mentioned time in the comments in terms of like, this isn't the right time. And 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 when that was mentioned, I thought of like my whole process on renaming the school um after someone that I think reflects me and the many students that reflect me. And for me, this isn't just been a process of this school. You know, for me, it started with Cesar Chavez when we were pushing for Eugene Mejares. And later on, again, with what became the Esperanza. And to me, this is like a process that has been going on for a very long time. And and I'm in a position now as a board member where I can, where where I have a seat at the table to further push for this renaming and from a different level. And 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 to me, this is important. Um, and I feel that for many generations of our students, to to have a school renamed after George Ortiz is something that we are able to educate many about, the many works and the inspiring person and the amazing person that he is. As I learned and learned more about him when I brought my original resolution, I was just like, wow, how did I not know all this about this person? This is the person that's one of ours from our community. He lived here for so long and he's had an impact on so many people. And and there's, I don't see why we can't honor this person um in renaming the school as part of what we're doing, honoring someone amazing that's local. And I think that of course is that he reflects so many of our students. So that's why I'm advocating for this name change. I feel the process in this was much better. I'm supportive of the process and 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 I don't I don't see any reason why we can't go forward with the renaming of the school.
Other comments from board members? Director Dela Cruz.
I seconded the motion because in many ways, my heart says to do that, that George Ortiz is someone in our community who should be celebrated and lauded and respected. And I did that with a whole lot of recognition that that's a top-down decision from a board member. And that's overriding, you know, the the process that did feel like it was different. Um, and it did kind of at its core underlie a different sense of foundation and values to this process. And I guess, you know, having seconded that, um, I am also just raising a question, like, is there a way that, you know, our action on the Burbank renaming process, you know, also allows for this kind of process to be more deeply undertaken with regards to Monroe as well? I um am thinking about those kids who were very clear about their choices and the ways in which, you know, our ranking systems. It was so interesting to see our kids make such different decisions than staff, the community, and parents. Um, and so, you know, in all of this, I I would love to have the same opportunity to work with our kids and to work with, you know, the community in um in the Monroe area around whether or not, you know, that choice of George Ortiz drives with them, like, does it feel like it's connected to their choices? Um, and so, you know, I I want to explain my second and I want to also kind of investigate whether or not their additional ability for us to do the deeper work that we described with regard to the Burbank process. So it it was a it was a second because I think it's a great decision. And um I am also really holding in my heart um that that's the decision that kids came to, and I feel like those are the voices that um to me are most important in this conversation. And so just taking some time to explain that, work through it.
Other comments? Director Flores.
Um, thank you, Director Dela Cruz for saying that. Um, I I I have to second that. I I I think that we need um we need to make sure that our stakeholders are part of the um of the decision-making process. Uh, George Ortiz was an amazing human being. I had the pleasure to meet him in twenty nineteen, we received that uh award. But I I I also think that we need to do a better job at making sure that our students, our community, know more about him. Um, I'm sure, uh, but given the the information and giving his legacy, we can, you know, come to, you know, um, a a resolution in the future that will honor uh his uh work here in the uh here in in Sonoma County and but I I have to second the fact that we need to listen to to our students, to our parents, to our faculty, to our communities and have a a grassroots sort of effort to make sure that, you know, um, people are informed and educated about our local heroes. Um, so that's it.
Director Lopez.
Um, so I I just had a quick question, kind of, now that we're talking about maybe looking at a similar step towards what we did with Burbank School. I mean, now, when we were talking about Burbank, we sort of identified things that we felt were, could have been improved upon in the process. And so I guess my question is, a- as the person who kind of helped coordinate this process, do you feel that there was anything that could have been improved or that it's worthwhile for us to take a second look at this?
Hmm, great question.
Are you directing that question to Principal Storl?
Yeah, sorry, uh, Principal Storl, if you can.
Thank you, Director Lopez, that is a great question. I think with every process, there are always places that we can improve. Um, and I would like to echo what I am hearing, which is this is an opportunity to have broader conversations about race and shared values. And yes, we did that with a very important core group of students. It would be wonderful to have those conversations on a broader level across our classrooms. Um, in a time of COVID and shelter in place, when this um student project was brought to our teachers, many just felt stretched far too thin to engage in this at this time. There were others that would have liked to. Um, and yes, Ms. Blomseth was phenomenal, jumped on this, um, applied a lot of the teachings, uh teachings from Crush with her work with students. So that would be the piece that I think that we could definitely improve upon. Um, I would also like to try to garner more public um input on the uh committee as well. I think that that would have been a place that we could improve the process.
Alright, thank you.
Director Manieri.
Yeah, I appreciate um Director Lopez's question. It was kind of where my mind was going to as far as process. Um, since we just had a an important conversation about process and in the last agenda items, so um, I think that it would be um more than than fair to um to provide the same opportunity that we just had a discussion about with Luther Burbank Elementary School for the Monroe School community. Um, I'm I'm hearing a lot of the same kind of um experiences with with constraints, you know, COVID and time and bandwidth and capacity um and the desire to dive deeper um than than what actually was allowed for. So um, I I really appreciate the work. Um, and the process does feel different. Um, and I'm sure we could have a whole conversation about why that was. Um, and that would be worthwhile exploring too, right? Like, what can we learn from this process that we can apply to other processes? Um, and so, once again, I'm I'm kind of like feeling like I'm in the space of of not of not the time yet to make such an impactful decision and rather to look at our process um and and to provide the support that is needed to come come to a a community decision that feels good for everyone.
So anti-racism work, there's, there's never a good time for it. It needs to be all the time. And I want to appreciate the Monroe staff and Principal Storl for attacking this work, doing this work uh for the comments by Merrill Blomseth, and it really made me consider, um, yes, Monroe was chosen as the pioneering family who settled that land, but then again, whose land was it? And who are we, who are we honoring? And and what does that stand for? What does that say about us? So Stephanie, as you say, offering our entire community the opportunity to learn and grow along with us as we learn and grow too, um, is where I'm gonna land. Alright, any other comments?
Director Medina.
Director Medina.
I think, um, you know, I I really want to uh again push this because I feel this was a much very different process. And in looking at all the names and everything that came forward, um, you know, a lot of those people, these are people that are, you know, known and their names out there a lot. And to the fact that George Ortiz got up to number, I think it was three or four there, I think to me, I feel like there was a lot of information, a lot of education done around that, um, just the fact that he got up there. So so I feel that a lot of this work was done effectively to that point. King, you know, these are five recommendations that are being presented to us. And I feel out of those five, um, we're able to select one now. I think that, you know, some of some of the things that I'm hearing in terms of arguments is, well, well, let's take it back because there's time restrictions. We're doing our work. We, as a district, have so much work that we have to do. And and within our schools and everything, and I understand the process at Burbank is a little different. And and I and I understand what's going on there, but but I feel that what we're doing here is we're we're suggesting again, putting more work back on them, you know, burdening burdening the staff with additional work when there's still so many things that we gotta do. There's always gonna be so many things that we gotta do. And and I think that in this, that we have an opportunity to to do something different that would then allow for those discussions to occur. And I think that in renaming the school, we could do a lot of that work and then educate around George Ortiz. I feel that as a board, we need to be bold. Um, and and I would challenge all of y'all to be bold, making this decision to rename the school. And I and I feel that And I, and I feel that only positive things will come from it. I, I think, yes, there will be a period of maybe healing for some of those, but there's always going to be a lot of resistance, a lot of resistance from the dominant narrative that's existed. And, and we're always going to face that no matter what. And, and so that's why I challenge y'all to be bold and make this decision and change the name of the school. And I think, start, begin the change, a change in trajectory of where we are, where we're going, given our, our MVPs, our goals and, and what we're about, what we're trying to be about. So again, I would challenge y'all to be bold and do that.
Director McCormick and then Director Sheffield.
I appreciate you pushing us, Director Medina. My question to you, Director Medina, is what, uh, what specifically stood out to you as being different or better in this process that Monroe went through versus the process that Burbank went through? And I know there are two different issues, two different agenda items, but it's, we're, we're, you know, in general, we're talking about the same topic here. So I just wanted to know from you, what you think was different and, and went better in the Monroe process?
May I respond? Without response. Well, I think it became clear in that the name that was suggested, you know, from the board perspective, was on that original list. I think there was a much broader list of names that were a part of that process that was then reduced down many times. And so, so I think that process was, was much more elaborative. And I think the, versus the Burbank situation where the, the, one of the names that was recommended from the board didn't seem to be a part of that initial process, right? So in terms of what's been brought forward and how that process engaged, I think that felt unfair to the Burbank community that that name was just kind of like imposed kind of last minute, and it wasn't part of that process. And then, you know, it was just left with these little choices versus this process that I think engaged in the process where they had a lot more choices and, and the original name that's being proposed here was a part of that process. It wasn't something that was just thrown at them last minute.
Vice President McCormick, did you have another question or comment?
I guess I do have one more question, and it's to Superintendent Kitamora. So on the, the naming of the additional names, because they are, they were, Horta and Ortiz were on, it looks like, in the presentation that they were on the original list with Monroe, but they weren't with Burbank? Or did they get them at the same time? Or did they get them at different times? What, can you clarify that for me, please?
Yeah, I'll actually have Dr. Guzman respond to that.
So, and, and Principal Storl can help me. So Burbank started the process a little bit before Monroe did. And so I think there were some learnings from the experience with Burbank that Monroe was able to address when they started their committee. So making sure like, for example, that we followed, you know, an open meeting and making sure that that was open for everybody, making sure that the names that were suggested were a part of the committee, et cetera. And I will also add that those two names in particular were suggested by students at our site. They came about organically through the process with Ms. Blomseth and Ms. Kousland. So those were something that were a part of the student conversation.
Thank you.
Director Sheffield.
You know, I, I just want to say, you know, Omar and Allegria, I'm, I'm with you on this. I'd love to have a George Ortiz or a Deloris Werter school in our district. But I have to say with the work that's been done by the Monroe Advisory Committee and their school community, the lengthy discussion that we had just on the, on the last agenda item, I think because of this, I need more convincing that George Ortiz is where this particular school community, you know, what they want. I, I, I'm not sure if we're there yet. I think maybe we, we need to do more educating in our community on, you know, the, the significance of this name and, and what it would represent. I totally get where, where you're coming from, Omar. I, I want to be there. I just, you know, this issue and the last agenda item has just got me thinking that, that, that it's still something that is in the process, where maybe we're not engaging, fully engaging the community. Definitely the pandemic is a, is a part of it, but I don't think that we should, we should go about this from, you know, what we as a board want, what, what, you know, and I said it in, in my last comments, the same thing is that we really need to have a, a better process. We need to have a more inclusive process. Now, the, the work that was done by, by the Monroe community was a little bit different. And the names that were presented, they were presented, they were actually considered. So there's something there, and that's why I'm having a hard time going against their recommendations. I, I, I felt that there was a little bit more process there. I want to be with, with George Ortiz, but I need, I need, I need something to convince me. I need something more.
All right, if there are no other comments, Director Medina.
Yeah, you know, just in response to Director Sheffield, I think one of the things that, you know, I feel is a pattern. And, and I think I'll start off by saying, you know, humans, we are creatures of habit. We like our comfort zones. And I think that in any situation, when you take a school where there's these people, students, parents, you know, whoever, they, they've come to identify with that institution, that community, right? And I think you're always going to see a lot of people resistant to change, right? Resistant to change that identity that they become a part of, just like with Burbank, it was Burbank, Monroe, it's Monroe. I think you're always going to experience that. So I think no matter what process, I think most of the time, as, as a gambling man, I would, I would gamble and vote on they're going to select the name that they already know and they're familiar with. And I think it, it definitely will take a, a lot of work to, to push people outside of that comfort zone, outside of their identity and what they identify with. So, so I just want to throw that out there because I think that's what's happening here. And I think that will continuously happen in terms of recommendations when you're reaching out to that community.
Yeah, that's valid, definitely.
So the question then is, do we just make, make the decision for them and just make them do that? Because that's how we transform things? Or do we do it with more bottom-up and learn together? Teach and learn together and study and learn together and then make a decision based on what we've learned? All right, I guess that was rhetorical, but I certainly have an answer in my head.
Can I just weigh in on that, President Fong? I mean, I feel like I couldn't live with myself by not seconding that motion. And I'm also completely okay with the motion failing because really what we're asking is bring people along in this process of making this decision with our community and, and elevating the things that we as educational leaders and as people who really love and have benefited, I think, from the work of these people in a, in a local place. That is a process that would, you know, result in, I think, a better outcome than our making this top-down. So.
I will say, Principal Storl, that you have some beautiful, I know your murals or drawings on your walls, Black Lives Matters and, and bringing equity forward. They're beautiful.
Thank you. And in the video, those are actually not at our site. Those are at a site in Alameda. And that was a part of imagery that Ms. Blomseth used with the students.
Okay, we can aspire. All right, we can take this vote now. It was brought forward. The motion was to name the Monroe School, rename Monroe School to George Ortiz School, George Ortiz Elementary School, and it was seconded by Director De La Cruz. Medina, can we have that vote, please?
Director Lopez.
No.
Director Medina.
Oh, I said yes.
Director De La Cruz.
Can I vote last? Yes.
Director Manieri.
No.
Director Sheffield.
No.
Director McCormick.
No.
Director Flores.
Yes.
President Fong.
No.
What was that vote again, please?
So the vote was five no, three yes.
All right, so at this point, for the Burbank School, we worked to just suspend that. And we were going to do some work as a board and help revisit that with Burbank after that. At this point, for the Monroe renaming, this motion failed. Do we, can we do another motion? Or we just leave it?
The vote was four, three, now five, four, now five, three, sorry.
Well, she, she was just counting, Director Lopez.
Oh.
Yeah, so. So you can just direct me to move forward. And it sounds like it's to move forward with the community engagement process and, and the process in general, as was the last one.
As you stated. And again, the board is thankful to Principal Storl, Monroe Community for the work that she put in. And I will say to my colleague Omar Medina, I do really believe that George Ortiz is a worthy, deserving individual that one of our buildings, one of our schools, one day will bear his name.
Can I, can I ask a, a point, a point of clarification here? So we also have kind of this outstanding question around Cook and CCLA. As we like move forward in this process to more deeply engage, are we kind of including all of our schools? Are we including those that are still kind of unresolved? I just think it's important for us to be really clear on the direction that we take next around community engagement and names. Because that school also deserves attention here.
Right. I, I think that my, and I don't think, my suggestion would be for the board that it is a, a engagement and research and study around all the names in the district, as well as I've had a request by many about the mascots. And so it's not just the, the names of the schools, but it's also the mascots that are attached to the names of the schools or attached to the schools. So I think it's both of those things.
Yeah, I really, I really love the way President Fong framed it earlier tonight, which was kind of like asking the questions is, what, what does a school culture that makes people feel like they belong?
We will go, yeah, go back and watch the tape and make sure we're lifting the inquiry process. It's a design inquiry process that you're, that you're going, going to.
I was just going to say, it's an in, it's an inquiry process. It's not a directive process. And that's, that's powerful learning, and that's what, that's also what we want.
Yeah, I feel like it's the inquiry process that then feeds into a design process where you have stakeholders involved in the design. So, but again, I think it's something that we all have to process. I know I do in terms of lifting the language from what was presented and putting into some kind of an organized way of presenting it back out, so.
All right, I am just going to appreciate and thank everybody who's still with us, whether you have to or you're choosing to. I totally appreciate the late hour, and we are going to move forward with, I didn't remember six, which is an action item.
Thank you, thank you, Principal Storl very much, and your committee, and Ms. Blomseth.
Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay.
Go ahead, talk to you tomorrow.
Yeah, I just want to see where we are. We are on item.
Six.
Okay, so as you can see, we are presenting our Extended Learning Opportunities Grant Plan as a part of our submission to the State of California for the funding that we have received due to the pandemic. I will turn it over to a team who shall unmute and be, and present. And then I think Rick is probably going to lead, lead the way on this, but turn, I turn it over to you folks.
Thank you, Superintendent Kitamora. Good evening, members of the board community that's still here. As Dr. Kitamora said, we are going to talk about the Extended Learning Opportunities Grant Plan and give an update on our pandemic funding grants tonight. So joining me will be Dr. Guzman, Mr. Mizera and Mr. Dantos to talk about these things. I will share my screen to pull up the presentation. I kind of went over this slide already. Dr. Guzman and Mr. Mizera will be talking about an overview of the Extended Learning Opportunities Grant, much of which we went over a couple of weeks ago with summer school and our plans moving out of this year and, and preparing for next year with that. And then we'll go over our expenditures to date, expenditures that we're currently in the midst of, and then some future planning with that. With that, I will hand it to Dr. Guzman.
Thank you, Mr. Edson. Yes, and so, Ms. Rizera and I'll talk a little bit about the fact that this really is the relief money that's coming from the grant AB-86. For us to be eligible to receive this money, we do have to have this plan approved by June 1st. What's exciting, as Mr. Edson has talked about previously and, and Dr. Kitamora as well, is that these funds are not just eligible for this year, but also the year after, which is going to give us some opportunities to really look at our extended learning opportunities. And then some specifics about the plan and the allocations for our two districts and the totality for Santa Rosa City Schools. We have added our charter schools into this plan as well. We have engaged in different ways with our stakeholders. We had a joint DAC and D-LAC meeting last week. We also specifically went to D-LAC to talk about our summer school planning and that of DAC 2. We have worked with, we obviously presented at the board meeting around the summer school and the extended learning plan. We're super happy that we have a memorandum of understanding between both us and SRTA to be able to run these summer programs. We're very excited about that. And so we are obviously working, my department and Steve's department, to really make sure that these programs are robust. And I know that last week, Rick and Joel met with the Budget Advisory Committee to go over this plan as well and to answer any questions that they may have had just about the funding, how we're spreading it and what we're, how we're moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. And also let me add that, as you mentioned, you know, this is a, a funding plan and that it's funded through next year, but that doesn't mean we have all the answers. And part of what we're doing is we're gathering data from the summer, the amount of work the students have, the potential learning loss they are, and that's going to drive a lot of our needs and supports as we go next year. as we go next year. One area is the social emotional supports that were, the data that we're gonna collect over the summer will help kind of drive some ideas and things, what we're gonna do with it next year. So while we have uh, ideas of what we're working on so far, and how we use the money uh, over the summer, next year, we still have to kind of come back to that, like any, any good work with data. We're gonna look at that data and really devise uh, better plans and uses of it. So it's a plan, but it's also a plan in, in, in motion and in action, and we'll be revising some of those. Um, here are just a couple of quick things about our social emotional needs we've brought before during summer school that we will be bringing a strong social emotional support to all our, our various camps and summer schools and jumpstarts. Um, and then in addition to that, you know, we want to also make sure that we've reached out to parents in this process. And there are a number of elements in the plan that we articulate to the state of how we've done that. One of them, as Dr. Guzman already mentioned, is the uh, the DAC Committee. Go ahead, next slide. Um, those are examples of our reach, our outreach that we've done. Um, as Dr. Guzman mentioned, both the DAC and the D-LAC. So there's, there is the, the broad broad approach of letting parents know that we have these academic programs. And then there's also the narrow approach, meaning principals have by student identified students that they are aware of, of uh, learning loss, and that could use support. And so we've also identified students for some of our summer school programs individually. So there's really a mix of both those programs. Next slide, or Dr. Guzman, yeah. So here are some of the basic elements, uh, Dr. Guzman and, and her team presented at the summer school, uh, at our last board meeting. And so that's some of the summer school money that we've already presented. Uh, another big key element in the plan are work and money for paraprofessionals. Um, that's specifically called out, and you know, we've already kind of done some of that uh, expenditures. We, as you may know, board, that we had increased in a conversation and work with our CSDA uh, association. We increased the salaries for paraprofessionals that are working in our support uh, school support classes already in the summer. And then we're identifying a number of, number of other trainings and other supports. Um, and of course, just additional staff that we're gonna be using over the summer for summer school supports. Dr. G.
Um, I think that um, we're gonna move on to uh, Mr. Dantos and Mr. Edson are gonna talk about the additional um, COVID money that we received over the last year, and how we spent that as well. Is that correct, Mr. Edson?
Yeah, that, that is correct. Thank you. Um, I will also mention that the full plan that will be submitted uh, is in the board packet as well, in narrative form, so uh, that is included. This is highlights of the plan that uh, we just went through. Uh, and now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dantos to talk about uh, the funds that we have received and expended to date, uh, and the funds that we anticipate to receive uh, over the course of the next couple of years with uh, distributions just now being finalized for SRS two uh, and SRS three, uh, federal funding for uh, COVID relief. So with that, Mr. Dantos.
All right, thank you, thank you, President Fong, Dr. Kita-Mora, members of the board. So yeah, this is a summary and update on all COVID pandemic related funding. We'll start back, so it's broken up into kind of two categories. I call it the, the first round of funding, and then the second round, or kind of the older new, and and if you want any clarification of that, just let me know. But so dating back to, you know, the pandemic started in our actual two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, March of that year. All the pandemic funding has actually been allowable to spend on any expenses back to March, just little bit of information. But so the first thing that happened was the Senate, California Senate issued Senate Bill one seventeen that gave us a little bit of money. Then uh, the two thousand twenty twenty-one budget package issued the learning loss mitigation funds that were comprised of these three different sources. The uh, some federal CR funds, some more federal gear funds, and then some state uh, general fund. But they were all through the state budget. Then we had our Federal CARES Act money that came um from the federal government, and these are the amounts we got. So the sum of all those were about thirteen million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. So that was the sum of all that funding. And then, Rick, if you want to move on to the next slide, I'll go through what, what the expenditures were for all those, those, those sums, or for all those funds. And I broke them up into these categories. So the first thing we did was we started a return to school committee. How we come back to school? This was back when the pandemic first happened, and we really didn't know if we're gonna be back in two weeks, three weeks, but you recall that Return to School Committee was created. Then over that two thousand nineteen, twenty, and two thousand twenty, twenty-one, this whole year, we did use that funding to continue feeding our students, and with uh, no school in service, we had no sales, so we maintained our, our nutritional staff. And we dedicated twenty percent of our custodian salaries, because their jobs was shift to a significantly different use, where they were cleaning facilities for uh COVID-related ne- necessity, as well as working with uh, helping the food distribution and other things. And we had, we, in uh, SRTA negotiations, we added a, a professional development day to their calendar. Uh, the teaching learning directors developed the distance learning plan, dedicated seventeen percent about their work towards that um substantially different use. Then we purchased a number of technology items for students uh, and teachers to communicate uh, hardware, software, and connectivity. We uh, have a COVID coordinator, salaries and benefits. Purchased a lot of materials, uh, personal protective equipment. Uh, and then as well as we had to maintain our daycare salaries, we transitioned that program into to care for our um, employees, if, if you recall that, um. Then we had a lot of services we needed, uh, heating and air conditioning filter changes, rental of storage equipment, so we can get six feet spreading with our desks. And then we had a, a lot of uh, certificated and classified extra pay. We paid our uh CNS staff and maintenance and operations staff while they were physically at work um, under the first, you know, when the first pandemic came out, um, we had you know, our SRTA and M, and uh, CSCA agreements, and a lot of different things that were required to, to pay for, to keep us operating uh, during the pandemic. So that is in summary of the entire expenditures of that, what I call first round. You want to go to the next slide, Rick? So then we had our second round. Um just fairly recently, uh, the Assembly Bill, this, this State Assembly issued these two grants. The in-person instruction grant, which was if you start school in person on April first, you will get this much money. And then it was uh one percent less each day after that. So we started our elementary school, and then we followed up with our secondary school. Then the other component of that um, Assembly Bill was the Extended Learning Opportunities Grant Plan that we presented tonight. So that's how this ties in. This is, this is another funding with win over that plan. Then again, uh, the federal government issued the second round of their Federal CARES Act, and the third round of their Federal CARES Act. So you can see the sum of this, what, what I call uh, the second round of new money is forty-five million dollars. And I hope, uh, you know, why my rationale behind old and new hopefully makes sense. But that is now in totality, all of our uh, allocations for COVID-related funding. And um, again, it sums up to thirteen million plus forty-five million, so I think it was at fifty-eight million. So now we're gonna move on to this second round of funding where we're establishing uh, expenditures. And Rick, did you want to run it through this? Because this is kind of.
Yeah, thank you, Joel. Uh, so these are expenditures and planned expenditures today. Uh, you see the nine point six million for the uh, Extended Learning Opportunities Grant. We're obviously not going to use all of that this summer, as mentioned, so we'll be continuing development of uses of those funds next year and into the following summer. Uh, you know, through reopening uh, with the April first deadline uh and that we met with elementary, and then with secondary, uh, a few weeks later, uh, in April, uh, we have budgeted uh, monies towards simultaneous teaching stipends, additional sections, substituting during prep periods, uh, and classroom overages uh, to um provide uh, monies to those teachers taking on the additional responsibility during this time. Uh, we also offered a substitute stipend to ensure that we could have uh, as many substitutes as possible to assist with the transition uh, from a hundred percent distance learning to hybrid models uh, with students both in person uh, and still participating remotely from home. Uh, we have additional PPE and error uh, quality improvement measures. New teacher positions added. Uh, in some cases, it was picking up uh, additional sections. Uh, we're still looking at a refresh of technologies. I know um, any teachers that are still listening are, are for the most part ready for a new computer uh, as the ones they currently have, the majority have reached end of life. Um, there'll be replacement textbooks uh, and other supplies as we return back to school uh, as well as what we use during the school year. Uh, and then two areas of cost of TBD. Uh, there, there will still be some additional costs that we'll have to address uh, for maintaining staff that we've heard about tonight, as well as continuity of services. Uh, and then other input from various stakeholder groups uh, on this money. Uh, I know uh, SRTA has supplied some information on um from a survey from their members and with discussion with their members that we'll take into account uh, as we look to maximize the use of the remaining funds uh, over the uh, next one to two years, with some deadlines reaching out to now twenty twenty-three uh, for some of these funds. So uh, as these plans continue to evolve, we will update the board um, and the community with our expenditures, uh, and how we're using these funds to uh, promote instruction uh, and keep Santa Rosa City Schools moving forward. With that, I will hand it back over to the board.
Who has a question? I can't see you, so speak up.
Hi, it's Alegria. Um, I, I had a question related to um, kind of specific ways in which we're using um, these, these special funds to address inequities for students with disabilities. Um, and you know, in particular, I know that we had some conversation earlier in the pandemic about the ways in which you know, students whose parents don't speak English, or who don't speak English themselves, were also having a really hard time understanding the additional protections and resources for students with disabilities um, during the pandemic. And so I just wanted to see if there's a way in which you could pull out from this report, or highlight kind of any additional services that are being provided to those students to deal with the learning loss that we definitely heard a lot about with regards to our special ed populations.
Yeah, you know, for, for us, the, the, there is access to any of the general education summer programs. So specifically, our, our, what is, is, is in essence, a, a continued summer program called Extended School Year is, is available to a, a small subset of population. That, that is, is kind of this traditional approach. We're not doing anything, anything exceptional to that approach. That's kind of driven by an IEP. There are individual situations uh, where uh, special education teachers are reaching out to their students on their caseload and offering various summer times. That's kind of like a jumpstart that they're doing individually. Um, there is not a separate special education program outside that ESY. Uh, we know, I mentioned that we are targeting some students for some of our summer school programs. We're doing a summer school childcare. We're doing a summer school um, Boys and Girls Club additionally. And we're continuing the work on what we titled earlier is our vulnerable populations. And so principals are identifying those students that they're, they know with, they know where there's harm. Um, in special education, there's, there's a term called compensatory services, when you have data and information that you were not able to meet uh, your IEP goals. We've met those IEP goals per our adjustments that we've done in distance learning plans. Um, however, we know once students come back and services come back in a full fold, in-person learning, that we are holding money aside for additional services we may have to do once we really see that data. It's uh, our, our teachers don't feel that they're really seeing enough in the distance learning, and even the hybrid enough that either through the summer or next year, as we really see more student loss, and we're documenting it in some of our IEP testing uh, that we really think that that's probably when we'll need to add more additional services or the compensatory services. And we're using, we're, we're setting aside funding from some of this ELO money just for those purposes.
Thank you so much for that, Director Mizera. And, and I think in particular, just my follow-up question to that would be, how are we reaching out to those parents and families, right? Those kids who we know had a hard time accessing even just what was available during, during the pandemic, and identifying, letting them know how to advocate for the compensatory services, or how to reach that, you know, those additional things, or work with the teachers to say, right, to, to, to advocate in a way that we know that those, that particular population definitely struggles on top of others.
You know, I, I think uh, Director De La Cruz, you, 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 you hit the, hit the spot that we're constantly addressing, and that's better communication and better advocacy. I know we've sent out letters. I know we've sent out probably things a little bit different in special education, that be, might be more specific to the parents. You know, whether, when you have a caseload of twenty-five, twenty-eight students, you can do a little more direct connection than you can a blanket parent square. So I know those have gone out. I, I, I don't think we've done anything targeting any more than we do our gen ed students. Um, and, and could that be something that we look at, you know? Um, there's pretty strong communication with our case managers. Their teachers kind of know what's going on in, in there. And so I, I think perhaps more so than other populations, they have been reached out, and they have been kind of mentioned, and there is some strong advocacy that happens on the part of our case managers in many cases.
Yeah, um, I think my, my last kind of request for information around this is just to continue tracking, you know, these additional support services. I'd love to know the demographics of who they're going to, right, and how, and how we're understanding, you know, the ways in which um, folks with resources are, are usually able to access more resources with folks without, are, have a hard time doing that. And so if there's just some way for us to kind of track equity metrics around, you know, who is accessing these additional support services, I would love for that to be, you know, uh, part of what we continue to track here.
And, and that question is, is for all students, not just special education students?
I think I have a, a particular concern about special ed, given what we, what we really heard from our D-LAC parents this, this year. Um, but I, I, I am curious across the board. I know that there was a, there was a, you know, real deliberate attempt to make sure that a lot of those, you know, compensatory services were being directed to, to kids who really suffered. Um, and um, and so, yeah, I'm, I'm just curious about how we continue to track that.
We will track that over the summer.
Thank you.
Director Flores.
Yeah, I have a couple of portions. One, um, I overheard, or I heard that there is a, a major overhaul coming up for independent studies. Uh, do we have a Plan B in case um, that program is re, you know, reestablished or, or refurbished into, into the mainstream? Um, and well, that's my first question.
Um, so you're talking in reference to the legislation that's coming through around changes in uh, independent study for the public uh, who's still here, uh, and the rest of the board, the um, idea that there will be some students who uh, will want to remain on some sort of remote learning uh, when we return to school in the fall, um, and that it be really its own program school, and that independent study would be the way to use that vehicle, but not in the way that the traditional longstanding uh, independent study was, is, which is one hour a week, and um almost, you know, very much like packet kind of work. And that, that, that's, that's not something what we're interested in doing in terms of a way to serve students with a rich education um, who want to uh choose to be in distance learning or uh, remote learning. Um, so Steve, I don't know um, if we've heard anything on that legislation, if it's coming through, has gone through. I haven't checked. So Steve, I don't know if we've heard anything on that legislation, if it's coming through, has gone through. I haven't checked myself. But I know that we are working on both our virtual learning type of format with independent study, home and hospital, some of those kinds of things.
No, I, I haven't had any updates either, whether or not they're going to lift that 10% cap for it's only there for independent study. I saw that was in one of the earlier versions of the bill, but I actually haven't seen what's come out of the, the Assembly, the Education Assembly Committee on that yet.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Once we, once we know what's going to happen there, we can give finer details. But what we, here's what we do know is that we will, we will offer the ability for students who wish to remain on some sort of distance learning, that opportunity.
Okay. And when is this? If it hap, if, if, if this legislation is approved, I mean, when, when is it going to be implemented? From what I heard is next school year. So it's, it just puts us in a, in a bind because of master scheduling and, I don't know, planning for the next year. So do we have a plan set for, for in case this bill passes?
Yeah, I mean, we have our, 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 sorry, traditional, the way we've done independent study, virtual learning, cyber high kinds of things. And so, to be honest, the team is just beginning to delve into that. They've been trying to get summer school off the ground. So next will be, and especially now that we have finished negotiations, the next step will be start of school year and that type of program in a virtual, I, I call it different things, but it's, to my, in my mind, it's really like a virtual school.
Dr. Kitamora, I mean, one of the things we have to watch out for is, you know, before we reach out to parents and describe the program, we have to make sure we really know what the program is. And so one of the things they're looking at is they are considering similar language that we have right now, that there needs to be live daily interactions, which is not our current independent study model. And so if that retains in the final legislation, that really drives the program. And then once that is, once that's developed, then we kind of explain the program, we'll have to hire for it. You know, and then we can outreach to families.
Well, and, and also we don't know what the attendance model is going to be. There hasn't, and there has not been a determination about that. So it isn't that we don't, we don't, aren't wanting to, to do this, but we're a little bit, again, kind of hamstrung with trying to figure out what the state is going to allow.
And then in terms of your, the, the funding that you just showed us, how are our charters included in, in, in that funding, in those funding sources? How, how is that allocated?
The, the charters are, are not included in the approximately 58 million that we show. That was primarily Fund 01. For that, the charters receives about $2 million. That can be allocated the same way, not $2 million apiece, but $2 million in total between our four charters that we're, we're approaching and using in the same ways that we're using for our general fund expenditures under these COVID relief grants.
And the, the board packet in the board cover does go into detail on the charter school. So you do have that in there. Sorry.
Well, thank you, Joel. Could you just let me know what page that is so I can look it up later?
It's well, so it's in the cover. If you want me to go through it, I can.
No, hold on, Joel. It's just the agenda item.
I see it. I see it.
Yeah. So they got the real, they got the same funding. The funding they didn't get though, because is they are, they were on the, funds they get direct funded on are all the same ones, except for the Federal Cares Act. Their money comes to us and we did purchase items for the charters out of that money because they're not direct funded. That's kind of a nuance, but so their funds are separate and, and we do have an accounting of what their expenses were associated with their first round of funds. And then we do show their new funds, but were, they are included in the expanded learning opportunity details as well. But then we're also further developing their new funds. So we don't actually show those budget expenditures like we do for the district schools.
Right, right, I see. Okay.
Okay, we're going to move to public comment at this point. It's two minutes.
Members of the public would like to comment on item E6. Please raise your hands at this time. I see no hands raised.
All right, call for, any other discussion or call for the motion? Director Manieri?
Yeah, just really quickly, because it wasn't a question, so it falls into this. With the, the 2,450 in remaining grant funds to be clearly defined with planning, I just want to really elevate what Director Delacruz was saying around services for our special education students. And I really love the idea of tracking students that are receiving these services. So just want to make sure that, that that is, it sounds like perhaps that is where we have that opportunity to really make sure that if that we don't have those supports and services in, in other parts of these line items that perhaps we can embed them here. And then I also just wanted to bring up social emotional support for students. I know that we have training for, for school staff on how to address this need, but specific dollars that really support direct services for students, I think is really important. And then kind of as we go through that process, I would really love to have conversations about, about how we're allocating funds. So I don't know if this could be like, you know, once, once these, once this is approved, if we could have regular conversations.